Okay, so it is Monday, June 8th at 5:03 PM. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Okay, we have quite an agenda tonight with some really important items. But our first item is Letter A, a closed session conference with labor negotiators, including Umpapa, SEIU Local 521, SEIU Local 521 Hourly, Papua, the Fire Chiefs Association, IFF Local 1319, and the Police Managers Association. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
They're moved.
Second.
Thank you. Let's please vote. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes, indeed.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Thank you. I just should have mentioned to anybody who is listening, the very last page of the city council agenda has instructions on different ways you can provide public comment if you would like to do so. We are scheduled to be in closed session for about an hour, and so we'll be back here about 6:05. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so it's 7:01. We have a quorum here. Council has returned from closed session. Item A with no reportable actions. We're next going to move on to a rail communications update, an update from the expanded community advisory panel. Just a couple brief comments. I see we have a lot of attendees and a lot of interest. You know, this has obviously been a really tough year globally in our nation. It's been a tough month, and it's certainly been a tough week in Palo Alto and across the United States. We're dealing with a pandemic, an economic recession, and social upheaval, even upheaval and national protests. So I would just remind us all, you know, nerves are afraid, people are stressed, let's all be kind to each other. And this absolutely is, you know, a public meeting where your government to serve and respond to all your needs, but also mention to everyone, we have a, the next few weeks, including tonight, many large, complex, and important items. So while we welcome your feedback, please know you can also email it in. And though we give each person two minutes, if you can make your point quicker than that or just agree with the previous speaker, please indicate that. And if you would like to form a group of speakers, the city clerk can help you with that, or a couple of you can pool your time. But just want to mention that, seeing we already have 85 attendees to this meeting, which is great, I'm glad to see the engagement, but just a few provisos there. Okay, let's please move on to item number one, our Palo Alto rail grade separations update. I think, Ms. Nyak, are you taking it away for us?
Well, that was a question. I was inter, the staff wanted me to start, or I can certainly do so. And so, hi, welcome, or I'm welcoming myself. Hi, everybody. I'm Nadia Nyak here for the expanded community advisory panel. I am going to assume that everybody has read the report, and I'll try to keep it brief because you've got lots of attendees and lots of hands up. I just wanted to say briefly that we have been working really hard even through COVID. The staff has been amazing in helping us get up to speed with using Zoom. We actually were using Zoom before we could do it for the public meetings, for the technical working groups, so we continue to work as best we can. It is harder to do Zoom meetings, and it does take a little bit longer, so we are trying to have two-hour meetings, although I have to tell you, we stuck to that the first meeting, and every other meeting has still continued to be three hours. But obviously, that has caused us to take a hit to the schedule, along with obviously COVID delays and other things. I did want to point out, one important omission from my last council update was that we did start at least a bit of deliberations, and that is that the expanded community advisory panel decided internally that they would no longer be considering the tunnel option. Obviously, it's still on the table for the council, but for us internally, for a variety of reasons, which will be stated in the report, that just wasn't something that we felt we needed to spend a lot of time on. So we've made that piece of progress so far. In the meantime, we are waiting for continued updates from AECOM on the new alternatives. We have most of it for Churchill. We're still waiting for a few pieces of Meadow and Charleston, and are continuing forward. And the only other last piece I'll go into, and then open up for questions, is that we are losing two members. So one of them is Megan Khan. She has been fabulous, but she is actually moving to the DC area to work on the, in the big place. And so, we are, she will not be able to participate even via Zoom. And so, the second person is also Pat Lau, who works at Webster House, and obviously during the COVID emergency, has been working a lot more hours with the seniors than she expected. And so, she's going to try to hang in through the rest of the month, but will probably have to fall off afterwards. But we want to thank them for their service. They've been amazing. And, you know, for some of these XCAP members, they're going on three years already of service. So, you know, we are, we are trying to hold together and keep going. We've got a lot of devoted people. So with that, I will leave the rest of it for council questions.
Any, any comments from staff?
Let's see, perhaps just to note that in our most recent discussions with the XCAP, that I think we've all acknowledged the necessity of some flexibility as it relates to schedule. Clearly, as Nadia pointed out, just operating on the Zoom format has in and of itself been a challenge. But then again, as we've gotten into the work on the new ideas, new alternatives that were added, that just working through the particulars of understanding and some back and forth on, on how to best refine those concepts has taken some time. And, and so I think we all acknowledge that, and again, just really appreciate the work of the XCAP in working through those issues toward a recommendation that can come back to council after summer.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Nadia. I can definitely empathize with you that running a meeting on Zoom is not the easiest. And with that, if the clerk would please help me invite our members of the public to provide their comments.
Sure. Any member of the public that wishes to speak regarding the XCAP and rail item, please keep your hand up. Also, if you're watching on your TV or through YouTube, please turn the volume down on those so that there is not the feedback. At this time, we have 11 people who would like to speak on this item. We will start with Jason Matloff.
Great, thank you. So I'll just jump right into it, to Mayor Fine's point. First of all, I want to thank the XCAP for, this has been an unbelievable amount of detail and research that's gone on over this last year, specifically since the XCAP was founded. But more importantly, I want to just reiterate that it's been almost three years since we as a city, you as a council, and we as citizens that are impacted, have been dealing with this, and I would urge you to move as expeditiously as possible. And please, you know, consider that, and try not to slip this, this upcoming deadline for vote by the end of the summer. Obviously, the economic conditions that Mayor Fine referred, referred to are significant in the impact of selection here, and ROI, or return on investment, be, should be one of the highest priorities. Specific to the Churchill Crossing, we know all the data, traffic study data done by Hexagon and AECOM has confirmed that all the traffic, or I shouldn't say all, excuse me, 61% of the traffic crossing Churchill daily comes from Embarcadero or north of Embarcadero. Meanwhile, we have a very, very solid, well-thought-out proposal for mitigations to that main arterial road that's in our neighborhood, you know, relative to Churchill, which is a seven-block street. That plan only costs $50 million, $50 to $60 million. It's a fraction of the cost of the other solutions that are proposed. And again, emphasizing the need for capital efficiency in this time, when we have to go to voters for any bond measure approval, I would urge and ask that you please consider that, as well as the expediency in making your decision. I really want to thank you guys. I know this is a very painful and difficult decision, and it's a difficult time. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Matloff. Our next speaker is Eileen Fagan. Eileen, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Is that better?
No, you still have the feedback. There you go. Oh, no.
Is that, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Fagan, go ahead. Ms.
Ms. Fagan.
Ms. Fagan, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Can?
Ms. Fagan, go ahead. We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. No, we can no longer hear you. We'll go ahead and mute you for the moment and move on to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Jason Stinson.
Jason, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Excellent. So I wanted to also echo Jason Matloff's comments about XCAP. I think it's a very difficult, painful topic, and XCAP has done an amazing job. I think the engage, community engagement, being data-driven, well-informed on the topics, everybody's paying attention, which is awesome. And the, the adaptation to the shelter in place has been phenomenal. So I've, I've really been impressed with that Oregon, with that group and the work that they've done. I'm excited to see the recommendations. I also wanted to briefly comment on the Churchill Crossing as well. Similar to what Jason Matloff commented on, you know, it's a 300-meter-long thoroughfare where the majority of the traffic is basically just cutting the corner because of a broken Embarcadero or a broken Oregon Expressway. We have solutions for both of those roads. And Churchill itself has a lot of other problems, namely, it's, it's a very narrow, you know, Alma and Churchill at that intersection is very difficult. We have Caltrain right-of-way issues. We have a lot of homes. We've been trying to avoid any eminent domain. All of these things make it a big challenge, and where very, very little of the traffic is actually local to Southgate or local to Old Palo Alto. It just, it seems to me like it makes the most sense to go with the least expensive option that solves the majority of the traffic that's going through that very small section of street. That's it. So I have, thanks.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hey, Ed.
Hello.
Okay. Sorry for all that technical difficulty. Thank you all, City Council and XCAP, for all of your service. I know you have a ton on your plate right now, especially the City Council. I wanted to ask, though, the City Council, in contrast to the hurry up and let's just finish this process, to really focus on the long-term ramifications of the Churchill Crossing. You know, I think the number-one criteria should actually be safety and the traffic flow and the ability for our citizens to use the space. And I want to point out that Palo Alto School District did say that this would be a negative impact for them, not just for the students, but also for their own buses and operations. So I also want to thank City Council and XCAP for exploring the new alternative that was brought about by one of our citizens, really to overcome two options that were not good, right? I think we, the closing of Churchill and the viaduct were both unpleasant options and things that we really don't want to see. In fact, we did a survey within Southgate and found that once that partial underpass solution was understood, over 82% of people wanted that option. And some of them changed, you know, from wanting the other options, but they've definitely saw that as the superior option, as do I. So I would very much ask you to not listen to just the vocal minority, but think about the long term and invest in the solution that makes the most sense for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Our next speaker is Susan Newman.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
If I can find my, here we go. So I had a bunch of nice things I wanted to say about Nadia and her leadership. I think she's done a great job, very even-handed, committed to thinking about the issues broadly and creatively, and also, I think, single-handedly responsible for opening up the process to some excellent ideas from community members. And I also appreciate the work of all the XCAP members in sticking with the problem for such a long time. Smart bunch, generally speaking, ask a lot of good questions. And I appreciate Larry Klein's wisdom and experience as he supports Nadia's efforts to guide the XCAP. That said, I'm right, I'm speaking to raise concerns about some aspects of the XCAP's deliberation about the rail crossing options. I'm focusing on Churchill because the decision there affects the part of Palo Alto that I'm most familiar with, including my own neighborhood, Southgate. I see four big issues. The tendency to create silos between the various solutions, rather than looking for how we can borrow something from one option to enhance the effectiveness of another option that solves different problems. Two, the tendency to put bicycle and pedestrian safety in opposition to the smooth flow of car traffic, as something that is only addressed by complete separation of car from bike and pedestrian traffic. For example, a tunnel, as though the only way to improve safety is to eliminate bikes and pedestrians from the streets, which isn't generally possible. Three, the tendency of city staff sometimes to work at cross purposes with the XCAP, specifically options that have emerged in the last six months, and the City Council In particular, our city manager, a very smart man, mostly reasonable, has openly expressed his hostility to the partial underpass solution and appears to have insisted on criteria that compromise the design and make the approach appear less feasible. But the one that I want to talk about a little bit more is the lack of representation in the XCAP, XCAP, for the range of concerns and positions among the many people affected by what is happening at the crossing. In the case of Churchill, there are two members who live within a block of the crossing. Both support closure, full stop. Both are motivated, understandably enough, by what closure or the other options will do to their property values, which are their views from their backyards. Both banded together early on with others in their immediate vicinity who shared these fears and concerns, and indeed, were put on the cap in the XCAP because of this early organizing. However, as the mission of the XCAP has evolved, to become the voice of the community.
Your time is up.
I hear you.
Your two minutes are up.
I, I.
Send any communications to the city.council email.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Terry Black, and I hope I'm not mutilating your last name.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, it's Jack. I know, it looks so funny. Jack, I know. Anyway, thank you guys for listening to all of us all the time and for taking such time and effort into studying the situation. I grew up in this area. I've been here 20 years. I grew up in Mellow Park. And, you know, Mellow Park has two crossings and does just fine. Palo Alto has plenty of crossings. Needless to say, I've looked at all the data, and clearly the only option is to close Churchill. It, it saves millions, it saves time and money, it saves lives, it's safer. The police said it wasn't a problem. The fire said it wasn't a problem. And the handful of people who don't want to close are going to get used to it. We get used to things, we as people, as you can tell with COVID and masks and going to the grocery store. We manage, and we get used to things. And Palo Alto has so many crossings, way more than where I grew up in Mellow Park. And we're going to be just fine closing Churchill, and the kids will be safer, the pets will be safer, the cars will be safer, the people will be safer. It's a small street that should stay a small street. And I really appreciate you guys listening to us and taking everybody into account, because clearly there are different opinions. But I really, I really hope you look at the data, and the data says to close Churchill. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Our next speaker is Lisa Nissam. Lisa, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I want to thank you and to the, the XCAP Committee for all the time and hard work that they've done to develop recommendations for the train crossings. And I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the train crossings, especially the option presented for Churchill. It's important that Southgate remain a vibrant part of Palo Alto, which means adopting any plan that does not close Churchill to cars, pedestrians, and bicycles. As a Southgate resident for 25 years, my family joins a majority of our neighbors asking you to preserve the feel and texture of Southgate, created by the essential east-west connection Churchill offers. Without this access, Churchill will be cut off from the rest of the city, and the city from us. Congestion already makes it hard to get across Palo Alto. Enclosing one of the few east-west roads through the town will make congestion on the remaining streets worse, increasing pollution and stress for everyone. Those who oppose Churchill, or who oppose keeping Churchill open to vehicles have characterized Churchill as an unsafe road. In my long tenure here, with two children who attended Walter Hayes, Green, and Pally, using bike, car, and foot to get to school, our family has never found Churchill unsafe. A few of our neighbors who live on Churchill want the train crossing closed because they don't like cars driving in front of their house. It's a bit like buying a, a house next to an airport for a reduced price than lobbying to have the airport moved because of the noise to increase their property values. In this case, a few people bought houses between Pally, Stanford, downtown Palo Alto, and California Avenue, and now want to turn the road into almost a park, limited, severely limiting access for most of Palo Alto residents. Our family values and loves that connection. It's why we like living in Southgate and Palo Alto. We live in Southgate because we want to be part of Palo Alto. Please don't cut us off from our neighbors by tur, closing the Churchill Crossing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Carrie Yarkin. Carrie, you may need to mute, unmute from your, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, hi, thank you for all your hard work. I have a few comments and then one request. And one comment I'd like to say for all the Southgate people, it's great that you live in Southgate because 25 years ago, you blocked up all your streets so you could not get through on park. And so you used to have traffic that went through there, and there used to be access for all Palo Altons to go through your streets. And basically, you have a private, a beautiful private neighborhood, whereas some of the other streets had to carry that amount of traffic that was, was not intended to be blocked off. My, may, I've sent you a letter, but I just want to say as a lifelong Palo Alton and daily bicyclists, I think that bicyclists and pedestrians should have priority over cars. Pally is bordered by Alma, Embarcadero, El Camino, and Churchill. By prioritizing pedestrians and bicyclists on Churchill, it's in a unique location which can handle the majority of the students, a lot of the teachers and visitors, and that should be one of, a main entrance to Pally. I think you should look at it as an opportunity not to take away from where the, just look at Churchill as an opportunity. It flows right into, dead ends right into Stanford at El Camino. If you ride your bike there, that's a beautiful access point to the middle of Stanford. I ride my bike every day. If you can go directly into Stanford, it's, it's great. It's terrific. I've also noticed barricades up to encourage biking on certain streets, and this is my request. To make Embarcadero flow better, I think you should stop the unprotected left turns from Embarcadero East. There's two of them. One's at Webster, where Churchill starts, and one's at Calper. And if you could discourage, cut through traffic on Churchill, I think that would help start the process and move the traffic that's cutting through right now onto the arterials, and stop using Churchill as a cut-through to El Camino. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Our next speaker is Esther, and Esther, I don't want to mutilate your last name.
Hi, yeah, my.
Two minutes.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Hi, my name is Esther Zweig. I live in the Palo Alto area, and I'm commenting in support of the resolution to express counsel support of the Black Lives Matter movement and commit to review.
That, I can come later in the evening. Right now, we're speaking on the rail crossing. So if you wish to.
But it says that you can speak about any item on the agenda, whether or not.
No, this is, we're on the rail XCAP part. Oral communications and the other comes later in the evening.
Esther, we're, we're on item number one.
So when will that be discussed? Do you know?
We, we should get to the resolution on Black Lives Matter, estimating maybe 8:30.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks.
Our next speaker is O. Hadidi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Dear honorable members of the Palo Alto City Council, first, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to speak this evening. I'd like to begin by taking a step back and asking that you consider engaging in discussions with the concerned entities on whether proceeding with grade separation still makes sense in this post-pandemic world. However, if it is to proceed, our family strongly supports the Churchill closure proposal with a bike and pedestrian underpass, mitigations at Embarcadero and Oregon Expressway, and sound screens and parapets at the intersection. We also strongly oppose the two other proposed alternatives, namely, the partial underpass and the viaduct. Let's look at the facts. We support Churchill closure for the following reasons. Number one, it serves as the first part of a phased approach to grade separation at Churchill. If necessary, either of the other two options can be implemented in a later phase. Number two, as Jason Matloff discussed earlier, it is much less costly, totaling 50 to 60 million, $65 million. Number three, it is traffic-friendly, and traffic flow will be better than the current state of things, as confirmed by the Hexagon analysis of May 5th. Number four, it is much safer incorporating a bike and pedestrian underpass and reducing traffic backups on Churchill. Number five, closure will eliminate horn noise, and installing sound screens and parapets will also significantly aid in noise reduction. We oppose the partial underpass for the following reasons. First, it depends on acquiring Caltrain's right-of-way, which is unlikely. It would also require eminent domain seizures. Number two, it bears a huge cost of $200 to $250 million. Number three, it would significantly change the character of the neighborhood. We oppose the viaduct for the following reasons. Number one, it will cost $300 to $400 million. Number two, it is less traffic-friendly. The level of service will be worse than that of the Churchill closure solution, as supported by the Hexagon analysis. And number three, it will be a permanent eyesore to the neighborhood. Unfortunately, some opponents of the Churchill closure have resorted to illegally placing placards advocating for their position on public and private properties, including our own front yard. Some have even encouraged property seizures without empathy for their affected neighbors and all of that, just to maintain access to Alma and shave off a few minutes from their commutes.
Mr. Hadidi, your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much.
You can email the council with the rest of your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Rosenblum. Stephen, go ahead.
Hi, Steve Rosenblum. I live in Old Palo Alto, and I'd like to thank the council for its consideration of this issue. It's of long-term interest to Palo Alto. It's going to affect the look of the city for 100 years into the future. I think we have to keep in mind, we only have seven ways of getting across the tracks now with automobiles. And if Churchill is closed, that will reduce it to six. And there's no way closing the crossing will lead to reduced traffic flow on the other streets. The people from Churchill area have essentially made themselves into a pressure group to try and increase their property values by converting their street into a park, as other people have said. And I think they only represent a small group of Palo Alto residents. And when it comes time to a bond issue, to try and get the money necessary to get grade separation done, I think if, if the, if the proposal doesn't serve the needs of all of Palo Alto, and not just the people that squawk the loudest, it's not going to pass. And I think, the other thing I'd like to say is about the XCAP. I think it's really critical for the council to try and get somebody from the Chamber of Commerce and the school district to serve on the XCAP. Without input from the business community and from the school district. I think whatever decisions are made are subject to concern from those sides, especially with the Chamber of Commerce, who may, whose members may be called on to help finance it. Finally, I'd like to emphasize that most, most, the rest of Palo Alto is against the closing of Churchill to auto traffic as it will increase the traffic on other streets. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenblum. Our next speaker is Sepha Santos Powell.
Oh, wait, how do I unmute my
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. So is there a time in which we can make public comments in regards to the resolution supporting the Black Lives Matter movement or would that
That will be at about 8:30 when we come to the resolution on that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just don't see it on the agenda, but there is
Yeah, it is on the agenda. It's item 4A under action items.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'll just check back in then.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Eduardo Cack. Eduardo, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So I want to thank you for all the great work. I want to thank Nadia and the XCAP meeting. I've attended several of the meetings and it's tough work. They've done a great job. I would like you to urge to consider and eventually vote for the Oregon Embarcadero mitigations proposed by XCAP with the Churchill closure. It is the best solution for all of Palo Alto to address traffic across a wide area. It is the most cost-effective solution, as it's been outlined before. It is the safest for all the kids going to Pally and living in our neighborhood. Closing Churchill will also reduce the noise, as been pointing out earlier, on the neighborhood from the train horns and signal warnings by 20 decibels. That is a factor of 10x decibels as a logarithmic scale. So I want to think the XCAP team 77-page analysis is impressive. I live in Churchill and I've had four kids go to Pally and I've seen the danger it represents to our students, kids and neighbors. The through traffic on Churchill, as been outlined before, is mostly through traffic. It's not people moving within Southgate and trying to get out. I have personally seen a car hit by a train. Thankfully, we had the guards at the time and they were able to get the people off before the car was hit and sent flying. My neighbor Eileen was struck by a speeding car. My triathlon teammate lost her son to a train. And I've, we've lost two cats on Churchill and there's been countless of other pets killed on Churchill. The analysis on page 18 outlines all the benefits of the Oregon Embarcadero mitigations. And the analysis shown on page 53 and 57 show all the great work that can be done to get the cars to flow through the city. And as has been outlined before, Palo Alto has plenty of crossings. Reducing Churchill and closing Churchill will improve the lives of all the Pally kids in the full neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. Our next speaker is Beth Rosenthal. Beth, go ahead. You may need to unmute on your end. There you go.
Wanted to speak about Macs, so I, am I, should I, because I see this
You need to wait. Yeah, that'll come up later at the last item.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Karen Kolinsky. Karen?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
I live on Meadow and everyone has been talking about closing Churchill or not closing Churchill. But we have issues at the crossings at Meadow and Charleston that need to be addressed. And I applaud that the XCAP is considering new options for these crossings that were suggested and that they have the potential to be less costly visually and more desirable and provide safe separation for pedestrians and bikes from the car traffic. I was glad to learn that ACOM finds that the solutions for Meadow and Charleston can be different. And I think they're very different streets since Meadow is much narrower than Charleston is. And I'm glad that they're, the XCAP will consider the possibility of splitting the two for different solutions. I'm concerned that the initial ACOM description of the underpass at Meadow has, if I understand the diagrams correctly, only three points of connection to Alma compared to the present eight points. This it's maybe a better underpass and a better solution for the train crossing, but I'm afraid that it might lead to traffic being diverted to go through the circles and around in other ways. So I appreciate XCAP's work on introducing these new possible solutions and I appreciate that they are going to go through a thorough analysis of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And our final speaker is Karen Hona. Karen, go ahead. You have two minutes.
I live on Miramonte Avenue in Southgate and along with the majority of Southgate residents, I'm strongly against closing the Churchill Crossing. And I'd like to urge both the XCAP and the City Council to continue seriously considering the partial underpass alternative and as well as any additional alternatives that might come up. I often travel east on Churchill, across the tracks to get to downtown Palo Alto, to 101, to the Baylands, Mountain View, Cabo Lui, Costco, many, many other locations on that side of Palo Alto. And I really hate to see the city divided with fewer access points back and forth. Once schools and businesses open up again, closing Churchill will lead to more traffic on El Camino, Embarcadero and Oregon Expressway, which will once again become congested. And not all students are able to access Pally on foot or by bicycle. Some have disabilities. They're also concerns when the weather turns bad. It's just not really fair to limit the access only to foot and bicycle, which will be the majority of the cases if Churchill is closed. I'm also concerned about the safety implications if police and fire are unable to reach Pally or Southgate area in case of emergency, or for that matter, any other area west of Alma. And finally, I agree with Susan Newman that the representation on the XCAP has been unfairly skewed and I hope that something can be done to amend that. So I'd like to thank you for all the work you've been putting in to this effort. Thanks a lot. That's it.
Thank you, Karen. We have three additional speakers. Neva Yarkin, you're next. Neva, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Palo Alto has a deficit of $40 million and major cuts need to be made. The state of California has a deficit of $54 billion. So there is no money there for train crossings. Caltrains is in trouble with decreased ridership and a very unclear financial future. Who will be able to come up with the millions of dollars to help us pay for train crossings? Shouldn't the city be looking at the cheapest train option for each train crossing right now? Who would have predicted that all our lives would have changed so drastically from the coronavirus? Santa Clara County declared shelter in place March 16th, which ended June 5th. 82 days, most people were at home. This has caused financial instability for many businesses, which will close forever, and other businesses that are struggling to open with new regulations. This will impact our future for years to come. Impacts will be felt in the economy, population growth, working environments, job opportunities, infrastructure, our ways of life and many other aspects for Palo Alto citizens. The cheapest solution for train crossings would be to fix the Embarcadero mitigations so there would be better traffic flow, which would alleviate traffic congestion on Churchill. Thank you so much for your time and thanks. Thanks again. Also, XCAP. Thank you.
Thank you, Neva. Our next speaker is Jonathan Erman. Jonathan, go ahead.
I'm here. With the, regarding the grade separation, I know a couple of years ago, I think there was also, there was a study that looked at people getting across the tracks and concluded that in fact Palo Alto needs more connections, not, I'm not speaking of roads, but more pedestrian bike underpasses would make the whole thing work a lot better. And I'm wondering if there's some way with the grade separation, which focuses exclusively on those, the intersections where the car, where the roads cross the tracks. If there's any way of looking at increased pedestrian bike underpasses, for example, the one that was added next to the medical center, which is useful and particularly, I think in the area between Meadow and California, for example, around Park Avenue or where the, where the, the stream comes out would be, if there was a, you know, pedestrian bike underpass there, it would be really useful for the community. It would also probably get people out of cars because they could stroll over to places. And so I think in terms of making the more, if grade separation is going to happen in order to make it more appealing, if there's a way to include the idea of another pedestrian bike underpass, at least somewhere in the middle there to help mitigate those, I think would make it more attractive. And also, they should be looked at, the question should be looked at of whether it's possible in terms of what's going on with Caltrain and whatnot. And I think that issue should not be forgotten because I think that would be really useful for the community and provide benefits with no downsides. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Our final two speakers are going to be Richard Perkey and Rebecca Eisenberg. Richard Perkey, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name's Richard Perkey. I live on Tennyson Avenue in the old Palo Alto neighborhood. And I've joined this evening to speak about the Churchill grade crossing. I believe the best solution for the Churchill grade crossing is to close Churchill to vehicle traffic at Alma and to implement the recommended traffic mitigation member measures that have been explored and expanded on the, on the XCAP. By the XCAP. The, the traffic analysis that's been presented to XCAP shows that the traffic diverted to other roadways by the closure of Churchill can be handled if the road and intersection changes are made to improve the traffic flow on Embarcadero Road, on Oregon Expressway and Alma. So I believe that the closure of Churchill will maintain or improve traffic flow in this part of Palo Alto at a much lower cost than the other proposed alternatives. I urge the Advisory Commission Council to adopt the Churchill closure option and, and move forward in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkey. Our final speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg. Rebecca, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to point out that it was only three months ago today, three months and two days on March 6th, 2020, that an 11-year-old named Paul LaFarg was fatally killed and hit while on his bicycle, just a couple of blocks away from the intersection that's at, on discussion right now. We have a big safety problem in our city of Palo Alto. We have too many cars on the road and not enough safety for our children and seniors and anyone else who is not driving. When it comes to this, under, you know, proposed undergrounding or grade separation, we know that something is going to change and that's that the electrification is going to bring a lot more trains and a lot more danger to our community. I reject any argument that says that we cannot afford to protect the safety of our children and our seniors when the Palo Alto City Council still refuses to put a business tax on the ballot that would tax only our biggest employers and only our biggest landlords at a level that Menlo Park, Los Altos and all other neighboring communities tax their wealthiest businesses too. I think we know what's most important here. What's most important here is the safety of our community and any solution that sacrifices safety for cost is one we all need to reject. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eisenberg, and that ends our speakers for this evening on this item.
Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate everyone's input. Returning to council, open for any questions or comments for staff or our XCAP representative. So just hit your hand if you'd like to speak, Vice Mayor DeBois. Yeah, so first of all, I just want to thank every member of the XCAP. You guys have been meeting for quite a while and we are appreciative of everybody's service. And I do want to make sure that we have enough members left, but I, I realize you probably have reached a point where it doesn't make sense to add new members, bring them up to speed. I did see the letter mention some new renderings and I see those are up on the website. So also, thanks to staff for keeping the Connect Palo Alto website up to date. And I just want to say, I'm glad we had one speaker on Charleston and Meadow. We really need to get people engaged on those crossings in South Palo Alto. It will be interesting as we go through this process. I do think we need to get to some alternatives. You know, it's unclear what's going to happen with Caltrain due to COVID-19. There's even a potential it may stop running for a period of time. But I think we will expect, you know, trains to start running and running more frequently. So we need to keep our eye on these grade separations. So thanks again to XCAP for all the work. Thanks. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you so much, Mayor Fine. Thank you, Chair Naik, Vice Chair Klein, all the people who have been participating for so long. I had the pleasure of dialing in on Zoom and getting to be a watcher instead of a participant last week at your meeting. And I just want to say that for, for people who've been following this for some time, to watch the Noise and Vibration Report, to see the level of analysis, these are questions the community has had for a very long time. And, and the work that you are doing, I feel is at exactly the right level of detail and understanding. And I just can't tell you how much I appreciate it. So just want to touch on a few things. I wanted to thank Ms. Khan and Ms. Lau for their service. We will certainly miss them and we appreciate their helping us. I also want to say with respect to the Zoom meetings, you have had more attendees. It is easier. You've had a wider variety of attendees, easier for people to attend. I know, I know it's harder for all of us to, to do some of the coordination and follow along with the details. But I think that's been a bonus and I think hopefully that will go towards the Vice Mayor's comments about getting people more engaged in South Palo Alto. I was interested to hear about the separation between Charleston and Meadow and it's possible, you know, we'll go in slightly different directions there. I just wanted to run through all of the, the connection points and just make sure that staff is working closely with the school district. I'll, I'll look for a nod on that as we look through there. Great. And Stanford, I know they're as busy as we are, but we're staying connected with them and what they're interested in. Looking for another nod.
To be frank, there hasn't been a whole lot of interaction on this particular topic with Stanford, but I do know that they track it from time to time.
Okay, well, it'd be great to just proactively make sure we send it to them. I know there's a new person who's working on community engagement, which is separate from land use, so perhaps making sure that that person is looped in. And then businesses, I know we've been working on for some time. And then I understand, I wonder if Chair Naik could just touch a little bit on the, the pedestrians and bicycles and understanding which level of analysis we need to make sure that we're making good choices. If you could just elaborate on that, that, and that'll be my, my last point.
Sure. I think up until this point, the alternatives that we've had, so the hybrid and the viaduct in the trench generally didn't have a lot of changes for the bike pedestrian paths. But in terms of the Churchill closure and now the new alternatives, there's significantly more thinking that needs to go into the bike pedestrian portion of it. And so I would say that it's obviously because of COVID, it's taken a little while to get the new renderings. And so we're trying as best we can to get the attention of the different bicycle groups. I'm actually, I pitched in for staff and did a presentation at the Palo Alto Bicycle Coalition Meeting and got them up to speed and got some, lots of feedback from them. And I'm actually doing the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition this Thursday, kind of just a summary report. So we're trying to, to shake all the branches and try to get as much as we can. But I, I would say that it is, it has been a concern of many XCAP members that the early renderings have been more automobile focused, which is understandable because that's kind of our biggest engineering feat. But I would say now we're getting to Because that's kind of our biggest engineering feat. But um I would say now we're getting to the point where we're trying to make sure that everyone understands the bike ped connection. So that we can follow the comp plan and make sure that we're treating everybody equally. And all of this is trying to be done in advance of what is supposed to be a virtual town hall meeting, which I will let staff tell you about because it's really their party. Um but X cap's role is to sort of review all the documents and all the exhibits as much as we can prior to it going out to the community. Um so that we make sure we've got the best information out there and frankly, so that it's as clear as it can be, so that we can try to garner the support that we will ultimately need. Um for folks to really get behind, uh you know, whatever the solution is going to be. I think X cap is very aware that, you know, there's a big difference between what X cap eventually might recommend. And the support you're going to need from the community. And what's clear is we need to be able to address cars and bikes and pedestrians. And there has to be enough visual images to support all of those modes of transit equally.
Uh amen to the the visual images. Um and I did say that was my final question. I just want to make one final point, truly final point. Um which is that um, you know, this is one of the three things, I think, despite the pandemic and all of the other crises we're dealing with that we need to still work on. Um even if Caltrain stops running temporarily, even if it takes some period of time for it to get back to where, you know, their business plan hoped or even where we were before a few months ago. Um we need to keep working on this. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. I'll just uh note to my colleagues, I should have mentioned a moment ago. Um we're going to be using like we did in the budget meetings, kind of a rough five minute timer for comments. And so I believe our Assistant City Manager will be doing that. Sorry, uh Tom and Allison, I should have mentioned it to you both. Next is Councilmember Ness.
Liz, I think you're muted. Can't hear you.
You're on mute.
I'm going to go down a different track, very bad, fun, um than Allison chose to. But I wanted to make a couple of comments about the longevity of the group that has worked on this. Um first, thank you, Nadia. Thank you to your co-chair Larry. Thank you to everyone who continued to come. I went to a lot of the meetings and you were um incredibly deep in your coverage and um. And very wise in many of your comments, but I'm I'm not sure how many people know how far back you go with rail. And the first time I can remember it was giving a presentation at my house more than 10 years ago. It dealt with the the what was then going to be the train that um that covered all of California. And you followed that. We should mention Elizabeth Alexis as well, who's been in the background on all of this. So doing this was not new for you. Um I think you probably know this topic well enough that you could run the train at some point if you needed to. Uh but it's it's been fascinating to watch as we've gone from what could have been the San Francisco LA connection. To something far more modest out in the valley. Um and now we're back to looking at rail crossings. Just as Caltrain has announced they may cut way back on their service. So it's interesting, if we stay on the same pathway, I I think that will be to our advantage. But it also probably is going to be challenging. There was someplace along the way, someone will say, oh, you know, that train doesn't exist anymore. And I worry about what's going to happen to us over the next two to three years economically. But but my main message is to say thank you for hanging in there. Thank you for continuing to know what's really going on in the big railroad world, and I know that you do. And for um following this so assiduously all these years.
Thank you.
You must be um either exhausted or really just exhilarated at how far you've come.
All of those things.
Thanks, Graham.
Thank you, uh Councilmember Chlata.
Yeah, I also just want to uh echo the thanks to the X cap. It's it's an incredible amount of work and detail. But this project is going to define our city for some time. They call it a century long project. Hopefully it doesn't take that long to make it happen, but it's going to last at least a century. So definitely appreciate your diligence. Um and and I went on the X cap and and your work and the dedication. Uh I know it's a lot of personal time. Um I served on the Instruction Blue Ribbon Commission, which which was also pretty long, maybe not quite as long as X cap, but um. Yeah, I I think uh I think it's uh you're trying to figure out some of the deep issues that on council, we probably wouldn't have time to delve into. So thank you for kind of breaking the trail for us on this. I I would love, I don't know if we have other um X cap members on or um Nadia, you could you could you could say. But would love to know, you know, what else on council we could do to help facilitate this, whether it's, I don't know, I'm just I'm just hoping to ideas. Because I want to make sure you guys are effective, you guys have have the tools or empowered. It sounds like being able to take votes and having a chair is actually a good first step. But I'm thinking beyond that, right? And um you know, beyond some of the things you've you've already talked about, you know, what what can we do to enable you to um you and and the OX cap team to be successful? Um on this endeavor. Um so would love to hear some requests.
Sure, thank you. Um I think I think the reality is we're doing the best work that we can. I have to confess that the one thing that um both uh my Vice Chair Larry Klein and I are concerned about is. Um I it it's difficult to negotiate over Zoom and I I say that to council members who know full well what that's like every Monday. But um you know, I've got, there's 10 of us on the X cap right now. Um most of us don't have experience doing any of this. And so there is a bit of concern of how difficult that might be over Zoom. And so um your patience, obviously, in this timeline is 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 very much appreciated. And I will just say it's it's very difficult for us because nobody wants to go any longer because it it, you know, it is a big time sink. But at the same time, we're so committed and we've been doing it for so long that we really want to see it to resolution. I think where we could use the council's support is just in um continuing to make sure, as you've already said to staff, that we get feedback from PAUSD. That to the extent it's even possible during these really difficult times, um any impacts or any feedback from the business community would be appreciated and from Stanford. And um I think we've got the bicycle and ped folks pretty engaged, but you know, continued support in in all ways that we can get that feedback would be most helpful. And I would say I think I'd be remiss if I didn't flag this for the council is that, you know, um I think before there was, there was at least the um the rumor that Palo Alto was behind other cities. And I think um in the time that X cap really got started back last October, we have moved pretty quickly ahead with lots of really deep analysis. And I think COVID has made it where we may have overshot Caltrain just a bit at this point. And so you we actually have invited Caltrain to come to our June 17th meeting. So um I know that the contract amendment for ACOM's work is coming up after that. And so I would encourage you and I will try to at least communicate to you any any updates that come from there. Because, you know, we have to work in a partnership with Caltrain and the staff has to work in partnership with Caltrain. And if they don't have the folks in place or frankly, can't really give us the attention right now, um that's going to, you know, that could potentially have an impact. And I, you know, I we're waiting to see what Caltrain says, but I just want to throw it out there that that that's something that you guys as policymakers should look out for because it could impact, you know, what all of us are doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um and uh have you guys had a chance to think much about funding sources? Because I know like on the state side, $60 shortfall and, you know, all this kind of financial drama. Um and if so, I I I don't know if you could share some of your thoughts on this.
So we've specifically stayed away from the funding conversation. I'm going to let staff take that one. I will just say that um, you know, we do, there is the money for measure B. And while this is a, you know, we're having a a dip in the economy, it's a 30 year tax measure. So um that's out of my range to tell you what happens there. But as you said, it's a hundred year project, right? So we're looking at this in the long term and the reality is that outside of the number of trains, um the grade separation projects are the thing that offers the most uh safety to the community. And actually the biggest impact to traffic generally. Um and whether they're running, no, you know, the train schedule obviously will come back at some point. And even if it takes a few years, when it does come back, the traffic will have an implication, it'll it'll have an implication all around. So um Philip, I don't know if you want to say something about the funding.
Yeah, thank you. Um I just wanted to add that on top of the measure B grade separation funding that we are, you know, monitoring other uh funding opportunities. There have been some uh federal funding opportunities that have come by, um including the federal uh build grant. Um which unfortunately, we're not um able to apply for until we have a a project defined. So once we've selected an alternative, we'll have um potentially, you know, we'll be watching for similar funding oppor- opportunities. And we can really start uh hopefully lobbying for other funding opportunities.
I would also say we're being mindful of the fact that um there's potentially a bike pedestrian component to some of the alternatives that's separate from the larger engineering component. And there's a possibility of applying for funding that is just for bike pedestrian projects that might be separate. So um you know, those are things that in our in X cap's report, one of the things that we've discussed is trying to be able to present the alternatives. You know, if there's a way to look at them as different chunks, that that might be something that we might be able to offer. So you have a menu of potential alternatives. Um but you know, until we get to real deliberations, I I don't have more to say about that.
Is that all, Councilmember Chlata?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh Councilmember Cool.
Um I too want to say thank you very much for all the work that you guys have been doing at the X cap. The entire team has constantly robust conversations, you know, so it's it's actually really interesting to hear. Um I wanted to ask, could you give the general public a kind of idea why Palo Alto, you know, if I school district and the business community as well as Stanford is not part of this? Because they um, I know that PA USD used to have somebody that was part of the X cap and then they pulled out, maybe just to update everybody.
Yeah, Ed, did you want to take a stab at that?
Well, um to your point, uh Councilmember, I think that both PAUSD and the chamber was previously involved. But again, perhaps uh based on uh how the discussions were headed, I think they decided that it wasn't appropriate for them to engage at the level of ongoing X cap participation. So and most recently, we've talked about trying to get an updated perspective on the options from PAUSD. Uh so that will be our our next step.
Um and so you're having um you're having constant um meetings with the three different groups to make sure that everybody's engaged. And providing reports back to the X cap group, just so that we don't have the same thing happen with the bike and ped um um group. You know, that they come into a discussion a little bit later.
I think that's certainly uh a challenge, uh quite frankly, and and so having the um point in time. At which whether it's Chamber, PAUSD, or Stanford feels that it's uh appropriate for them to weigh in, I think it's a question for them. And uh so we'll try it with PAUSD now that we've got a little more uh clarity around the latest new idea. And then ask them to uh let us know if they'd care to provide a perspective on the full range of options now that it's been updated. We haven't yet done that with the Chamber uh and uh Stanford, uh but I think that PAUSD because their alley is right next to one of the crossings. Maybe in a better position to give us more specific feedback.
So um I'm just, I'm just kind of, I'm kind of getting the idea or what I'm hearing from you is that there isn't uh more insistence of having that communication with a different entities than. You're waiting for them to reach out to you or um are we waiting for them to reach out to us?
Well, we're doing uh the work with the X cap, quite frankly, to refine the options at this point. We're we're still working on the additional ideas that have been added in order to get that finalized. At a point that it's um sort of ready for a broader rollout. And so we can do that direct communication with the entities that we just described simultaneous with when we're ready to package it for the public in general.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Nadia.
Thank you.
So I don't see any other hands. I think Councilmember Phil Seth, you're you're the only one who hasn't spoken, but I'll just speak for all of us, Nadia. Um thank you to you and the X cap. We really appreciate your continued work, especially during these difficult circumstances. Um and we should have more of these meetings so we can actually dive into some of the the meat on some of the uh the great crossings. I guess two comments, a few of my colleagues have mentioned, I'll align myself with. One is uh, you know, more work on the bike ped stuff and just figuring out what what those scenarios are. And then I think as the Vice Mayor mentioned, um would love to see some more community input on the South Palo Alto crossings. I know you guys are working on it.
Thank you. And I wasn't sure um if the city manager wanted to talk a little bit about the the upcoming virtual town halls that you'll be doing.
Uh let's see, well, no- nothing specific at this point because we haven't yet scheduled those, but uh Philip, would you like to comment?
Well, actually, that's a decent lead in, um actually, thanks, Nadia. Um not to speak about the town hall specifically, but we'll be coming back in two weeks to provide um an updated uh work plan, which will have information about the town halls. And um also the AECOM contract amendment reflective of um the new alternatives. So at that point, uh maybe I can share a little bit about the town halls, but um what we're looking to do is is a virtual town hall and and um. And um there's a really interesting um concept that um be very excited to share with you, um hopefully at that meeting.
Okay, well, um thank you all. Any last comments? Nadia?
No, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak. And um if we need to come sooner, we will come sooner. Otherwise, I think we're scheduled to come the in early August.
I think so. All right. Well, thank you all so much. Thank you um for doing this. Thanks for staff helping to organize and thanks to everyone for commenting. We appreciate it. Okay, um let's move to our next item, which is agenda changes, additions and deletions. Mr. City Manager, do we have anything for that?
Let's see, nothing that isn't already on your published revised agenda.
Yeah, so just to recap there, item six, the 2020 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan has been moved to June 16th. And our discussion regarding uh the establishment of pension fund funding policy, item seven, has also been moved to June 16th. So with that, we'll move to oral communications where any member of the public may speak to an item not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you want to speak to an item not on the agenda. I really do want to encourage folks, if you're intending to speak about uh issues of policing or Black Lives Matter or some of the protests we've had in the past week. I would encourage you to give your comments in item four A, uh where we'll be discussing a resolution and next steps there. Um but if there are things not on the agenda you'd like to speak to, now is the time. And if the clerk would please help me uh get these folks uh giving their comments.
Sure. Our first speakers, Carrie Templeton. Carrie, go ahead. You have two minutes to speak on anything not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Fine, members of the city council, staff and neighbors. I am Carrie Templeton, the Chair of the Planning and Transportation Commission, but I'm not here tonight in that capacity. I'm excited to announce my candidacy for city council. I have lived in Palo Alto for 15 years. It's been a wonderful place to raise my two children who attend our public schools. I know we're going through tough times as a community, but I want to help us get through it. I'm encouraged by how the community has come together to face these challenges of shelter in place, participating in tough budget discussions. And gathering peacefully to demand criminal justice reform. There is more work to do. This moment calls on us to choose how to use our skills to drive systemic improvements. Crisis requires leadership and I am ready to apply my experience as a high tech professional, a mother and a committed community activist. To deliver the improvements our city desperately needs. I have a proven track record of getting things done and resolving conflict and I seek to bring those skills to the city council. My top priorities include implementing inclusion goals across all city programs, improving our transportation ecosystem to reduce traffic and emissions. And encouraging innovation in our city governance, including rolling out community policing strategies. If you'd like to get to know me better or talk about what's going on in Palo Alto, please feel free to call or email me anytime. You can find my contact information at carryforcouncil.com, C A R I for council.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. Our next speaker is Bill Ross. Bill, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Um I'd like to request formal review by the city council of the June 2nd curfew order of the city manager. I'm going to repeat some of the concepts raised by Judge Cordell and Pat Burt, a former member of your council. Curfew is one of the most serious, if not the most serious of actions that a local govern- government can take. First here, the emergency supposedly upon which the order was based was the wrong emergency. Curfews are supposed to be very limited in scope. The emergency here was that generated by the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. And the associated constitutional rights to assemble and protest and the need to protect the public health and safety. There wasn't any evidence linking linking the curfew with the declared emergency of the city manager. There wasn't any evidence linking the curfew with the declared emergency of the city manager, the COVID crisis. One has to question whether that was done to avoid city review. If it was a new local emergency under state law, it has to be brought before you within seven days. It wasn't. It has to be widely assembled or communicated. That wasn't done. Twitter doesn't work. 11 days? There's no evidence to support that. But the most important thing is it must evidence the constitutional balancing between the constitutional rights, assembly and protest, and that of the public health and safety. Lastly, it wasn't reviewed and approved by the city attorney. You need to have the whole process reviewed so that if it comes up in the future, the best interests of the city are protected, not the best interest of the city manager, an experienced government official who knows the differences. I would hope that the council would call the matter up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Our next speaker is Peter Chow.
Hi, I want to reiterate Mr. Ross's sentiment that there should be a review on the curfew. First of all, I appreciate all the work that you're doing to make Palo Alto a better place. Unfortunately, the actions of city officials last week stood in the way of this progress. Few actions undertaken by the city unambiguously impact all Palo Alto citizens in the way a curfew does. And the curfew was undertaken without input from elected officials or the public. This curfew has three main problems. It was pretextual, escalatory and hostile to the Black Lives Matter movement. It was pretextual because it was enacted using COVID-19 emergency powers. It did not involve elected officials. And if you look at the evidence that's provided, a lot of it is very circumstantial. They say 50 to 100 cars were encircling. Can we say that this wasn't a protest that was going around?
Yeah.
If they were 50, excuse me, are you interrupting me? Kelly? Sorry, Kelly was speaking.
Go ahead, continue.
Okay. 50 to 100 cars. If there were that many people, would it, could our, even our police force be able to subdue that? Next, it was escalatory. It immediately validated the notion that looting was going to occur. Furthermore, this would increase encounters between the police and public, and anyone out after the curfew could be questioned. Finally, this is hostile to the Black Lives Matter movement. People who may be willing to listen are instead galvanized by fear. Furthermore, black community members are subjected to increased policing. I'm sure that you can appreciate the importance of creating spaces for voices to be heard during a time of national reckoning. The use of a curfew to protect our retail community comes at the cost of citizens seeking to express their First Amendment rights and reinforces the notion that marginalized voices are systemically marginalized. Furthermore, outsized reactions to threats of violence perpetuates an unfounded sense of fear in a time when government officials should be particularly mindful of creating unnecessary hostility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chow. Our next speaker is Kimberly Thacker. Can you hear me? Go ahead.
I'm here to appeal to put a reconsideration of the Palo Alto Children's Theater budget cuts back onto the agenda before it's too late, especially the cuts to the staff. I have two teen boys and they've spent eight years in the theater and numerous performances, classes and activities. And I've been a volunteer with the friends and seen the impact on thousands of kids. You've heard all the stories and the emails. You know, it's way more of an extra. It's a center of community. It builds life skills and competence. It improves and protects mental health and it helps kids pursue passion and joy. We're very concerned that there's cuts up to almost half of the theater's budget and that this has a huge impact on our unique staff that has so many different areas of professional expertise. And that's really what makes our theater stand out and be able to do what it can do. They work together as a team for programs, including all the virtual programs that they're trying to innovate right now and that are so needed when our kids are in this uncertain time and are experiencing so much loss and depression. And they just really need their community and their programs. Furthermore, we need to support artists. It's hard enough to be an artist here when things are going well. If some of these people are laid off, they're probably not going to be around when things resume and stuff gets back and people want to hire them back. And as said before, they have years of experience and expertise. They're not easily replaceable. So I just appeal to you. I don't understand the categories, the complexities of the budget at all. I know you've spent hours and hours on it that you're working so hard. You must be so tired. I also know this is totally out of your timeline, but a lot of us didn't know about this back at the time where maybe we could have spoken up earlier. So we're just begging you to be innovative, to take this last chance to think about reallocating and giving money to community services with amounts that are relatively small compared to a lot of big budget items. Think about things that could be put off for a few years without as major an impact as the community programs have to kids, teens and adults, our theater and all the other programs that mean so much to so many people. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kimberly. Our next speaker is Ian Jacobs. Ian, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Ian Jacobs. I would first like to give my gratitude for how fast the city's had to adapt to changes thrown at them with the virus. And I completely understand the pressure and issues that have come about because of it. With that, I would also like to talk to the council about the choice to lay off nearly 50% of employees at the Palo Alto Children's Theater. Most importantly, the Children's Theater has continued to operate during the COVID-19 shutdown. I understand it's odd that a live performance company can continue to operate when people are not allowed to gather to see shows. However, PACT has been providing all of its participants with online voice lessons, script reads, fun get-togethers and many other items. Children's Theater is actively providing its community with continued stimulation and relief during this uncertain time, as well as with the social, emotional and public speaking skills that its young participants need not only to function now, but in the future as well. I personally attended numerous online get-together meetings with Children's Theater in which large numbers of participants were led in playing fun games, participated in team building exercises and started a brand new online music club. These online meets are providing both the young and old participants of Children's Theater a reminder that even during these uncertain times, the community within the theater still exists. And we are all present and will continue to support each other. I understand that there is uncertainty about live performances in the coming year. However, cutting back on the staffing now should not be done as a reaction to this future because the theater is still making use of its staff to give to this city. Laying off employees at the theater would inhibit these programs that many are relying on and will be depriving the city of Palo Alto of a much-needed hub for culture and community during these times. I ask you to please reconsider laying off employees at the Palo Alto Children's Theater as it is still providing greatly to this community. Again, I commend all of you for your extremely fast work in these very fast-changing times. And I know that there are certain issues that you need to deal with, and I believe this is one that is very important. So thank you.
Are we gonna go?
Our next speaker is Amy Brown. Amy, go ahead. You have two minutes.
I am also very concerned about the cuts you are planning to the Children's Theater. The theater cannot survive a 50% cut to staff. They will not be able to put on the productions you are allowing them to do. This is the heart of the issue. These people need support as artists in our community and may not be around to resume jobs when this terrible situation is behind us. Also, the new programs they are developing online and future programs need staff support. They are currently providing summer camps now and need to have the staff to run them. I understand how much work you are putting into all this and greatly appreciate the difficulty of all the decisions you are making. I realize it seems counterintuitive to fund staff when there are no performances, but I beg you to look at the longer view. I do not understand all the details of the budget, but it seems that there may be reallocations or emergency funds available. I want to encourage you to reconsider these crippling cuts in your next meeting before this budget is finally adopted. I have a child who started at the Children's Theater when she was eight. She found a second home there. The theater ignited her passion for theater. She is a recent Gun grad and is going on to study performing arts at a well-renowned university in New York. I have volunteered at the theater for the past seven years and do not see how the theater can survive with this level of cuts to its amazing staff and still be able to put on anything near the productions and programs that make them such a value to the community. I really hope that you discuss and reconsider these cuts. I hope that more discussion with theater staff to work together for the best solution for all, knowing that many parents are happy to donate and participate in fundraising. Please work with the Friends of the Theater Board and accept their proposals for funding. Please take all of the emails and comments to heart and look once more at reinstating more of the theater's budget, especially for staff. Please watch the video my daughter made for you. These kids need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Our next speaker is Patty Rieger. Patty, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Patty Rieger and I'm a member of the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission. And I'm speaking as myself, not as a human relations commissioner. At a recent meeting, the council voted to reduce the size of the Human Relations Committee from seven to five without consulting myself and some other members of the very commission that would be affected. Unfortunately, I was not able to virtually attend that meeting and express my concerns. But given what is happening in our country, I urge the council that we consider its decision. One of the main reasons that they should consider is what Greg Tanaka asked at the meeting. And he was, one of the questions was, this is, is reducing the size could result in reducing the diversity on the commission. The staff and the council only brought up points for doing it was because it'd make it be more efficient. This is not the time to reduce the community involvement. It's the time to encourage more people, including people of color and economically disadvantaged citizens to take part in the governance. The Human Relations Commission played a vital role in maintaining a just and equitable climate in Palo Alto. And this is not the time to reduce the number of citizens involved in the commission. I urge the council to reconsider its motion and unlike its last meeting, have a robust discussion of the pros and cons of any changes, including input from the community members and members of the commission. I thank you very much and it's an honor to serve our city.
Thank you, Patty. Our next speaker is Katie Brown. Katie, go ahead. Katie, you may need to unmute from your end.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Katie Brown and I'm a graduated senior at Gun High School. And I'd like to speak on behalf of the Palo Alto Children's Theater and the proposed budget cuts. I spoke at a previous meeting, but I'd like to reiterate everything I've said before. The Palo Alto Children's Theater is so vital in our community and we need it, especially after this pandemic. I've learned so much from the theater and from all of the staff members and teaching artists. These staff members bring something truly special to the theater that you can't get anywhere else. They are so crucial and vital to everything that happens at the theater. I couldn't imagine the theater without the amazing staff supporting it. We need to support artists during this time of uncertainty and cutting 50% of the staff is not the answer. I also created a video I emailed to the council a while ago called What PACT Means to Me. I urge you to watch it because it shows you how much the theater has impacted so many kids across Palo Alto and the Bay Area. The theater wouldn't be able to do this without the incredible staff supporting the theater and these kids. I urge you to rethink the budget cuts and the funding. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Our final three speakers are going to be Jeremy Erman, Jonathan Erman and Kevin. Jeremy, go ahead.
Hello. In October, city council directed city staff to form a new five-year lease with the school district to keep Coverly whole through 2024. This didn't happen. In April, city staff proposed pulling out of Coverly altogether. Then in May, city staff suggested keeping some parts of Coverly and not others. On May 13th, city staff sent council a memo about Coverly's tenants and finances. Unfortunately, this arrived without enough time for council to thoroughly read it before voting to end discussion on Coverly. Even worse, this memo had inaccuracies and incomplete information, such as wrongly listing the Palo Alto Chamber Orchestra as a short-term tenant, even though they have been there for decades. Even stranger, their office, which is shaded yellow on the map to indicate a long-term tenant, is missing from the attached list of city properties, even though virtually all of the so-called long-term tenants of Coverly are listed. Bizarrely, this lease calls for the city to retain the theater's lobby and auditorium, but gives the backstage dressing rooms to the school district. This means most groups who use the theater will be unable to do so and existing contracts for 2021 will probably have to be scrapped. In the face of so much confusion, how can council, and I also want to point out, there's also a building which is, I believe, listed as going to the school district and the city under different names. How can council have an honest discussion next week about Coverly in the face of such confusion, especially when you are seeing the lease only after city staff pushed the school board to vote on it and sent eviction notices to effective tenants? This is not appropriate. I urge council to reject this lease, which will remain in effect through 2024, likely long after most cuts due to COVID-19 have ended. If you are inclined, not inclined to financially support it through 2024, why not sign a lease to keep Coverly whole through 2021? This will give everyone a chance to calm down and work together during this crisis to plan a future Coverly. I believe this can be paid for by deferring replacing seats in the Lucy Stern Theater and resurfacing the Magical Bridge Playground facility that has been closed for months. Also, scaling back or deferring multi-million dollar renovations at Lincolnada Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Our next speaker is Jonathan Erman and then our final speaker will be Kevin. Jonathan, go ahead.
All right, am I unmuted now?
You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Jonathan Erman. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Sorry, yes, there's been a lot of confusion about this. I think that the staff report is incomplete and was not carefully looked at by the council anyway. I think there's misunderstandings about how the theater is utilized and the people who are in that building. The school board has no interest in who the tenants are and simply voted on what was sent them, even though that was not carefully vetted by staff. There is no lease yet, even though the school board voted on a document and, you know, eviction notices have been sent and yet the council has not even actually, there is no signed lease yet. So I think this needs to be carefully looked at. The previous arrangement served the community well. There are plenty of tenants that the city has throughout its operations that don't pay anything, which is fine. But to penalize these people who have been using the community center and to keep them dangling for the last several months on month-by-month leases, in cases for years, seems unfair. All of the, especially all the artist studios who have long-term leases. So the Coverly nearly needs to be looked at. In general, this whole budget has been really, really disturbing to watch. Considering that it's not based on, you know, anything firm. It's based on your abstract projections. And you say, well, we have to do this. We have to cut that. But, you know, there are some things in life which you can't do anything about. You know, some things are inevitable, like gravity or a train speeding at you or the death of a friend. But this budget, these are all choices that you're making. You know, when you say things like, well, we'll break everybody's heart. We have to make tough choices. The fact is, if you really were committed to keeping all of the employees in the city employed at this time and to making sure community services are there, because let's face it, right now, what people really need are jobs. They need community, they need these services. And, you know, you have all, you have, there seems to me that there are capital projects that could be deferred without a loss. And yet, you know, for much, for much less than what those cost, you know, you are going to throw away people's jobs and livelihoods and the community activities that bring us together. They're irreplaceable. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Our final speaker is Kevin.
Hello, can you hear me? Thank you. City council, city manager, I would like to concur with earlier comments made during public comment about the curfew. We've talked a lot in the news and in our general discourse about how the deterioration of our civil liberties by the current federal administration. But it's sad to see that in our local level, we are taking similar steps with depriving citizens of our First Amendment rights to assemble and petition, especially on such a blanket 10-day curfew on 8:30 PM to 5:00 in the morning. Most people probably didn't get that information until the day after when the Palo Alto Online comes out with an article about it or like the text of our SEC, which we, most people probably still haven't quite connected to. As you've seen with the ACLU letter, if we are taking such drastic actions, we need to be much more careful about what we are explicitly targeting. A few random rumors on the internet, if that's enough to set off a curfew, then I don't see how this city would just have, not be just curfue constantly, given apparently how people think the Stanford Shopping Center is so easily targeted. Such I would like a review about curfew and whether if we can have a more set policy about exactly what strict considerations on the evidence and on public input about how, if ever, a future curfew would come into. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kevin. And that was our final speaker. Thank you, Kevin. And that was our final speaker.
Okay, uh, thank you so much. Thank you to everyone for your input. Uh, we appreciate you sticking with us and sharing your thoughts, questions, and and comments. Um, we now move on to the consent calendar. Items two, three, and four. Um, so Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, I'd like to pull number four.
Okay, Vice Mayor is asking to pull number four. I would also like to pull that one. And I see is there a third to pull item number four? You you have to speak. Hand signals don't work. And you have to unmute.
Yes.
Okay, so that is three votes, myself, Vice Mayor DuBois, and Councilmember Niss pulling item number four. Amendments to the City of Palo Alto Tobacco Retailer Permit Ordinance. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I believe we had spoken, there may be space on the June sixteenth agenda. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Um, according to your um policies and protocols, thank you for for giving us a heads up. We were able to uh confirm one, uh, at first stating the obvious, that you have a packed agenda tonight. So uh, we would recommend uh putting it over to next week. You do have a special meeting scheduled on Tuesday, the sixteenth, and appears that that might be the best uh date uh in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, and we will try to get them the agenda as soon as possible and message it out to the public. Vice Mayor, I still see your hand raised or?
I'll I'll move consent.
Okay, um, Greg, I I see you have a comment, but I'm just gonna wait for a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Greg?
I'm putting no on two.
Okay. Um, and then we have two members of the public. Are you both wishing to speak on items number two or three? Which remain on the consent calendar? Okay, I see the hands go away, so I'm assuming not, but thank you both. Um, okay, so we have a motion to move the consent calendar. Let's go through the names. Uh, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Okay, uh, that passes unanimously with item number four removed and Councilmember Tanaka voting no on two. Councilmember Tanaka, the floor is yours.
Sure. So I'm putting no on number two. Um, this is a two million dollar contract for uh repaving. And while I think the the work is necessary. Uh, I think my big challenge here is we're going through a very tough budget cycle, which will be done by the end of this month. And what's really important is that we try to get the most from our vendors. Now, uh, this is a two million dollar contract, so it's not a small contract. And, you know, we hear of cries for, you know, don't cut my job, don't cut my program, right? I mean, there's a lot of, lot of needs that we have in the community. And my my big challenge with this is that uh, this was put up before the COVID nineteen pandemic. Really kind of went to full stream, poured the shelter in place. I think the bids came in just as the shutdown started. But certainly not when there was twenty-five percent unemployment in California. And uh, I see a lot of other cities basically going back to vendors and rebidding and getting them to reduce the amount that they're charging uh for for work. And I know that right now that um a lot of construction has has slowed down. And I believe that it would be much better for us as a city to go back to our vendors, especially when it's a two million dollar contract, especially when you know, everyone's clamoring for their for budget for their programs. For us to get them to lower the price. It may not be a lot, maybe five percent, maybe ten percent, I don't know. But I do know other cities are doing this and they're getting, they're getting progress on this, they're able to get uh better rates. The second thing that I found um a little bit disturbing by this is that um there was another, I think there were a couple other bids. But um, there are some issues, like I didn't talk about the technicality, but there's some sort of um mistake that some of the, some of the vendors made when they bid. And uh, there's actually even a bid protest, which is pretty rare. Usually it does not bid pros, usually the vendors don't complain about like not being able to um, not being able to to bid. And yet, they were uh denied the ability to rebid, which would have given us perhaps a lower rate. So I think there's lots of issues with this content item. And I realized during the good times when we have lots of money and the revenue's up and, you know, we don't have to really stress about this kind of stuff. That when money is really tight, when we're looking to do the kind of cuts that we're talking about, when we're asking our labor to take cuts, we're asking our management to take the cuts. When we are cutting, a lot of programs are very dear to everyone in Palo Alto. I think that um it's the prudent thing to actually um try to get more from our vendors than we have. Especially on a two million dollar contract. Um, no, there were some good parts to this, which is that um it came in below the engineering estimate, which is great. And, you know, it has a standard policy of being able for us being able to cancel it. But I just think we need to do much better in procurement of these large contracts. Because we need to make sure that taxpayer dollars are are being used to the fullest. So for this reason, for the fact that it wasn't renegotiated for the COVID, uh, you know, twenty-five percent unemployment in California and um, it didn't really allow um uh, the other vendors to reset their bids. I can't support this.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're next going to city manager comments and then after that we'll have a break. Uh, Mr. Chicago.
All right, thank you, uh, councilmembers, uh, and mayor. Uh, let's see, we do have a few slides just uh again, based on the Zoom format, I find that it may be helpful for the public to follow along uh, by having some slides that are actually readable. Um, and also just, uh, again, as we're making transition for the record, I would note that this uh bid is uh done pursuant to public contract code. As the council knows, construction bids are awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And uh, did follow uh both prescribed process protests are very common. Uh, unfortunately, such as it is among construction contracts and that the low bid is seventeen percent uh below the engineer's estimate. So the uh other additional information is provided in your report. Okay, then for the uh, let's see, comments for tonight, next slide, please. Just have a few things just to provide a quick update uh for public awareness. Uh, as uh council well knows, uh, and I'm sure the community well knows uh, as it relates to the COVID emergency. Uh, and uh also uh other issues that have been playing out over the last few weeks. This has been a very dynamic time. So we just note uh a few uh reminders of things that have uh evolved over the last few uh few weeks and in particular really here over the last week. First off, uh, that the shelter in place order does remain in effect. I would note uh that we did receive special communication from the county urging any community member who attended protests uh to uh obtain uh coronavirus testing uh at their convenience. Uh, simply as a recognition of uh the challenge with social distancing at any of the protests or demonstrations uh that have occurred over the last week or more. Uh, also note that the county order does continue to restrict a number of uh activities and in particular that at the city level, a face covering requirement is still in effect. And then finally, just want to uh note that we are working with the county to uh hopefully bring mobile testing, coronavirus testing to Palo Alto. Uh, we don't have a specific timeframe set yet, but we'll hopefully be able to bring that together quickly. And also want to provide that as a heads up, uh, should that come together uh quickly, but clearly we want to make sure that we can communicate uh that information as soon as it's available. Uh, also, just in terms of uh new facilities that are open pursuant to the most recent update to the county health order. Uh, our pool, uh Rinconada Pool was opened this past weekend and our dog parks are also now open. And finally, in in terms of the, I'm sorry, just saw the typo there, in terms of easing of restrictions. Uh, as of June fifth, the county does allow outdoor dining. And uh that thankfully, we're now seeing uh more activity at our restaurants. Uh, so certainly invite people to participate. We will have more information on that later this evening. Uh, in meanwhile, curbside pickup and delivery are also still options. And uh, again, we'll have a little more, much more information uh for the council, a discussion uh with your uh last item tonight. Next slide, please. Also, just uh again, uh F Y I, as I say, with uh the heat that occurred last week. Uh, we have uh established in our uh activating our cooling centers. Last week, we had the Mitchell Park uh Community Center open. And with over a dozen community members visiting it on the day with the heat advisory or uh high uh temperature advisory. And uh over the summer, should there be additional heat advisories, uh we will also add the art center auditorium as a another uh cooling center if necessary. And we'll use our webpage as well as other communication uh uh means, uh should that become necessary. And then finally, just want to note, uh with respect to the curfew, I do appreciate uh the public's patience. Uh, certainly, uh, a difficult decision and and issue that has certainly uh generated uh quite a bit of feedback from the community on a range of perspectives. So with that, next slide, please. Do want to note uh that we had a a significant uh demonstration here this past Saturday with a variety of estimates, uh but uh I think our staff made it about two thousand attendees here. Uh, and uh really express appreciation to participants who uh really uh certainly uh provided uh a strong uh communication and indication of their support for uh ongoing uh campaigns. Then in terms of your next steps with your budget, you've got the uh current year budget adjustments that will be coming next week. Just want to draw a distinction again. So those are for the current year budget adjustments uh with a report that will be coming up this Thursday. And then next, uh, we'll have your upcoming fiscal year budget adoption materials, which will be released next week. And the council considering that uh uh action on June twenty second. Then finally, I know we'll be talking about uh issues related to public safety and police accountability. Just I want to note that there is some additional information that has been posted on the police department's webpage. Uh, including information regarding current use of fault, use of force policies uh and related information on our webpage, cityofpaloalto.org slash police accountability. You can also get that through the uh police department page and then uh navigating down to the accountability tab. And that completes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chicago. Um, I see a hand from Councilmember Koo and then Niss.
Thank you for the report, um, City Manager. I wanted to ask, um, when you said, so after the March, my husband and I came home and we were kind of saying we need to go get tested now. But um, whether it's six days or seventh day or eighth day, we were kind of having a debate. Did by any chance um county, when they told you that advised for those of us who attended the march to get tested, did they happen to say what day to be going to test?
You know, that's a, that's a good question. I've heard a variety of incubation periods, so to speak, uh that had been recommending as as low as twenty-four or forty-eight hours. So I'm not sure if they specified one. Um, but certainly uh see if any staff is aware of it, but uh could certainly uh get back to you with that information.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. And then also, I just want to say thank you very much for the cooling centers. Um, a lot of the neighbors are very ecstatic about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Koo and Councilmember Niss. You're on mute.
Mute is off. So just to say a couple of words about the curfew. Um, not only did I totally support it, but I feel that Ed made um a good judgment call with that and including Chief Johnson as well. I wouldn't be half as enthused, but I had been in Santa Monica the weekend before. In fact, as I came up, um, San Jose was actually putting their curfew on for Sunday night. Santa Monica um made a dreadful mistake. They have an interim city manager who didn't apparently understand the need for a curfew. They also had um a police chief who seemed to not have I'll say it out loud, the same skills that Bob Johnson does. As a result, our city does not have any looting, it doesn't have any damage. And um, looking at the views of Santa Monica, which you now can see in on any YouTube. And also looking at Oakland, if some of you have been in that area lately, indicates that we were very fortunate. And whether the curfew stopped it or didn't stop it, I felt that it was very reassuring. And I think that is the job of our city, of our city manager and our and our our chief of police is to protect us. And while I know some chafed against feeling that they were um held back in some way from being out in the evening. I felt um that that what was done was exactly what we needed to have control over our city. So thanks, Ed. I appreciate and please pass our thanks on to the chief as well. Or pass my thanks on.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo or Councilmember Niss. Um, okay, uh, it's eight forty-five. I know we have a hundred and forty-eight people uh joining our meeting, which may be a Zoom record. So kudos to the public. Um, but I'm gonna call a ten-minute break, uh, just so council can stretch their legs. So let's all be back here at eight fifty-five, at which point we will take up item uh four A, I believe. Thanks all so much.
Uh, the county was recommending people uh seek coronavirus tests. Uh, and apparently it is three to five days after a potential exposure. So just wanted to close the loop on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, let me just pull up my agenda. So we are now on to item four A, adoption of a resolution expressing council support of the Black Lives Matter movement and a commitment to review police and public safety practices. I just want to give a couple framing comments here before we get started, because I understand this is an important item. Probably a lot of emotion around it. And certainly a lot of public comment and interest over the past few weeks. So just in terms of uh housekeeping, uh, a couple of comments here, then we'll go to the public comment. Um, I'm going to allocate an hour to the public comment and if we hit that, we will continue the item until the end of this meeting. Uh, speakers will have two minutes. And I will let you know when we are done taking new public comment. There's probably ten or fifteen minutes into that period. We will then turn the discussion over to council to read the resolution uh and vote on it. And after that, we can discuss other matters as related to public safety, policing, um systemic racism and diversity in our city and what our country is dealing with today. So it's just a few comments uh before we go to the public. You know, this is absolutely a tough year. Twenty twenty is turning out to be and we're we're only halfway there. Um, it's also been a tough month and a tough week. As I mentioned earlier, we're dealing with a health pandemic, uh an economic recession uh and social upheaval, uh, you know, which is absolutely justified and needed. Um, given some of the uh incidents we've seen across this country, uh particularly those of of police violence against black lives. And so that's why I chose to bring this item to council. Um, I want to thank Councilmember Cormac for writing the proclamation with me. I will admit, it is not perfect. Um, we are learning. I think we will all admit that. Um, but I will say, I I personally was uh enormously encouraged and enthused and really, we're really proud of our community and our city the other day on Saturday. Um, at the Black Lives Matter protest on a couple of accounts. One, um, just seeing all the young adults especially out there, leading and figuring out how do we move our society and improve um was truly inspiring and and so are many of the speakers. Um, two, our city staff, our police department, I think, did a really fair and good job of assisting the protesters and keeping everyone safe. So thank you for that. Uh, and three, I gotta say, I saw a couple of my fellow councilmembers for the first time in months and uh that was also a a nice thing. We we haven't seen each other in three months, so I gotta say, it was it was good to see a couple of you and the city manager who we have lots of Zoom sessions, but uh it was nice to see you in person and in the fresh air. But to Councilmember Koo's question earlier, uh, everybody who attended the protest actually should make an effort to get tested. Uh, that that's really important. Okay, so moving on to the public comment, um, you know, we encourage the public to speak here. That is your right. That is your privilege and we learn from you. So please do share your feelings, your thoughts, your ideas about this resolution and you know, about Palo Alto, how we can improve. We welcome that. I do ask, everybody, please respect the two-minute mark so that others can speak. Please, you know, be on your Palo Alto best behavior, right? Let's show everybody we can do this in a polite, congenial way where we have a discussion, no personal attacks, and let's make sure that we, I guess neighborly is the term. Let's act like the good neighbors that we are as we go through public comment. So just as to reiterate the rough rules I've set up here, we will take all the public commenters who do want to speak. But to manage our meeting, we're going to have an hour right now for this item, for item 4A. And each person will have two minutes. And if we hit that hour threshold, we will then continue the item to the end of the meeting or potentially another date, depending on the rest of our agenda tonight. So with that, Clerk Miner, if you'd please help me welcome our guests and public to provide their comment.
Sure. Our first speaker is Cairo Mo. Cairo, you have two minutes.
Hello. Yeah, let me say first off, I love to see the diversity on the city council. I love to see all the black people represented here. And I also would like to say, I love to see this resolution on the agenda. I am commenting in support of this resolution. Liz, I know you're a big proponent of housing. And I would like to say, maybe if we cut the police budget, we would have more money for housing. I would like to say, in addition to this resolution, I'm calling for the disarming, defunding and eventual dismantling of the Palo Alto Police Department, following the lead of cities, great cities like Minneapolis. As the death of George Floyd and countless others have shown, policing is a fundamentally racist and broken institution that has failed to be fixed through incremental reform. Liz, you mentioned that there was no looting because of the curfew. I'd like to clarify, there was no looting because people chose not to loot. It was not because of the police. It was not because of the curfew. Communities keep us safe. Police do not keep us safe. The Palo Alto Police Department's history of violence inflicted upon black and brown communities is a testament to how policing practices and criminalization simply increase racial and wealth disparities. Specifically, the Palo Alto Police Department has not banned chokeholds and its arrest records show that it has more racial bias than 81% of California departments. Is this the reputation that we want our great city to have? If you truly believe that Black Lives Matter, in addition to passing this resolution, supporting Black Lives Matter, beyond lip service, we should fund community development programs like affordable housing, equitable education, free healthcare, increased mental health and crisis support. We need to build alternatives to policing, not just talk about supporting the Black Lives Matter movement. Police don't keep us safe. Strong communities keep us safe. Strong communities make police obsolete. Thank you for your time and I hope you not only pass this resolution, but commit to defunding the Palo Alto Police Department and eventually disband it. One note, the police occupy almost 20% of the Palo Alto Police, the Palo Alto budget, whereas community services are only 13.3%. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Cairo. Our next speaker is Esther. Esther, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Esther Tveig and I go to Stanford and I'm currently living in Palo Alto. I'm commenting in support of the resolution to express council support of the Black Lives Matter movement and commit to review police and public safety practices. However, in addition to this resolution, I'm calling for the disarming, defunding and dismantling of the Palo Alto Police Department, following the lead of cities like Minneapolis. As the death of George Floyd and countless others have shown, policing is a fundamentally racist and broken institution that has failed to be fixed through incremental reform. As of now, as my great counterpart Cairo said, police occupy 19.73% of the Palo Alto budget compared to community services, which occupies only 13.3% of the budget. The proposed 2021 fiscal year budget is seeking to increase police general fund expenditures by 5.4%. However, the Palo Alto Police Department's history of violence inflicted upon black and brown communities is a testament to how policing practices and criminalization exacerbate racial and wealth disparities. Palo Alto Police Department, the Palo Alto Police Department has not banned chokeholds and its arrest records revealed more racial bias than 81% of California departments. Is this the legacy that we want our great city to have? If you truly believe that Black Lives Matter, we should fund community development programs like affordable housing, equitable education, free healthcare and increased mental health and crisis support, all of which cops are not trained to provide. We need to build alternatives to policing, not just pay lip service to supporting the Black Lives Matter movement. Police don't keep us safe. Strong communities keep us safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Esther. Our next speaker is Laura C. Laura, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Laura Shay and I'm a resident of Palo Alto. City Council, you preach community and compassion and lament the civil unrest. But what are you doing to solve the fact that our police department continually protects its overpaid thugs by spending tax money on settlements? In 2014, Zachary Perron used the N-word to describe a man he was arresting to a black fellow officer. PAPD covered it up, promoted him to police captain and honored him with a Medal of Valor. We now pay $400,000 a year to let a racist administrate in our city. Another officer, Agent Thomas DiStefano, has been sued three times, with the most recent suit asking for $3.9 million. DiStefano has a repeated pattern of terrorizing minorities with excessive force. Instead of protecting the safety of the city by terminating DiStefano, the city of Palo Alto has allowed this racist homophobe to work, wasting millions of taxpayer money in settlements. I want to leave with one final thought. Why are police paid on average two to three times more than our public school teachers? Or is this excessive force racism and terror we are getting out of these men really worth two to three times the value of educating and uplifting students? Thank you for your time.
So I just want to remind all of our speakers, please, let's be polite and constructive in our criticism and let's focus on policies and programs, not people.
Our next speaker is Bella Cooper. Bella, go ahead. You have two minutes. Bella, you may have to unmute from your end.
There we go. All right.
You turn your TV down or your computer.
Yeah, I think it should be good now. Hi, my name is Bella Cooper and I am currently a resident of Palo Alto. I'm commenting in support of the resolution to express council support of the Black Lives Matter movement and commit to review police and public safety practices. However, in addition to this resolution, I'm calling for the disarming, defunding and dismantling of the Palo Alto Police Department, following the lead of cities like Minneapolis. As the death of George Floyd and countless others have shown, policing is a fundamentally racist and broken institution that has failed to be fixed through incremental reform. As of now, police occupy 19.73% of the Palo Alto budget compared to community services, which occupy only 13.3%. The proposed 2021 fiscal year budget is seeking to increase police general fund expenditures by 5.4%. This is absurd. However, the police, Palo Alto Police Department's history of violence inflicted upon black and brown communities is a testament to how policing practices and criminalization exacerbate racial and wealth disparities. Palo Alto Police Department has not banned chokeholds and its arrest records revealed more racial bias than 81% of California departments. If you truly believe that Black Lives Matter, we should fund community developed programs like affordable housing, equitable education, free healthcare, increased mental health and crisis support. We need to build alternatives to policing, not just pay lip service to supporting the Black Lives Matter movement. Police don't keep us safe. Strong communities keep us safe. Thank you for your time and I hope that you not only pass this resolution, but commit to defunding the Palo Alto Police Department and eventually disbanding it. It is not important.
Thank you, Bella. Our next speaker is Ryan Globus. Ryan, you have two minutes.
At Palo Alto City Council, my name is Ryan Globus and I'm a resident of Midtown. I'm here tonight to urge you to adopt this resolution, but also follow up with concrete actions. Words are not enough. Specifically, I'm urging you to take two concrete steps. Open Foothills Park to all and enact the eight can't wait policies. First, Foothills Park. The criminalization of non-residents in the park codifies racism into our city code. Redlining pushed many black and Latinx people out of the city. And now we continue to block new housing that would enable more people in these communities to move here. The supposed reason for the ban is because Palo Alto paid for the park, but the communities we prevent from living here pay the very taxes that fund this park when they work here, shop here and stay in hotels here. Open Foothills Park. Second, we must reform the police department to prevent police brutality. In just the past couple of weeks, police in the Bay Area have killed two people, Sean Monterrosa and Eric Salgado. We must take steps now to ensure Palo Alto police don't kill members of our community. And we can start by enacting the eight can't wait. Those policies are banning chokeholds and strangleholds, requiring de-escalation, require warning before shooting, exhaust all alternatives before shooting, require a duty to intervene, ban shooting at moving vehicles, require use of force continuum and require comprehensive reporting. Words are nice, but we must follow through with action. Open Foothills Park and enact the eight can't wait policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Our next speaker is David Sasserdo. David, you have two minutes.
I'm David. I live here in Palo Alto. And I'd like to start with a story from a few years ago when I was out for an evening stroll on Miller Avenue and watched the Palo Alto police force a black man out of town. They walked him down to the edge of town and asked him not to return. They didn't charge him with anything. They didn't arrest him. They didn't cite him. I'm telling this story to make the point, which is that simply addressing violence like the eight can't wait, which I would certainly like to see, or symbolic measure like the one this evening, which would certainly be nice to pass, neither of them is sufficient. We need to find a solution which ends the longstanding practice of using police to hassle minorities resulting in their leaving town. I urge the city council to consider all options, including disarming the police, having a substantially smaller or non-existent police department with a completely different approach, and to look at ways of ending the longstanding racist practices of the police. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Samuel Mumford. Samuel, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yep. Hello, I'm glad to see that you've recognized Black Lives Matter or coming together, recognize Black Lives Matter. But moving forward, I'm more interested in what concrete steps the city council is going to take to curb Palo Alto police abuse. Other speakers have already talked about the various settlements Palo Alto has had to pay out, such as the $600,000 settlement because Palo Alto police officer slammed Gustavo Alvarez on the hood of a car and mocked him for being gay. Or the $250,000 settlement because Officer DiStefano's response to a man having epileptic seizure was to break the man's arm. Or the current suit for nearly $4 million against Officer DiStefano for slamming a man on the ground at Happy Donuts, shattering bones, knocking him out and falsifying a police report. Expressing support is no longer enough. I think this is something the city council knows and your community demands meaningful change. Looks like we're also looking for a way to cut the budget. And it seems to me like Officer DiStefano would be a good place to start. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Samuel. Our next speaker is Xander Ku. Xander, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Xander Ku. I'm a lifelong Palo Alto resident. So I urge Palo Alto to immediately move to disarm and defund the PAPD. We should instead work to remedy the legacy of redlining and housing discrimination that Palo Alto is built upon and invest in education and social programs for black and brown communities in our area. If you are reluctant to do the right thing, I offer these alternative actionable items for if the city would like to do the absolute bare minimum. First, I call for the release of internal investigation results and the firing of Captain Zachary Perrin. His use of the N-word and reference to a black colleague and the black man that he was saving is frankly sickening. Second, I call for the firing of Agent Thomas DiStefano, who has a record of brutalizing civilians, most recently in July 2019, where he racially profiled and violently attacked Julio Aravalo. Third, I call for ending the pension of former Sergeant Wayne Benitez, who consumes almost $10,000 a month of city money despite his disgusting brutality and subsequent homophobic remarks against Gustavo Alvarez and his failure to report the violent incident. Fourth, I call for the resignation of Chief Robert Johnson for his complacency in the face of these police wrongdoing. He assumed his post in 2018, but he has failed to act on these cases. And the fact that none of these three men have been held accountable shows Johnson's and the PAPD's complicity with racism, homophobia, classism and overall lack of human decency. Lastly, I call for the resignation of Ed Chikata. His 10-day curfew was not only racist and classist. It violates the California Constitution, is a blatant misuse of the COVID-19 emergency authority outlined in municipal code 2.12.060 and violates our First Amendment rights to assembly as American residents. It is clear that none of the aforementioned people are fully committed to the safety and well-being of Palo Altons and have failed over the years to be accountable to public scrutiny. Again, terminate Perrin and DiStefano, end pension for Benitez and Johnson and Chikata, please resign. Also, Liz Niss, your comments disgusted me as much as the curfew. Resign. Do better. I yield my time.
So I just need to remind our attendees again that our procedures and protocols, the rules that we all agree to, to run by these meetings and participate, do call for people to please focus on ideas, not individuals. That is really meant to support a more broad and democratic conversation among anybody who wants to give comment to the council and share their ideas with the community. One other quick note, it is 9:15. So we'd really appreciate if you please raise your hand in the next five minutes or so, so by 9:20. So we have a better count of who would like to speak. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Sean Chapman. Sean, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Sean Chapman. I'm a lifelong Palo Alto resident. And I would like to bring up some deep concerns that I have over the Palo Alto Police Department's racism and brutality. First off, I would like to talk about Captain Zachary Perron when he used the N-word as in a joke towards a black officer in 2014. This was not investigated until 2017 and the results were never made public. We still don't know if he ever faced any disciplinary action. He's still employed by PAPD and makes $400,000. In my opinion, he lost all credibility as a police officer when he said those words. So my question is, why is he still employed? My next concern is in regards to Wayne Benitez, who in 2019 retired amid a lawsuit involving excessive force for slamming a Palo Alto resident across the front of his car and making homophobic comments towards him. He still makes $118,000 annually from his pension. I'm asking, why is he still getting his pension? Thirdly, I would like to talk about Officer Thomas DiStefano, who in 2018 hospitalized a Palo Alto resident for no reason by slamming him against the ground. In 2013, he was involved in an incident in which a man who was experiencing an epileptic seizure was forced to the ground and was restrained with a knee on his neck while an officer broke his arm. He's cost Palo Alto taxpayers $750,000 in settlements, not including an ongoing $3.85 million settlement. He's still employed by PAPD and made $300,000 in 2019. Personally, I find it disgusting that this man makes far more than a teacher in Palo Alto. Lastly, I would like to talk about the curfew in response to rumors of looting in Palo Alto. It was unjust and a gross misuse of powers that were put in place solely to address the COVID pandemic. I'm demanding that City Manager Ed Chikata resign for violating the constitutional rights of the citizens of Palo Alto. To summarize, the Palo Alto Police Department has a problem with racism and police brutality. It needs to be defunded. I'm calling for Zach Perrin, Thomas DiStefano and Wayne Benitez to be fired and Wayne Benitez's pension to be cut. Please defund the PAPD and funnel the money to more useful, more useful things, such as the Palo Alto Children's Theater, or maybe we could close Churchill. Lastly, I refer to policy 302 of the PAPD's policy manual, which outlines the details of use of force review boards for when officers commit excessive force violations. 302.4.1 outlines the composition of the board and their currently.
Sean, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody to please address ideas, not individuals.
Our next speaker is Jordan Bernhardt. Jordan, you have two minutes. You may have to mute. There you go.
Hi, I want to thank the council for addressing this issue. I'm a graduate student at Stanford and I want to echo the comments made earlier about the overreaction and lack of justification for the curfew. Curfew was a symbol of the city managers and the city police's over-criminalization and implicit bias against people of color. There has been little to no looting and little to no evidence that there is a substantial risk of looting. This is made clear by the use of a pretextual justification for the curfew. The curfew put peoples, particularly people of colors, lives in danger by giving the police extra justification to stop and harass residents. The city manager tried earlier tonight to praise the protests, but he couldn't bring himself to say Black Lives Matter or to mention why people are demonstrating. Councilwoman Niss's dismissiveness would indicate that she too has trouble supporting the movement. I urge the council to take the calls for police reform and accountability seriously. We've all seen the awful murder of George Floyd and we need to act now to reduce the risk of anything close to that happening here. The comments earlier tonight suggest that it's all too likely a possibility. Take the steps now to support black lives. Take the steps now to improve police. Take the steps now to support black lives. Take the steps now to improve police accountability. Start planning for the next negotiations with the police union so that we can successfully dismiss officers that abuse their positions. Pass this resolution and pass the eight can't wait policies. And I urge Mayor Fine to keep Black Lives Matter and police accountability issues on the council's agenda moving forward. Thank you. I yield my time.
So I just remind everybody again to please address issues and not individuals. One of the reasons behind that rule is not that anyone in the city is above criticism or doesn't deserve it. That is totally legitimate. But it's really to foster a fair, democratic, and you know, useful, productive conversation among everybody who is giving a comment and may have differences of opinions. Let's focus on ideas, please.
Our next speaker is Sepha Santos Powell. Sepha, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Sepha and I'm a Palo Alto resident as well as a Stanford student. I'm commenting in support of the resolution to express um, council's support of the Black Lives Matter movement and commit to review the police and public safety practices. However, this is not nearly enough. In addition to this resolution, I'm calling for the disarming, defunding, and dismantling of the Palo Alto Police Department. Policing only serves to maintain a white supremacist state. This is not an exaggeration. As of now, as my friends have said, police occupy 19.73% of the Palo Alto budget compared to community services, which only occupy 13.3% of the budget. That is absurd and a wildly inept response to the systematization of black death. And doing this, you are demonstrating that you care more about property than people. I would like to reiterate that the Palo Alto Police Department has a history of inflicting violence upon black communities, which is attested into how policing practices and criminalization do nothing but exacerbate racial and wealth disparities. We need to build alternatives to policing, not just pay lip service to supporting the Black Lives Matter movement. Racial justice also means massive wealth redistribution on behalf of white people. This also means looking to black-led organizations, doing this work, and following their lead. The state-sanctioned genocide of black people is occurring, and you will be implicated in this process if you do not choose to defund the police department. If you truly believe that Black Lives Matter, we should fund community development programs like affordable housing, equitable education, free healthcare, and increased mental health and crisis support. I encourage you to look into your hearts and your massive pockets to contribute to racial justice and black liberation. As you can see, the residents of Palo Alto are in support of the disbanding of the police. So if you seek reelection, you should heed their suggestions. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you not only pass this resolution, but commit to defunding the Palo Alto Police Department and eventually disband it.
Thank you, Sepha. Our next speaker, Sarah Goodman. Go ahead, Sarah. You have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, thanks so much. I would love to echo exactly what Sepha was saying. Um, one thing that I want to focus on is that 81% number, the worst than 81% of California cities, the disproportionate violence against black and brown communities that's evident in all of the testimony that we've heard here today. And also something that hasn't come up as much, but the COVID epidemic that we're in right now that also disproportionately impacts black and brown communities and can only be mitigated through investment in programs like uh, Health and Human Services, which receives significantly less funding than the Palo Alto Police. So if we're trying to really say that these lives matter, that black lives matter, then not only disbanding an institution that targets and uh, commits genocide frankly against black lives, but also reinvesting in an institution that protects them from the uh, COVID epidemic that disproportionately impacts those communities is absolutely what I encourage the Palo Alto City Council to do, to put their, the cities and us as taxpayers, money where our mouth is and actually protect, invest in our community um, and not just pay people or institutions that disproportionately harm it. I yield my time.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next speaker is Greer Stone. Greer, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you.
Greer, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Greer Stone. I'm a teacher and the former Chair of the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission, the current Vice Chair of the Santa Clara County Human Rights Commission, and the Chair of the County's Justice Review Committee. But I am speaking to you tonight in my individual capacity, and my views do not necessarily reflect that of my commission. I, like most of you, was at the Black Lives Matter protest on Saturday afternoon. I was so incredibly moved by the thousands of people who came out to Kings Plaza, chanted before City Hall, and marched in the streets. As a collective and in one voice, Palo Altons demanded change. Tonight, I'm asked, I'm here to ask you to take the first steps in enacting meaningful change. The Black Lives Matter proclamation is a good starting point, but they are just words, and we must do more. We should enact the eight can't wait reforms on our police department's use of force policies. These reforms include de-escalation, banning choke and strangleholds, requiring comprehensive reporting, and more. These are common sense reforms that have been proven to dramatically reduce the amount of deaths caused by police. In fact, cities that have adopted all eight of the use of force restrictions saw 72% fewer police-involved killings compared to cities that had adopted none. Let's be clear. These reforms are not a rebuke on the majority of the courageous and hardworking women and men of our Palo Alto Police Department. But clear and sensible policies regarding use of force not only protects the community, but also provides clear guidance for our officers. There were so many inspiring signs at Saturday's protest, but the one that stood out to me the most simply said, silence is compliance. We cannot allow the voices of our black brothers and sisters to go silent anymore. We must stand as one to say enough is enough. History shall judge us and our actions today. Silence is compliance. Please use your power to enact a meaningful reform and save lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Greer. Our next speaker is Cedric De La Boujadeire. Cedric, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Uh, good evening. Um, thank you for proclaiming the Black Lives Matter. While this is an important step, it alone is far from sufficient. To do nothing else would be to sweep the issue under the rug and pretend we've cleaned house. I encourage you to move quickly to adopt the eight can't wait policies, which have been adopted in other communities and shown to be effective in significantly reducing police violence. In addition, I encourage you to, one, take the pledge to address police use of force policies. Two, join Project Zero to end police violence nationally. And three, adopt the recommendations in the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. Some of these policies may already be in practice here in Palo Alto, for which I congratulate and thank you. However, all of the policies should be adopted to send a message and to ensure they are continued. By explicitly adopting these policies, we will affirm that in Palo Alto, Black Lives Matter in words and in deeds, and that we are determined to end police violence here and nationally. Their adoption will normalize them and set an example for other communities. Also, police officers move from city to city. So as they leave, are forced to join other departments. They may evangelize these policies in their new communities, sharing that they worked here. On the flip side, if officers who are disciplined and fired for excessive use of force find they are unable to get jobs in other jurisdictions, this will discourage them and others from applying excessive force. In closing, I urge you to adopt these policies quickly, and please do not let them languish in the Palo Alto process. We can adopt them now and fine-tune them later based on our experience. Finally, I'll refer you to my email from this morning for additional details and recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cedric. Our next speaker is Mark Loveland. Mark, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mark Loveland and I'm a Palo Alto resident. I wanted to highlight three things that I think should be a part of this conversation. First, the current Palo Alto Police Department Policy Manual was not written by the Palo Alto City Government, nor was it written by anyone who is a member of this community. The current manual was created by a private, for-profit company called Lexipol, which sells generic police policy manuals to cities across the country. As we consider urgently needed changes to policing practices, I implore you to consider that our police should be governed by policies developed by members of this community, and especially by people of color in this community, rather than by a for-profit company that has shown little regard for the lives of people of color who live and work here. Second, the current Palo Alto Police Department Policy Manual is 741 pages long, but over 100 pages are redacted in the publicly available version, and therefore entirely inaccessible to the public. Redacted sections include the policies governing firearms and officer-involved incidents. It is troubling that we live in a community where we are not permitted to access policies that govern the police department. How can members of the public engage in open, democratic dialogue about policing policies and how to reform them when we are not even allowed to know what those policies are? I urge the city to release the entire unredacted manual or to provide clear legal reasoning for refusing to do so. Finally, Mayor Fine, I find your repeated pleas for speakers to avoid calling out the racist actions of racist individuals tone deaf and insensitive. To the extent that individuals in the Palo Alto Police Department and elsewhere have committed acts of brutality, been complicit in such acts, or otherwise exposed to their racism, they should be held accountable. You say that no individual is above criticism, but if the Palo Alto Police Department won't hold racists accountable and we can't call for accountability here, then what recourse do we have to demand change?
Thank you, Mark. Your time is up.
Mr. Loveland, just a quick response there. You are certainly welcome to send the council or others email. The reason for this uh, policy that we have in our procedures and policy manual, as I mentioned, is to foster a discussion where different voices and opinions can be heard in this forum for anybody in the community. That's the reason we, we have that advisory.
Our next speaker is Barbara Shufrow. Barbara, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name's Barbara Shufrow. I've been a resident of Palo Alto for many years. And I urge the council to affirm that black lives matter by passing the resolution, but also by enacting meaningful reforms. And in particular, um, I wanted to mention that I'm an attorney and I work with students with disabilities and students with mental health conditions. And um, I would like to join with others who are calling for the police department to adopt the eight can't wait recommendations. Um, in my work, I've been aware of situations where, in Palo Alto, where students have been put at risk. And the eight can't wait recommendations uh, include the mandatory use of de-escalation techniques. It's a safety policy that's important for everyone, as well as to affirm that black lives matter. Um, so I ask that, in addition to adopting this resolution, we also move forward immediately with specific techniques that we know work to prevent unsafe conditions to our black neighbors and others in our community. Please consider immediate adoption of the eight can't wait recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg. Rebecca, go ahead.
Hi, Council. Hoping you can hear me. Um, I am happy tonight to support your initial efforts at supporting Black Lives Matter. But I agree with the previous speakers. I feel very strongly about this. And I believe that the city council has not gone nearly far enough. First, I believe that the city council owes the community an apology. Instead of joining last week's peaceful protest, it shut them down in the name of property protection and imposed a curfew that was more about racist bias than it was about actually protecting our community. Additionally, I'm very offended by the misrepresentation of the manual that says that we, the speakers, are not allowed to mention city officials by name. I do not believe that's what your manual says. I'm an attorney with almost 30 years of practice, and I feel pretty confident that you are misstating your goals. We are always, as people, allowed to criticize our elected officials and their appointed officers. Here are some changes that I would like to see the city council make. And as you know, I'm running for city council myself, that if you won't do it yourself, I'm happy to have this happen ASAP. First is, we need a renegotiation of the police contracts. They do not include eight can't wait. There's no excuse for that. I think all of us should be very concerned that you spent the first two hours of this meeting behind closed doors in a private session discussing the police union contracts. What did you discuss? Bring it forward into the light. We in the public deserve to know what you decided with the police contracts. Did you put eight can't wait in there? I sure hope so, and I expect so. Second, we need to commit to a more diverse city government. That means we need publicly funded elections and fully paid government official, elected officials so that our leadership positions are not occupied entirely by 30-somethings who are able to retire from Google and others who are backed by commercial developers, for example, on the Planning Commission. We need a diverse leadership. We need to recognize that most people cannot afford to take five years off of work because they are independently wealthy, which is not a qualifier to serve. Third, the city council needs to put forth a plan to defund, disarm, and disband the police department. As previous speakers have said, the strong, strong police does not protect safety, strong communities do. Fourth, the city council needs to put a business tax back on the ballot, exempting all small and mid-sized businesses. The city council continues to defund our residents by offering huge tax subsidies to the very people who can afford to pay taxes the most. It's time that our residents are actually, you know, actually receive the benefit.
Rebecca, your time is up.
Thank you. I can't see these changes.
Our next speaker is Carrie Templeton. Carrie, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hello, thank you. Um, I agree with many of the comments that have been shared today. Um, we are in need of serious reforms in how our public safety services engage with our community. But it's important to note that this is not new to Palo Alto. Our city's need for reform didn't start with George Floyd's death. It didn't start with the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park resident being violently arrested by our police. And it didn't start with the emergency dispatcher delaying a 54-year-old woman's life-saving treatment due to her stroke uh, being mistaken for mental illness. What is new is that our community is now done waiting. We are done waiting for leadership from members of the city council in these matters of like, literal life and death. The time is now. All of the speakers tonight, including myself, are hopeful that the council will prioritize police reform policies that will improve the quality of life for the most vulnerable in our community. Gandhi said, "A nation is only as good as it treats its weakest members." The same goes for our community. Palo Alto can do better by black and brown people, immigrants, seniors, LGBTQ folks, and the mentally ill. And in the words of Maya Angelou, "Now that we know better, we must do better." Black lives matter. I am in support of this resolution and greatly appreciative to the mayor for bringing it up. I ask council to challenge yourselves, to take further actions. What else can you do with the power that the citizens have bestowed upon you? Palo Alto needs community-based police reforms now. Please refer to a series of excellent suggestions that were sent to you by Katie Cozy for some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Our next speaker is Michelle Ange Shaba.
Hello.
Hi, Michael.
Hello, my name is Michelle Ange Shaba, and I would like to address why relevant, change relevant to racial justice needs to happen in Palo Alto. I've lived here for about 10 years since immigrating from the Ivory Coast. In those 10 years, the first time I felt entirely supported by this community was when hundreds of people showed up at the protest at City Hall last Saturday. Unfortunately, it took the cold-blooded murder of an African-American man for this community to unify with the black community. I would like to live in a city where someone who looks like me doesn't get stared at when they enter a store. I would like to live in a community uh, where someone who looks like me can feel safe and comfortable interacting with the police. I would like to live in a community that doesn't dissent the construction of the low-income housing that I live in. I would like to live in a community where parents don't have, don't make racist remarks upon learning that I'm dating their daughter. But this requires both social and structural changes. This can start by addressing the racially biased police practices. I'm speaking in favor of eight can wait, but also I want to call for more diverse police force and more people of color in positions of power. Because as we attempt to make people of color feel increasingly safe and more comfortable, it is important that they see a familiar face when dealing with law enforcement and other officials. Lastly, I would like to suggest that the Palo Alto Police Department adopts a victimization survey. This will allow the department to understand the effectiveness of their practices further, but also it will help multiverse confidence in the police departments, especially amongst minority groups. To be clear, a victimization survey is different from what is published in the yearly crime report because they look at people who have been victimized. This means that they may have not reported the crime when it was done to them originally. This is important because statistically, people of color are less likely to report crimes done against them in fear of the police or, or lack of, sorry, lack of trust in the police. Palo Alto has a long history of racial and socioeconomic discrimination, both of which are intertwined, and that needs to change now. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arushi Gupta. Arushi, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Arushi. I'm a longtime resident of Palo Alto. And as long as I've lived here, I've been found the idea that we're a progressive city where all are not just welcomed, but supported and cherished. However, as illustrated by all the comments before me, Palo Alto is not special. In fact, the Palo Alto Police Department has more racial bias than eighty-one percent of other California police departments. We institutionalize the same patterns of white supremacy the United States was built on, just hide them behind prettier language. And that's why I'm commenting in support of the resolution to express council support of the Black Lives Matter movement and commit to review police and public safety practices. However, in addition to this resolution, I'm also calling for the disarming, defunding, and dismantling of the Palo Alto Police Department following the lead of cities like Minneapolis. As the death of George Floyd and countless others have shown, policing is a fundamentally racist and broken institution that has failed to be fixed through incremental reform. I also want to comment on some of the statements made by City Council members before me. First, the idea that the curfew was reassuring. I would ask to who the curfew is reassuring. To me, it looks like, once again, the law and law enforcement are being used as a tool to protect private property rather than the lives of Black people. Furthermore, asking people not to be angry and to speak calmly and civilly to police their tone and their choice of words. In other words, to stay calm in the face of centuries of state-sponsored violence is unacceptable. You cannot ask people to shoulder both the burden of dismantling white supremacy and the burden of protecting your feelings. It's time for those of us who aren't Black to stop worrying about our own discomfort and our own feelings and focus on how we can amplify the incredible transformative work Black communities have done for centuries to fight for Black liberation. To that end, we should fund community development programs like affordable housing, equitable education, free healthcare, and increased mental health and crisis support. We need to build alternatives to policing, not just pay lip service to supporting the Black Lives Matter movement. Police don't keep us safe. Strong communities keep us safe. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you not, not only pass this resolution, but commit to defunding the Palo Alto, Palo Alto Police Department and eventually disband it. I want to be proud of your time.
Our next speaker is Emma Rainey. Emma, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Emma Rainey. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, and I live in Crescent Park. Thank you for addressing this issue in a timely manner. I'm commenting in support of the resolution to express council support of the Black Lives Matter movement and to commit and to, and to commit to review police and public safety practices. As part of this review, I propose a reallocation of the Palo Alto Police Department budget to community service at the very least. I believe following in the footsteps of Minneapolis Police Department is the ultimate goal and entails disarming, defunding, and dismantling the Palo Alto Police Department. As the deaths of many people such as George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Tony McDade have shown policing as a fundamentally racist and broken institution that has failed to fix, to be fixed through incremental reform. As many have previously mentioned, PAPD occupies nineteen point seven-three of the Palo Alto budget, while community service occupies only thirteen point three of that budget. However, the Palo Alto Police Department's history of violence inflicted upon Black and Brown communities is a testament to how policing practices and criminalization exacerbate racial and wealth disparities. This is why I am against the twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget proposing to increase police general fund expenditures by five point four percent. Instead, funding should go to affordable housing, equitable education, free healthcare, and increased mental health and crisis support. Improving and strengthening our community can build alternatives to policing. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you not only pass this resolution, but redistribute the funding to areas that strengthen our community instead of harming it. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Emma. Our next speaker is Sunita Terrell. Sunita de Terrell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you to the City Council for considering the resolution supporting Black Lives Matter movement. I think this must be but the first step towards the very real change that needs to come in Palo Alto with respect to our police department, as well as our collective responsibility to address all of the toxic effects that the reality of white supremacy has created and continues to create. Tonight, I suggest one important step. There's a tremendous research showing that restrictive use of force standards reduce police violence. As others have mentioned, eight can't wait is an important step. Large studies that have looked at over a hundred US cities have found there are eight critical, critical eight policies that if adopted are associated with reductions in killings by police. My understanding is that the police, the Palo Alto Police Department abides by only two of these, namely, require warning before shooting, and the second is duty to intervene as an officer if you see excessive use of force. San Francisco Police Department seems to abide by all eight. These eight are: one, ban chokeholds and strangleholds; two, use de-escalation; three, warn before shooting; four, exhaust all alternatives before shooting; five, duty to intervene if and when excess force is used; six, ban shooting at moving vehicles; seven, have a use-of-force continuum; and eight, require comprehensive reporting. In this study, the organization Eight Can't Wait also found that police departments with more restrictive use-of-force policies have better outcomes in terms of officer safety and have no impact on crime rates. I'm speaking out because I am a downtown Palo Alto resident who last year witnessed what felt to me like an excessive use of force on a Black man that likely involved racist beliefs and practices. I believe that for the combined safety of police officers and residents and visitors, all eight policies must be adopted in Palo Alto. This cannot wait. There is no excuse. Let's learn from and join our San Francisco brothers and sisters and adopt all eight policies. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Sunita. Our next speaker is Danielle Andreev. Danielle? You may have to unmute from your end.
Testing, testing. Hi, I would like to express my agreement with the past dozen speakers and add more. I think that the Palo Alto Police Force should be defunded. I would like to see the voices of our community represented better by the executive branch of our local government. However, the current police force doesn't seem to be able to do this. We should have more direct control of our security and its providers. I propose that we support our residents in hiring private security instead by having either neighborhoods or individual citizens hire private guards. We give control back and allow the residents to control the level of force used in enforcement of the law. Thus, neighborhoods choosing to allow protesters to protest can decide for themselves whether or not to support the curfew. If they would like for specific laws to... If they would like for people to be able to circumnavigate specific laws, they ought to choose to and not have to have a police force that is uncontrollable or unable, or that they can't directly select. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Vetter. Robert, you have two minutes.
Hi, I just wanted to speak really quickly directly to Adrian Fine. I know that you're saying we shouldn't be calling out specific people. However, these are police officers that I personally do not feel comfortable policing me and my community. And I think that a lot of the rest of us don't feel comfortable with them policing us in our community. And that brings me to my next point. I think if we need to talk about these officers, if we're going to talk about the culture of PAPD and policing in general, I think we like to think of ourselves as a very progressive city. However, people have brought up redlining. People have brought up how their personal experiences seeing policemen using excessive force, the settlements about civil rights suits that our police have had to pay. I think it's very clear that we're not as progressive as we think we are, and we really need to talk about that culture and fire the police officers who have had any incidences like this in the past. Also, I want to talk about eight can't wait. I think reform is good, but it's completely not enough. I think we need to start defunding PAPD with the goal of following in the Minneapolis City Council's footsteps and disbanding it once we have other community safety practices in place that are not so violent and that don't disproportionately affect people of color like Palo Alto Police does. So yeah, I would love to see Zach Crown fired. I would love to see Thomas DiStefano fired. And if you think that police abolition doesn't work, read Angela Davis, read writings about police abolition. It shouldn't be our job as citizens to teach you this. You should also be very proactive in this. I also just want to say, Liz Ness, I want to echo this. I was very disturbed by your comments about the curfew. Yeah, I yield my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robert. Our next speaker is Jeremy Shaw. Jeremy, you have two minutes. You may need to unmute from your end, Jeremy. Jeremy, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have very much prepared. I have to say that I'm humbled by the speakers that have gone before me. It's great to see particularly all the young people engaged on this topic. I've lived in Palo Alto for thirty years. I'm a white man, married. Kind of, you know, fit the middle profile. But I have to say, I've been very exercised in the last week or two by what's been going on, and I've been concerned for much longer about structural racism in this country. I think it affects everything. I welcome the resolution by the City Council about supporting Black Lives Matter. However, it's, I believe it's far too little and too late. We've got to do more. Palo Alto, Palo Alto considers itself, I think, a leading city, as a progressive city. And I think this response to the current crisis is spineless. And I think that Palo Alto needs to do a lot more in terms of police accountability. I think that Palo Alto needs to end broken windows policing. It needs to implement real community oversight of the police to adopt the eight can't wait, clear and strict measures to limiting the use of force. There needs to be independent and not-for-profit investigation and prosecution of accusations of policemen's misconduct. There needs to be full community representation in the oversight of the police to have a real policy around body and dash cams. The training programs of the police need to emphasize de-escalation techniques.
Jeremy, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Defund Palo Alto PD. However, we have only several speakers after that, which are Sid Wesley, a phone call-in with the last numbers of nine one seven, Dorit Goikum, Hamilton Hitchens, Todd Burke, and our final speaker will be Columbus, Reverend Columbus Smith. Defund PAPD. Go ahead. You have two minutes. Hello, are you there? We'll go to Sid Wesley. Sid, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. I firstly want to say, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to say that I'm commenting in support of the resolution to express council support of the Black Lives Matter movement and to review police and public safety practice. However, I think that, as has been said, that is far too little and far too late and simply a little bit ridiculous that this even needs to be talked about and voted on. Additionally, as a lot of people have been talking about the eight can't wait campaign, I would like to say that I think the eight abolition route is much better and should be considered fully. Police reform has not worked, has never worked, and it just means investing more money into the police. A lot of these reforms have been tried and have failed, and it would only reduce police killing by seventy-two percent, which is a decent amount, but is still not enough. The only way route that will work will be defunding the police, and Palo Alto must consider defunding the Palo Alto Police Department. As the people have said, police occupy ninety point, nineteen point seven-three of the Palo Alto budget compared to community services. The proposed fiscal budget is seeking to increase police general fund expenditures by five point four percent with or without the eight can't wait. This will probably continue to be somewhere around there. And this is why defunding the police is extremely important. It must be refunded into development programs like affordable housing, equitable education, free healthcare, and increased mental health crisis and crisis support. People have been calling for these considerations for years. But with the trade-off of police funding, it's extremely like, even without police funding, these need to be funded. But the way to do that is through defunding the police. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Sid. Our next speaker is a phone call speaker with the last three digits of nine one seven. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yes. It's Winter Dellenbach. The Palo Alto Police Department policy manual is a misnomer. It isn't a manual of policies but of guidelines. It says, quote, "Except where otherwise expressly stated, the provisions of this manual shall be considered as guidelines," unquote. I'd estimate ninety-five percent is guidelines. Guidelines don't need to be followed as policies do. We are a city with policing guidelines of sand rather than resting on a firm foundation of policy. The good news is that this should make it easier to enact needed reforms that support the police while also serving the public safety and safely and justly. The Palo Alto PD already has three of the eight can't wait police reform principles in place since Governor Newsom plans to ban carotid holds. Another eight can't wait principle in place needs refinement, and the third I want to speak to. And that's the duty to intervene. We have that. It requires officers to intervene to stop excessive force by another officer if they can and for them to report it to their supervisor immediately. That guideline was ignored when Gustavo Alvarez had his head gratuitously rammed into the car windshield by Sergeant Benitez. The sergeant didn't submit a written report under the guidelines, nor did any other officer who witnessed it go to their supervisor as they should have. And as far as I know, none of those officers were held accountable. Systemic racism is built into our police department. It's seen in the lack of firm policies, in the holding back of timely release of independent auditor reports and videos to the, to the public that fosters bad actors and a lack of accountability. With heightened accountability, reforms can be deeply meaningful, and without it, reforms will falter. A low income, brown...
Thank you, Winter. Your time is up. Winter, your time is up.
Yes, you know, the beating of brown men, I don't think that an affluent-looking white dot com man would ever be beaten in Palo Alto, but brown men are being targeted. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dorit Goikman.
Hi.
Go ahead, Dorit. You have two minutes.
Hi, um, thank you for providing this uh forum this evening. So this is an issue um that I've been thinking about for a very long time and I would urge uh this council to focus very carefully. On the collective bargaining agreement and um uh which appears to expire next June. Uh and particularly section thirty-seven E uh which describes. The ability to um for an officer to appeal uh. Certain uh things that are recorded in their disciplinary record. It's i- it appears discretionary, which I think also only provides opportunity for uh discrimination, but the fact that. Disciplinary history can be removed at all. Um, I can't imagine that would benefit anyone in any way aside from uh the officers. I would also um urge this council to think very carefully about eight can't wait. Uh, I do think many of the provisions are great and necessary and it's almost unbelievable they're not already in place. Um, but eight can't wait is based on some very strange interpretation of data and I think you should look at each provision carefully. Particularly um. The uh ban of chokeholds uh, you know, it it shouldn't be just a a a rhyming convenient thing. I think you need to look. Uh, very carefully at the studies out there and exist, and I think that this is based on some dubious data. That said, there are some really great provisions here, but I would just ask this council to look very uh carefully at those and to be maybe a little uh less than trustful of the uh claimed statistics. I think that the biggest issue is always accountability and where that lies is in the collective bargaining agreements. We need to make sure that these provisions have teeth, not that we're just altering provisions over and over again with no ability to enforce them and no ability. Uh, to hold police accountable. Thank you so much um again for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dorit. Our next speaker is Hamilton Hitchens.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. I was appalled by the horrific killing of George Floyd. I'm very supportive of the resolution and I want to thank the council members for putting it together. We must update our city's police manual. In particular, policies designed by adding policies designed to avoid the use of excessive force by police, including eight can't wait. And Project Zero, including the elimination of the car. Carotid artery restraint. And increased accountability. I would recommend an independent. City council sanctioned. Local community committee. Whose mission should be to come back to the council. With a sec set of recommended policy changes to the Palo Alto Police Manual. That will help reduce the potential for excessive force. And protect citizen's civil rights while maintaining public and officer safety. Thoughtful diverse selection of this local community committee. Along with staff support to organize it and run it is needed. Having served on the Citizen Advisory Committee, based on that experience. I would also recommend avoiding making the membership too large. In order to quickly and efficiently make impactful recommendations. That can be adopted by the city council. The city's Human Rights Commission and members who have previously served on it would be ideal candidates. To serve and oversee it. The city council should determine the membership makeup since the council is an elected body. Thank you.
Thank you, Hamilton. Our next speaker is. Thomas Burke, Todd Burke. Todd, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Beth and Mayor Fine and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, I too am in support of adopting the Black Lives Matter Resolution. Black Lives Matter and the events have been uh fairly catastrophic with respect to. Mr. Floyd and so forth. I also believe that the eight can't wait needs to be strongly considered and and hope that goes under due diligence by the council. Many speakers have have offered a lot of uh data uh and a lot of background. I can't speak to too many interactions with Palo Alto P D, but but a few, and I could say that. Every force like ours needs retooling, retraining, uh maybe even in some cases, maybe greater refocus. Uh, and I I'm certainly in support of that. Uh, however. I I I'm not entirely sure that I understand completely defunding and disbanding this force that's attempting to provide some level of community. Protection. Especially uh in in the events recently, I listened to the Palo Alto P D Police Dispatch on Sunday. In an effort to make sure that my community wasn't targeted for any any uh untoward activity. Thankfully, it wasn't, but Palo Alto P D, Santa Clara P D, San Jose P D, we're all extremely busy. Trying to keep the peace. So uh it there needs to be a lot of systemic change in the way that they approach their work. Uh, but I I haven't heard what happens if they're not here. I believe all of us in the community need to do our best to maintain safety in the community. But until we hear of a good, solid alternative. Uh, I don't know that there is one, so asking them to stop and be defunded immediately is is hard to understand without knowing what that alternative is, so. Hopefully, some good thought can go into that. Some change can happen, some non lethal activities can can be trained and they can become better for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. And our final speaker is Reverend Columbus Smith. Reverend, go ahead.
Can you hear me, Beth?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, city council. Uh, as usual, it is a pleasure to. Speak with you. Um, so many people have spoken so eloquently tonight. From defunding to eight can't wait, but. My my. Push to you right now is to not do what we would do in Palo Alto, which is overthink. And push things to the side. We have three options at this moment. We can stay where we the way we've always been. We can sort of. Push this change into random um administrative pools. Or we can be bold and make some hard decisions. I've encouraged you not to let the forces that usually push negotiations in the background and push change back. Control this narrative. As you saw with two thousand people out in the street on. Saturday, there is a ton of emotion and a ton of push behind this. And I think. There is the reality that we have to do something with policing. And it has to be done now. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's the end of our public speakers.
Thank you very much, Clerk Minor, for helping us um receive all that comment. And on behalf of the whole council and behalf of all the staff, I know um we're all very deep deeply grateful um. And appreciative in listening to all your comments. So to everyone who just spoke. We really appreciate it. Um, keep on it. Keep on sending us emails and keep on joining our meetings. We we really benefit from it. It's been about an hour and ten minutes, so I'm gonna call a five minute break and then we'll get back to it. So let's be back here in five minutes, please. Thank you, everyone. So again, um, thank you to all our public speakers. We really appreciate your your input on this item. Um, I I have a quick couple of comments. And then if my colleagues are okay with it, I was suggesting maybe. You know, as a nice gesture, we could each. Take turns reading the the proclamation, maybe doing paragraphs by paragraph. Um, the vice mayor thought that would be a good suggestion and I agree. So just a few a few comments. Um. You know, the past few weeks have really been unlike anything. I have seen or experienced. I think that probably goes true for most of us. It's been deeply emotional and harrowing. But it's also a repeat, right? America has has a deep history of violence against black people, black Americans. And there have been recurring. Protests and demonstrations against that to try and correct that uh and they haven't moved the ball. And so as I said on Saturday. Um, I'm going to do everything I can within my power, within my abilities here on the council. Uh, to make sure that doesn't happen in Palo Alto, that we do take this opportunity to make legitimate. Uh, and transformative changes. Uh, and that we eliminate, you know, bias and racism across our city as 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 best as we can. Um, I think that is. A noble goal for us. This government really is meant to and required to represent uh everyone and treat everyone with respect and dignity. That that is foundational to the work we do. And I think some of the national protests are are rebuttal to that, saying that governments are not stepping up. Governments have not done enough. And so that's on us. As many commentators mentioned, uh, this resolution is just a start, but it's certainly not enough. Um, I think we do need to work on a framework to evaluate, report on and improve our police department. Uh, but I want to do it in partnership with the community, my colleagues here, the police department and our union leadership. I think we can maintain our safety and security in Palo Alto. This is a very safe town. It's something we should rightfully be proud of. But we can also eliminate any potential areas for bias and racism. The Palo Alto Police Department can indeed be relied upon to keep us safe. But we need to ensure that we eliminate any potential for bias and racism in our policing. Not to mention other city services and the administration as a whole. I'll just end on one last note. Um, this past weekend, you know, we also mourned the death of Sergeant Gutwiler in Santa Cruz. As many of us were protesting and demonstrating in Palo Alto. So with that, I was wondering if it makes sense and just nod your head if you think it's a good idea for us all to read the proclamation, maybe just a paragraph or so each. Yep, okay. Maybe we'll go in alphabetical order and the vice mayor and I can split the middle paragraph. Council member Cormac, you helped me write this. Again, thank you for your great words here and if you want to start us off.
Uh, I thank you so much, Mayor Fine, for this opportunity. A resolution proclaiming that black lives matter. Whereas the inhumane murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis on May fifth, twenty twenty. By officers of that city's police department breaks our heart. And breaks the promise of this country, which is that all people are created equal. Our nation is understandably outraged, scared and worried. And.
Tom. Eric and I will split the middle one.
Okay. Whereas as your city government. We have an obligation to protect and serve everyone. No matter who they are or where they come from. At this moment of reckoning, we are called upon to listen and to speak. To kneel and to stand. And to reflect and to improve. And.
Whereas we deeply appreciate. The dedicated women and men of our police force who work day and night to keep our community safe. At the same time. Tremendous power of our police officers must always be balanced with the tremendous responsibility they have.
We will recommit. We will recommit to a shared understanding of how we treat the members of our community. Who gets the benefit of the doubt and who gets pulled over? Who gets let off with a warning and who is injured or killed? Our community is not immune to nor exempt from this soul searching work. And. Liz, I think it's your turn.
Whereas the city of Palo Alto commits to the affirmation that black lives matter. Because so many black and brown lives have for so long been discounted. Undervalued, abused and taken from us. We cannot and will not accept this here in our city and here in our country.
And council members Koo and Tanaka, I'm sorry for my poor math, but if you'd be able to maybe split the last paragraph between.
Council member Tanaka can go ahead and read it.
You wanted to start off and I could finish after the end or how do you want to do it?
Okay, I'll just take his first sentence. Now therefore be it resolved that. The council of the city of Palo Alto thus hereby express its support. And proclamation that like black lives matter. Council member Tanaka.
Sure, and commit to our local government to do everything within our power. To review our police and public safety practices. With the community. And then implement measures that reflect no tolerance for police violence. Prejudice, discrimination and harm.
Thank you all for that. I hope that sends a strong message to everyone working for the city, everyone in our community. And also to each of us uh about the work that we're just beginning to undertake. After we pass through or after we vote on the resolution, um, there'll be time for more discussion. But I I will just move the the resolution.
And I will second.
Thank you. Happy to have any comments or questions on it, but I think we should maybe vote on the resolution and then discuss if that makes sense.
Sure.
Okay. Council member Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Council member Phil Seth.
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Council member Ness.
Yes.
Council member Koo.
Yes.
Council member Tanaka.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate um your participation here and support for this. As I said, these are just words. It's just a beginning. I want to open it up to any of you for any um comments and questions and then I have a kind of next steps for us, but let's just keep it to comments and questions for a moment. Please just hit your hands if there's anything you'd like to share or questions. Ideas. Council member Ness. You're on mute.
Think I'm going to take my mute off. I, as I start to say, thank you both to Mayor Fine and to Councilmember Cormac for writing this. It's beautifully written. I hope one of the papers. Puts it into a section where everyone will get a chance to see it. It's just beautifully written. So. Adrian, I have a feeling you're going to suggest some action. And so. I think. For us to listen to everything we've heard tonight and to not talk about what our next steps would be would be a mistake. So I don't know what you're suggesting, but I certainly certainly heard the Reverend who spoke last talk about that. Because without some type of. Of organization that binds us together so that you can have a. Conversation about where this could go. I think that things will not change easily. I do not know what they've done yet in Minneapolis. I haven't heard. I haven't seen it in action yet, but. I think this is one of those times when we need to sit down with. Not only with Chief Johnson, but with the others in our who are in our. Community at City Hall and. Have a a pathway forward. And as I said, I'm quite sure you have an idea like that, but um I would certainly support that.
Council member Koo.
Thank you. So thank you to both um. The mayor and council member Cormac for writing the resolution. Appreciate it greatly. I I did want to say that, you know, I did attend the um the protest on Saturday. And as I was standing there, you know, I was. It was very difficult and it did bring some anger because it's been thirty, sixty, over a hundred years. And still. We're going through the racism and the this uh discrimination as well as, you know. The um black Americans being oppressed and marginalized. So the resolution is a first step. But like many people have said, as well as council member Ness and and the mayor. Has said that there needs to be action behind that. So at the protest, something that was very meaningful was what Judge LaDoris Corday had mentioned. History, history is important and it's very powerful. It's not just an event. Or a date. It draws politics, sociology, economics and anthropology for all which feed into the history of individuals and societies. In order to successfully navigate our society in the present is necessary to know what came before. The cause and forces of change upon our lives and the individuals of the past who've who shaped our society. So I would hope that we would encourage. Our elected officials at the state level to ensure our education institutions. Put more emphasis on history in our high schools, in our middle schools, so that. What has happened in the past is not forgotten and that we use it to drive change. And it and. Make us realize. And never forget what others had done for our country in order to provide the freedom and to to abolish. Oppression. Also. I want to be sure that as we move forward, we remember what each month signifies. The month of February was Black History Month. The month of May was Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And for the for the Muslims in our community, Ramadan. And for the, for the Muslims in our community, Ramadan had started in April and has just ended in towards the end of May. How was it highlighted in Palo Alto? I don't think we even brought it up. So I really would hope that we would. Pay more emphasis when it comes to that. And you know, one of the best places that we could have it emphasized is if we have the Palo Alto History Museum. In order to always ensure that that comes forward as we move forward. Of course, there's also policies that we have in that our state legislature, even here at the city, how it takes place. There is the proposed ACA five that would repeal the entire provision of Proposition two oh nine. By falsely claiming that Proposition two oh nine is the root cause of so-called disparities. The bill falsely claims that removing the equal protection clause from California State Constitution, which achieved. The goal of equal opportunities for all. That involves education. That involves hiring at city government. That also involves contract negotiations. Then there is of course, state senate bills that are proposed such as SB Senate Bill nine oh two by Senator Weiner. There's also the Assembly Bills three one seven three by Bloom. There's Assembly Bill one two seven nine, also by Senator Bloom. Also Assembly Bill seven two five by Buffy Wicks. All of these legislations are not brought forward and people don't know about them, what it does. Those proposed legislations has criteria or has no criteria nor requirement for below market rate housing. Instead, it insists on a trickle-down housing method. How has that worked in the last century? There's also Plan Bay Area, which is the current regional transportation plan. Charting a cost for transportation, investment, and land use priorities for the next twenty-five years. It's a plan to address growth, but what has it, what has been created is an imbalance, not only in jobs and housing. But also the socioeconomic status. So pay attention and it will reveal in, in, in equities. In access to resource plus issues related to privilege, power, and control. Even in our own land use and zoning, it has problems. The fact that the criteria for housing that is what is called affordable is up to a hundred twenty percent. Area medium income. I'm almost done. With absolutely no requirement to produce eighty percent AMI or area medium income. Bard and Cow Train, their fares are expensive. Yet to fund their infrastructure, what does the government do? They put on the ballot increases to sales tax. That's the remedy to fund it. It only continues the oppression and marginal, and marginalizes even more. So um, my five minutes might be up. I see Monique. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, first I just want to say directly, Black Lives Matter. I think at least six of us on council participated in the protest on Saturday. And um, there were several powerful speeches on the black condition in the US and here in Palo Alto. I do want to say I'm proud of Palo Alto and the integrated community we have here. We can, of course, we can always do better. And um, you know, the images we've been seeing from around the country are disturbing. Uh, I truly believe that that type of behavior would not be tolerated here. And I, I don't think it's going to happen here. On, on our police department, I think the men and women of our police department serve our community well. We are not Minneapolis or Ferguson or Detroit. And while we have had a few issues, I think our police should not be viewed as the problem, but as part of the solution. And I, I personally want to invite the representatives of our police unions. To come to our future meetings and give their input and views. So that we can work together to improve our public safety department and some of our policies. On the curfew, I don't support it. And I was glad it ended in two days. And. Personally, I believe a curfew could be used as a response to looting. If necessary, but it shouldn't be used preemptively. Um, and I want to say I support the eight can't wait initiative and I think we will make progress in that front. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Um, the really powerful peaceful protest on Saturday had some. Unbelievably amazing speakers who shared the stories of their lives and of their ancestors. In a way that gets at the history that Councilmember Koo was speaking about. And also at the lived experience um, of people in our community. Um, and what I felt on that, on that breezy day was frankly, the winds of change. And you can look at what happened in our community and you can look at what happened in communities across this country and around the world. This is a moment of reckoning. President Obama's words are, are in this resolution for a reason. I, I remain grateful um, for the women and men of our police force who work day and night. One of the things happening currently during shelter in place is um, significant concerns about family violence. And that's the police who go each night into the homes of people who feel unsafe and protect them. So. I just offer that as a reminder of something that our police officers do every day here in our community. That is something that does happen. I also want to say that this is not just about our police force. This is about our council, our board members and commission members, our staff and the community. So I think there'll be an opportunity for us to integrate thinking about bias and racism throughout um, our entire community. So I want to be sure that that's a part of the discussion that we have as we go forward. But mostly I want to thank the organizers um, of the event on Saturday. I apologize. I don't have your names written down here. And, but it was, it was a wonderful thing and it was a privilege for me to be a witness. And I thank the mayor for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Um, any other comments? Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, I'm, I'm going to wait to, to hear what you have to, to propose in a minute. I'll just add on Saturday that. I thought, uh, I, I thought a lot of it was profoundly moving and I'm proud of our, I'm proud of our city for, for, you know, it was a privilege to host that.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Um, just one or two other comments acting a few things, you know. One, i- it wasn't, it was. Uh, i- if, if folks who are listening weren't there, um, this, you know, demonstration which had two thousand plus people. Was organized by a group of five or so eighteen to twenty-one year olds. And that is a real, you know, honor to them. And I think a true demonstration of, of how strong and. Diverse and powerful our community can be. So I want to echo that. Um, and again, thank you to the city staff for helping to organize it and documenting and keeping it safe. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I also want to say I was very impressed with the um, demonstration with a lot of people. And I guess the thing is, is that the protest here was pretty, uh, there was no, um. There was no, like, it was, it was a true protest. It wasn't looting. It wasn't like we just seen some other cities. So I thought it was a really good show of civic engagement. And I think. It seemed to be very well organized. So I just want to commend um, the, the people for being civically engaged. But also for um, uh, you know. There were a lot of people involved, I think, to kind of keep this thing organized. So I, I think that was, um, that was really good. I was just wondering whether, and mayor's up to you, but do you think that the uh. Chief Johnson should say a few words, um, since it involves his department?
I would be, I think it's not a bad idea. I'm Mr. City Manager and, and Chief Johnson, if you have anything you'd like to add, we would love to hear your perspective and, and hear from you.
Certainly. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, members of the council, I was uh, really anticipating to follow your lead. But that said, since you gave me the opportunity, I, I would like to share a perspective. As your, um, as representative of your professional staff, really do want to thank you for taking this moment. To acknowledge, um, as been mentioned, this inflection point. Would note to you again, as someone who has spent my career, uh. Largely in public service, that I really do see this as an incredibly important moment uh, for us as an institution and really for the profession. And the, the service of local government, you know, taking on the, the, uh, an issue as big as institutional racism. Is extraordinary and, and happens perhaps once in a generation. And here it is in front of us. Clearly what we've heard from you and heard from the community is the importance of acting urgently to address police use of force issues. Those are, those are issues that have already been identified and have been discussed, but also recognize the importance. That we look beneath the surface at root issues that require a deeper review of our institutional barriers. Recognizing it's, it's been said that black lives matter. Does provide a foundation for us individually and collectively to act on our responsibility for human rights. And effectively tackling these, these really difficult issues requires both, uh, as said, both immediate urgent action. Uh, where we have clear next steps while also showing that we value diverse voices in the decision-making ahead of us. I have a really long list of things that I would like to, to tackle as a part of this effort. But really look to the council, uh, to give us some um, basic parameters for how you'd like to proceed. I think initially, we would anticipate coming back to you, uh, depending on your discussion tonight as quickly as next week. In order to give you uh, some initial recommendations on how we might tackle a, a range of issues, uh, not the least of which include. Again, starting with police use of force issues in our own practices, but also uh, opening the conversation to a, a broader. Audience and uh, in many ways, uh, voices that have not been heard. Uh, and that have not uh, had the opportunity uh, to engage on these really, really difficult issues of bias and, and racism that exists in our institutions. Starting with police, but then extending to our own, uh, our, our organization as a whole. Uh, and there's been some uh, suggestion that we look at decision-making within the city organization. And I welcome that, absolutely welcome it and would love to engage in, in all pursuits. There are a number of frameworks, uh, that could be used for that deeper look. And again, would really like to work with the council on, on setting uh, an approach uh, that can be uh. Reflective of the level of urgency, uh, that I think we all feel. While also ensuring that we do take the time necessary to make sure that the voices that again, are, are not often heard from, have the opportunity to engage. So let me stop there and perhaps ask Chief Johnson to comment as well.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I actually do have a few things to say and that's why, I know you regret giving me the microphone sometimes, but. I would like to say first and foremost, you know, as I did last week, not only as a police chief. But as a father, a son, a sibling of four, uh, four others in my family. In a very committed relationship with somebody I care deeply about. I want to once again acknowledge and express uh, my deep sorrow for the George Floyd family, just as I did at last week's council. That was a death that should have never occurred. I admitted that and acknowledged that last week and I still believe that today. That it was a tragedy that just flat out shouldn't have happened. And it's not acceptable. And our profession, I will own it, can do better and must do better. You know, with that said, listening to tonight was rough. Um, you know, we. I, let me say this by taking a pause. I invite everyone that spoke tonight. To attend one of our community academies because I think it's extremely beneficial to be well informed on how we operate, what our policies are. Involved, involve what our protocols are in place. Rather than providing insight from what I somewhat consider misleading information. That's not accurate. We've been working very hard to make sure that the community is well informed on our policies, where we stand. In regard to in uh, connection with the eight can't wait campaign. And when you look into the website that the city manager addressed at the beginning, that we've posted where we stand on our policies and protocols, you'll find. We are very progressive and we're actually really closely in line with seven to eight of those areas uh, in the eight can't wait campaign. But with all that said, I'm more than welcome to open up for improvement and review. And I've said that from the moment I've walked in and every agency I've worked with. Is you never settle with complacency because if you settle with that, then you're not doing well at all. And we have been very open to input from day one. Where I think I have failed this council is, you know, we were working. For many of you wanting to go to the community academy, to go through that academy, you know that. And we were trying to coordinate that to happen this year for not only council members, but for commissioners. We do it three times a year for the community. And things just happened this year and we didn't get to it. And I deeply regret that. I wish we had had that opportunity. So each of you would be well informed. On our policies and protocols and all the good work. But with that said, we did provide a very detailed uh, update to you back in February with our study session. On what we do for this community, how we do it. And again, I think saying all that, um, most would agree that we're very progressive. We have a lot of very, uh. A lot of things in this department that other agencies just don't. So when you try to compare us to an agency uh, throughout the country, it's not even equivalent. We, there is no other agency that has a more comprehensive video capturing system than the Palo Alto Police Department. We briefed you that back in September, February. And there's many others that we uh, take great pride in adhering to, especially when it comes to outside um, review through the independent auditor. And having accountability. And if you look at that particular website that many of you were reciting, or I believe you were taking your information from. It also said, we rank ninety-one percent in accountability. So you can take numbers and you can say what you want, but at least be fair and equitable because to hear. To hear the attack on credibility and the work ethic of the hardworking men and women of this police department. As I listened to earlier tonight without in-depth information on how we do our job. Was tough. And I don't think it was fair. Because this department is filled with a tremendous amount of individuals that are truly committed. They come in every single day to this community to serve and protect. The residents and the businesses alike. And I know, and we have talked about it and many of you have mentioned, occasionally we fall. And sometimes we do things that absolutely are not acceptable. And we hold our people accountable. And you can see that with the independent auditor, the reports that he puts out and his reviews and his recommendations. So we have work to do, but I don't want anyone to think that the Palo Alto Police Department's just been sitting by not doing anything. We've been working with our advisory group. I'd been talking with them. I had a meeting with them today. And I've also been talking with the Human Relations Committee, Commission on working together to try to look at how we do our job. And look in how we review our policies and protocols and see how we stack up. And it's something I'm more than welcome to do. And I think at the end of the day. We'll be in line with President Obama's pledge to US mayors and we'll definitely review our policies in place. We'll definitely engage the community. To have a diverse range of input and we'll report back. I don't care who we report back to because I'm looking forward to that day. That you see how well we do this job and how well we serve this community. So I'll finish with this. We're committed to protecting the rights of all people within this city. I've been very impressed, as many of you have said, with the demonstrations. I applaud these residents and these community members for such great coordination and organization. And for the peaceful outcome we've had. We've had demonstrations in this city every day for at least the past six days, if not longer. And each and every one of them remained peaceful and had great outcomes. But to close, um, I will say this. I probably shouldn't. But to the callers who are advocating my resignation. I will willingly submit my resignation to this council at any point. When you feel I'm not the right individual to lead this department through these extremely challenging times. I love this department. I think it's filled with amazing men and women. Are we capable of improving? Absolutely. Are we willing to improve? Always. That is what we strive for each and every day. So thank you for allowing me to address you and I am here for the remainder of the evening to listen to your feedback.
If, if I could, um, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, just uh, bookend the chief's comments with one final thought. If if I could, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, just bookend the chief's comments with one final thought. That I appreciate the the chief really, as he always does, taking responsibility for the actions and the performance of the police department. And to perhaps dovetail with that, let me take responsibility for the city organization. I do believe that as we provide you with your professional staff work and advise you in in the steps ahead. In addition to the the policies and practices of our police department, I do think it's time for us to examine. The circumstances under which we send our police officers into situations and look to non-police responses where it can be appropriate. And there has been some some references in the public testimony to non-police interventions and and those get complex. The city is not responsible for many social programs. But it is certainly a part of the context in which police work happens. So look forward to working with the council based in your direction and the steps forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chicago for those comments and Chief Johnson, thank you for your open and transparent words and thank you for your service. So I have a brief motion. It really is just a framework. That I think we can work on and I'm happy for to hear your all input. And I believe I sent it to the city clerk. It's not very long, I promise, but. It would be to direct staff to return with a framework to review, report on and improve our police policies and practices. Focused on accountability and eliminating any potential racism or discrimination. Report on possible improvements to the police hiring practices. And then to the city manager's last point, begin a diversity inclusion and inclusion initiative at City Hall. So I believe it's up there. We may want to just bullet it out to a few. Lines if that would help.
I'd be happy to second this, Mayor Fine, if we have a timeframe attached.
Sure. So I I discussed with the city manager and I'll walk through each of these that staff is prepared in the next week to come back with the start of this. And Mr. Chicago, I don't know if there there's a timeframe for this project as a whole. I know this.
A large. Start. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We we start with a plan to come back to you next week. That said, our reports then would be out in two and a half days. So would like to hear the council's input on how we're scoping this next step.
Councilmember Cormac, does that help?
It does. So can we talk just a little bit about C?
Sure. Let let me just quickly. I've just got a few comments on each of these. So on letter A. You know, whether it's campaign zero, Obama's mayor's pledge, eight can't wait. I'm actually not certain. I want to review those different frameworks, review our policies, report on them, engage our department and union. And then figure out what kind of changes or transformations we need. On letter B, let's understand how our hiring influences the services we provide and make sure that our officers and citizens get to work with the best available. And then on letter C, as the city manager mentioned, this is not just about police. In a discussion the other day, he mentioned to me he's been with the the organization, the city for five years and we haven't had. A concerted diversity, inclusion or bias training and. I am certainly no expert on inclusion and diversity. But let's have staff in our community figure out a path to bring to bring more diversity to the decision making table. That's my motion. It was kind of a framework for a framework, but would love to hear all of your inputs.
Okay, happy to second. Would you like me to go ahead and speak to it now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. All right. I think the important thing in A, and I'll just check to see if staff thinks that it's encompassed in framework is that the community. Is a participant in the framework. So this will not just be done. By a certain group, but the community will be allowed and encouraged to participate. Is that is that something that staff contemplates in the framework?
Yes.
Great. Okay. And then in terms of improvements to police hiring practices, I think this is important and and I want to say why. We have seen other organizations around the world, other professions. Who haven't paid enough attention to this and and it's meant that. On the occasion when someone behaves badly, that person is moved elsewhere and then bad behavior can continue. So I think B is actually extremely important and I appreciate the mayor including it. See, you know, we'll we'll sort out what the words are as we go through, but I'm going to repeat my earlier comment. This is not just about staff at City Hall. This is about the council and board members and commissions, commission members. As advocates, informed advocates. I think it's also possible this could go as far as something that the community has a a broad discussion on. This could be one of the classes that we teach in ours in our community services department. This is an opportunity to work with the school district, et cetera. So I think perhaps as I speak through this, the city hall part is making me is making me feel like it's a little bit restricted. Could we say throughout the city?
I think that makes sense. Yeah, throughout the city. I I think City Hall was a stand-in, but yeah.
That's fine, especially since no one's there right now. Although it looks like possibly maybe the city manager. Okay. All right. With that, I'm sure my colleagues will have additional thoughts. But I think this is a bridge between the words of our resolution and the work that we need to do. And I thank the mayor for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Thank you for the second. Councilmember Koo, I see your hand up.
Thank you for bringing forth the motion. Within A, the framework. I think. You know, Councilmember Cormac said it would involve the community in its discussion of coming up with the framework and reviewing the police policies and practices, but I was wondering if you would take a friendly amendment and include in there. To have a citizens oversight board comprised of three to five. Community members and they would report to the council. The way I go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead. No, you go ahead. I interrupted and apologize.
I was just thinking that, you know, this way it would be community members. In this oversight board that would be reaching out to other community members versus. City staff. And there would be a layer of trust and confidence and they would be dealing with peers from the community. So I hope you can consider that. And depending on where the citizen oversight committee goes, it would. I would hope that it could also be formed as a commission as we move forward. So like some of our commission and boards.
So so I am certainly open to that. I will just say. I I thought about this because there are a couple of places it could go. One, one is a new commission. One is the HRC, our standing Human Relations Commission. Another is the Chief's Advisory Commission. And I wasn't really sure and so I kind of was interested in hearing staff's take after kind of digesting this for a few days. I could certainly see it going this way. But I I was hoping to be a little more broad than prescriptive, if that makes sense, just because. I I wasn't really sure how how one of those committees would influence this decision making process. And I think. We've all expressed some urgency here. So that's my hesitation to accept this. I don't know if the second or has any comments.
I think this is a potential thing for us to consider, but I think it's a part of the framework. So I wonder. If that's something we could consider next week when we get the framework back, which will likely have recommendations or options for ways to us for to choose the community input. I I guess what I'm saying is I think this level of specificity is appropriate next week, once we have the options, but I appreciate the suggestion.
Well, then we'll see what next. I'll withdraw it and we'll see what next week comes back with and. If it's not there, I'll reintroduce for condescension. I think, you know, with this, there's just a layer of being removed from staff. And hopefully, you know, they could be a conduit in terms of bringing about trust and confidence. In the police department and with our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Tanaka.
Hello. Thank you for putting this together. I definitely support this. I think we. You know, one, I don't know if if for those that attended, if you guys saw the talk from Hudson Alexander. But he's a young guy. He he spoke really well. Definitely was inspired by his speech. I think. Reverend. Smith actually has it on his web, on his Facebook page as well. So if you guys missed, you could you could watch it. I actually thought about the HRC as well, and I was wondering if the mayor would let, I think. Chair Smith is actually still online, if I'm not mistaken. And if so, whether you could get his take on, you know, perhaps this could also be. This could also go to the HRC because what I like about HRC versus the chief's, you know, group. Is that the chief doesn't report into us, we're a person to chief, but the HRC reports into us. And I think to really make sure that this is done right, I think it really does need council oversight. And the Human Relation Commission, this is kind of kind of their function. Maybe. Councilman Cruz, right? Maybe we need to augment this with another committee or commission perhaps, but I'd love to just get the HRC's chair if if he's available and if you're willing to then just speak just a few words. Because I I thought, you know, I just thought that what kind of the stuff he said is kind of things that they're thinking about in HRC would be very valuable as input to us on council.
Sure. Reverend Smith, would you have any comments here?
I think the HRC is well positioned to implement this. I know myself and Darrell, Darrell, Commissioner Darrell Savage. Already are the liaisons to the police department for the HRC. So there is built in relationship there. And we have been working hand in hand with Chief Johnson for about a year now. So. We have, we have an idea of how the department operates and we can work with it. There's a built in relationship there. But I would defer to staff because they might see different pathways, but I think we have the capacity with myself and Commissioner Savage to really. Help guide this process and be part of that discussion.
So I I I kind of feel that HRC should should really take the lead on it. I think we on council need to keep a close pulse to this and make sure that it actually happens right and gets fixed. But I think in order in order to really go deep. Because we're already, what time is it? It's eleven o'clock already, right? And we have like a bunch of other items on our agenda. And I'm worried that if we try to do all the detail stuff ourselves, we're not going to be able to do a very good job and really kind of implement the changes or figure out the recommendations needed to kind of fix some of the issues. So I I I think, and I'm looking for the the maker and second or second or two, consider maybe adding in to how HRC start diving into this because I think this is urgent. This is important. And I think it'd be great if. Chair Smith and the rest of the HRC Commission could really dive into this, kind of get the root of the matter. And, you know, this make this kind of like one of their their key objectives. And then if it looks like we need more people, like better representation in the community. Then we could also augment it as necessary, but I think we should unless it sounds like the commission has capacity now, this is their charter. It seems like we have a very capable. Unless it sounds like the commission has capacity now, this is their charter. It seems like we have a very capable chair who can handle this. So I would just want to see if the maker and second would consider this.
My answer is the same as as with the citizens committee. I'm open to HRC. I actually think they may be aligned with letter C better than A. I'll I'll just say that there is some urgency here. And I believe Sam Mateo has committed to doing similar work in the next 60 days. And other communities are on similar timelines and I I really would love to have give staff just, you know, we're giving them three days to come back with a plan for this framework. And I think that is a reasonable amount of time where next Monday, we can again discuss. What is the framework and what is the best way to apply that? So that that's my feeling for the moment. Councilmember Cormac.
I think the other reason it's important to wait until next week is that this isn't actually been shared yet with the community unless people are watching and listening and we've already passed the point for public comment because we were discussing the resolution. I would really want to get input from the whole community as about the best way to move forward. So that decision again, I think is best made next Monday.
Well, I understand. My feel is just, I think it'd be great to harness our commissions. I know they're eager and they're interested, but if.
No disagreement, no disagreement about about, you know, the HRC being a participant, but. Let's, let's let everybody have an opportunity to look at what staff outlines for us on Thursday. And then we can have a a conversation on Monday around the details.
So I don't see any other hands. Mr. City Manager, any comments on this?
No, I think you've given us some general parameters that would be helpful for us to bring back to you some options.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, well, okay, so. So I'm glad we're doing this and I think it's, I think it's appropriate. You know, all of us. Watched. Wa- watched the the George Floyd video. And. You know, after our, after our shock and horror, right? I mean, the most basic fundamental question you ask first is. My God, could that happen here? And I don't think so. But I wouldn't have guessed it could happen in Minneapolis either. So I think we're right to ask the question and, you know, you you gotta ask it, right? I mean, I don't think I don't think that could happen here, but we got to ask the question, right? And then more broadly than that. You know, we've got a circumstance in our society. Where a sizable chunk of our population. Fifteen percent African American. More than that Latin X. A sizable chunk of our of Americans feel less safe when a police car goes by than instead of feeling more safe. And. You know, that that's not acceptable in our country. And all of us, all police agencies. You know, we're going to have it, we're going, we're going to have to to think about. How we make sure that changes, right? So I think it's a, I think it's an ideal time for self-reflection. It's always a good time for self-reflection, but now it's a really good time for self-reflection. And that's what this constitutes. And I think I think we should proceed. And I think we have a, I think we have a good police organization in Palo Alto. But as the chief says, you know, I think some self-reflection at this point and to see how we can be better is appropriate. Thanks.
Councilmember Koo.
Could we also paint Black Lives Matter on Forest Avenue? City manager.
That an assignment?
Could that be possible?
I really leave that to the discretion of the council. Are you that emotion? I'm sorry. And not not to joke about it, but I don't quite know what to make of that request.
Well, they have it in. They have it in one of the other cities or two of the other cities, but I think it's a, it's a very huge statement to to do that and have it in a prominent area here in Palo Alto, maybe even on Hamilton. So I don't know. If I need to make a motion, would you accept a D?
I wonder if I might. I think that's an area where the HRC and the Public Art Commission would probably have the opportunity to look at that and even more, you know, earlier you spoke about a variety of other things. Councilmember Koo that aren't just related to Black Lives Matter. So to me, that I think that's part of C. Black Lives Matter. So to me, that, I think that's part of C. I'm not sure that it necessarily needs a motion. Because I, I think it's something that would enable us to connect the different departments we have. It's not really just about, just about that one thing. Does that, does that make sense? I'm just thinking about it. We could broaden it out a bit. Do you think, Mr. City Manager, that might be a way to include our various departments?
Certainly. I think part of, part of the challenge for the moment and ahead of us is how to ensure this is not a one-off. And I think from the, the comments we've heard, that's certainly the commitment that, that we're all expressing. And so would like to allow the council and the organization to help come up with some strategies to ensure that this is, this has a permanent effect on us all.
Do you, do you have an amendment there, Councilmember Koo?
No, I'm just gonna go with what Councilmember Cormac has said, you know, let's see what comes back next week. Those are thoughts and those are, you know, I believe it goes deeper than just, you know, a, a resolution, which is a good start. And this motion is a good start. But I do want to see concrete matters come out of this. And this is the beginning. So I don't, I don't want to put too much things in there. And I'll go with what Councilmember Cormac has suggested.
I, I hear you. I'll volunteer two things. One is I'll paint it with you if the city manager gives us permission. And two, in our study session later tonight on potentially opening streets, maybe that's another opportunity, but.
I'll take you up on that.
I'll empathize with it. Councilmember Phil Seth, I see your hand again.
Sorry, I'm done.
Okay. I think we've had a fruitful discussion. A lot more work to do. This is just committing ourselves to actually doing that work. And as I said at the beginning, you know, I, I think many times in America, we've seen these, these movements come and go. I want to work with you all to make sure we don't let this one go. So let's, let's get our butts in gear and get some good stuff done and make sure we, we have the most just equitable city we can have. Okay, Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you all for this. I know this is tough work. It's emotional and, and we're entering a new space. So I appreciate all your work. Okay, that completes item four A. Next up is item five, adoption of a resolution declaring an attention to temporarily suspend the levy of assessment against the business improvement desk district. And staff has a presentation.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm David Ramberg with the Administrative Services Department. Tonight, staff is verbally presenting in, in for time, the first of two meetings on the downtown Business Improvement District, following council's prior action on May fourth to suspend the bid assessment for fiscal year twenty due to the COVID nineteen emergency. Staff is recommending tonight to suspend the bid assessment for fiscal year twenty-one as well, which covers July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Additionally, the bid would be temporarily suspended from one year, for one year, and it would reassess its future strategy during that time. Should council approve this recommendation, staff will return with the appropriate action at a public hearing during the June twenty-third council meeting. Staff is presenting an out, staff is presenting an alternative recommendation number two. Should council decide to move forward with a bid assessment rather than a suspension, which would be consistent with prior years without COVID nineteen implications. Both recommendations are provided here tonight since council's direction to suspend the assessment in fiscal year twenty-one had not yet been previously sought by staff. As background, the Palo Alto Downtown Business and Professional Association serves as the advisory board for the bid. Tonight, we are joined by Brad Aikian from the Board of the Palo Alto Downtown Business and Professional Association and Chairperson of the Advisory Board for the Bid. And he's available if there are any questions or discussion with him. And with that, we are providing just a brief presentation tonight so we can move on to council discussion and questions as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Aikian. Do you have any comments that you'd like to share with us quickly or? And thank you for sticking with us.
Yeah, absolutely. You guys have a busy schedule tonight. So, you know, just in respect for your guys' time, I, I will, I'll just leave it at that. We've, we've appreciated the council's support kind of over the years. It's been a great partnership, but we definitely understand the time that we're in right now and the struggles our businesses are going through. We don't know how long it's going to last and we don't know what's going to happen once this kind of shakes out. But yeah, I think this is the right move to put us on hiatus for a year and then put right for the assessments for two years. And then again, we're gonna, we've already kind of had a discussion, a couple of our board members are already in discussion with the Chamber of Commerce to kind of set up a separate subcommittee focused on kind of downtown issues. This way, there's a communication line that's, that'll be available between the downtown businesses and the city. In the future, when we recover out of this, we can decide to revive the bid and we can continue working together. But in the meantime, we support the staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Okay, back to council. I first talked to Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a prudent plan. No, I think, you know, the future is somewhat unclear. I think the events that the downtown did puts on are appreciated, the summer concerts, the tree lighting. But, you know, I want to thank staff for the options. I'll just, I, I read the report and I'd just like to go ahead and move option one, that we suspend the bid for FY twenty-one.
And I'll second it.
I don't need to speak to it anymore.
Okay, Councilmember Niss?
I, I think this is self-explanatory. We've gone over this many times before and I think, given what's going on downtown, I don't know what else could happen that would influence us like what actually is going on does. So absolutely seconding it and voting for it.
Okay, so we have option one, which is to waive the assessment fees this year as opposed to option two, which is to require a report back from the, the bid and then look at waiving fees. Councilmember Koo?
I just want to ask, maybe I'm not understanding this, but shouldn't we do the public hearing first and then go ahead and do a resolution?
As I
Is it backwards or?
I under, as I understand it, this actually sets the date for the public hearing on June twenty-second with our intent to waive the fees.
Yes, that's correct. It tells, it tells the staff what to come back with and there will be a second item.
Okay.
And it will be on June twenty-third, not twenty-second.
Sorry, let's make sure it's in the motion, please. Any other comments? I see your hands up. You three have all spoken. Okay. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, actually, back to Councilmember Koo's, I'm actually a little puzzled because usually every action that starts with public comment, so I'm actually puzzled. Do we not take public comment?
Thank you for the reminder. Really good point. I completely slipped my mind. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak to this item, the resolution declaring an intent to temporarily suspend the levy of assessment against the Business Improvement District for FY twenty-one, please raise your hand and the clerk will help you give your comment.
We'll just wait for a couple of seconds.
Sure. And, and thanks, Councilmember Tanaka, for the reminder.
Mayor, fine, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Anything else, colleagues? I don't see any hands, so let's vote. Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yep.
Myself is a yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Do you guys want to take a quick break? Just nod if you do. No, I'm saying no. Okay. Let's move on to our next item. Last item for the night. Item number eight, direction on actions to facilitate outdoor dining and retail on street sidewalks and parking areas in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Staff want to take it away?
And I lost my video. So let me hand it off to Rachel Tanner, I believe, to lead us through a brief staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It seems like my video is also not showing. Do folks see me right now? No, just a black screen. That's really interesting.
Same here. Wow, what's going on? Do others have video?
Well, I switched to a different camera, a little awkward angle, but it works. So I'm gonna, I think you, Mayor, I think you, Ed, and Mayor and councilmembers, I'm gonna share a brief presentation that should hopefully take just a few minutes. And hopefully I can share it with you guys. Let's see. Are you able to see the presentation? You cannot?
No.
No. All right.
Rachel and Ed, this is Jessica Brotto. I am happy to share the presentation.
If you can, that would be great.
Just have to queue me through it.
All right. I will give you the next slide queue. Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
She's back. Thank you.
So tonight, staff seek input and direction from the city council regarding adjusting regulations to facilitate and enhance outdoor dining and outdoor retail throughout Palo Alto. The proposed changes could facilitate dining during the COVID nineteen pandemic, during the states of emergency as they exist or perhaps unwind, really as long as we need to work to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. So as council is aware, the state of emergency was declared by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty twenty, and locally here on March sixteenth. Also, on March sixteenth, the Santa Clara County issued its first shelter in place order. And since that time, the order's been updated and the most recent updates took effect last Friday at twelve oh one AM. So these, this updates allows several businesses and services to resume, including the focus of tonight's presentation, which is outdoor dining and in-person indoor retail sales. The pandemic, so these services are subject to certain restrictions, which you can see here on the slide. For outdoor dining, some of the restrictions include the limiting the number of folks who can be at one table, how far the tables need to be from each other, and still no mixing of households. So you're still supposed to be with folks who you live with. For retail, we're allowing one customer per two hundred square feet of customer-accessible retail. And staff anticipate relaxing of the SIP order every two weeks if the county continues slowing the spread of COVID nineteen. And so we're working to try to anticipate how we would take those into account. There's one thing that the pandemic, if you can just stay on the other slide, Jessica. The pandemic has emphasized that we are really all in this together. And in a vibrant, dynamic business districts with shops and restaurants enhance the quality of life for all Palo Altons, also allowing them to meet their daily needs. At the same time, those businesses generate tax revenue, which supports our local services and infrastructure. And so our attention to our business community and to our residents through these actions can help to make sure that our business districts survive and thrive even given the, the COVID nineteen pandemic. Next slide. So I'm going to talk briefly about six topic areas, which were also discussed in the staff report. Sidewalk dining, street closures, parklets, private parking lots, outdoor retail display and sales activities, and alcohol consumption. Next slide. So staff proposed to create the Summer Streets Permit Program. And that looks at three areas, sidewalk dining, street closures, and parklets to help facilitate businesses being able to operate under the new Shelter in Place Order. Next slide. So with sidewalk dining, before the pandemic, businesses were allowed to apply for an encroachment permit issued by the Department of Public Works to place tables and chairs in the public right-of-way for exclusive use by their patrons for that dining establishment. So staff have created a streamlined version of the Sidewalk Dining Encroachment Permit as part of our Summer Streets Permit Program. It asks only for the most basic of plans to ensure that there's clearance from things like fire hydrants and utilities, make sure that there's accessible path of travel insurance, and the process waves architectural review and fees. So most of these steps can be and have been enacted by staff through their staff-level authority, but council action is needed to waive the fees and also to remove the minor architectural review. Next slide. Temporary street closures have been a very popular topic, as I'm sure you all are aware. The Summer Street Permit also allows for restaurants to place tables and chairs in closed portions of the public streets. And street closures, they are good because they can expand the outdoor area where tables and chairs can be placed, allowing restaurants to serve more patrons through dining service. Closed streets also provide an area where pedestrians can walk and maintain the social distancing that's recommended by the county. So staff can close streets through temporary street closure permits. However, for closures of a longer duration of the nature we are considering, such as through July, perhaps through Labor Day or even into the fall, staff will want to come back to council for approval or ratification of those longer-term closures. Next slide. I want to kind of shift to two different business areas that we want to focus, perhaps two different strategies for street closures, first talking about California Avenue. So staff have engaged in extensive outreach and communication with local business community, especially with retail and restaurants located in downtown and on Cal Ave. And so following these conversations and input, staff proposed closing California Avenue from El Comino Real to Birch, from ten AM on Thursday to ten PM on Sunday for weekends through June. In response to this, many of the Cal Ave businesses express a desire to close the street continuously. That's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, week through July, so essentially the next three weeks, in order to really observe the impact of that closure on business activity. The thought behind this from the businesses was that having a longer closure would allow patrons and others to get used to the idea that this is kind of the new order of business. They don't have to remember which day is Cal Ave closed and which day isn't open. And would give them enough time to really assess the impact, positive or negative, of the street closure. And I want to note that this closure would not affect the farmer's market, which still would operate on Cal Ave on Sunday. And one thing that I think is different from Cal Ave from downtown is really the setup of the street. It's not a through street, you know, it ends at the Caltrain Station. The group is already, a group of businesses are already familiar with closures because of the farmer's market. And the density and proximity of restaurants to each other really creates a high concentration of restaurants and businesses that would take advantage of this closure. Next slide, please. In downtown, we have also had a strong dialogue with businesses on University Avenue and really throughout the downtown. And staff proposed closing University Avenue either for an evening, such as a Friday night, maybe from five to ten PM, a weekday and weekend evenings, weekend day evenings, such as Saturday and Saturday night, or maybe for a whole weekend as a pilot to test the impact of closures. In response to these proposals, there have been an expression of both support and opposition from businesses. There have been many businesses who have wondered if a closure would deter folks from coming down. Some have feared a repeat of what happened when the utility program was doing construction downtown and kind of what would happen to the curbside pickup business. And there's been a preference for some to install parklets instead of having a street closure. But still, other businesses have expressed a desire to do what's expedient. And certainly, closing the streets for some may be more expedient than installing parklets, in addition, providing even more space than a parklet can for seating and serving patrons. So some thought maybe we should try the idea to at least see if it has a positive or negative impact. So council, you've heard also many requests from residents who have advocated for closing of the street. So staff still believe that a limited pilot closure could provide the insight needed to understand if this type of closure is, is warranted, is, is effective, and kind of what the frequency, duration, and type of closure may be. Next slide. On the subject of parklets, you may be familiar with them, seeing them in other neighboring communities like Redwood City, Menlo Park, Los Gatos, even San Carlos. There are seating areas that are in curbside parking spaces. They have a great way of enhancing the pedestrian environment and certainly in today's, today's circumstances, providing place for outdoor dining. Installation costs can vary. We've heard quotes from as little as ten thousand to upwards of forty thousand or more. And downtown restaurant owners, as I said, have expressed a desire to install parklets. And given the expense, though, it's not clear if everyone would want to install them, who is able to install a parklet. And staff are proposing to establish a temporary parklet program, so the permits would expire at the end of 2020, um, December 31st. And so it's unclear if folks will make that investment for, um, that shorter duration. And potentially, we could have a longer-term program. We would, of course, return to council before implementing anything that would be, be longer term. Staff can use the summer streets encroachment permit to permit the parklets. Um, this, this would be an expedient way to, um, install the parklets. But staff can also return to council, perhaps in August, with some lessons learned from this program to understand more about what could be enhanced, and certainly if council wanted to consider a longer-term program. Next slide. So those kind of programs really focus a lot on the public right-of-way and how to use that and enhance that for, um, the pedestrian environment, but also for use by businesses and by others. And so now we're kind of turning to some of the areas that fall on private parking lots and kind of also cross both private and public, um, areas. They are private parking lots, retail, and alcohol consumption. So when it comes to private parking lots, staff propose allowing up to fifty percent of the area of a private dedicated off-street parking lot to be used for retail or dining. Applications would be required, and staff will review for safety, ensuring that circulation is maintained and that proper barriers are in place to protect diners and our shoppers. So council action would be needed to suspend for a temporary period of time certain aspects of the municipal code, conditional use permits, or conditions of approval to allow the reduction in the, um, onsite parking at these different establishments. Next slide. Staff also, when it comes to outdoor retail and sales, currently, um, the municipal code allows for folks to place, um, plants or flowers on sidewalks for sale, but we really don't allow other folks to place their retail or the merchandise on sidewalks. So staff proposed allowing retailers to display merchandise and conduct sales activities on public side sidewalks in a parklet if they built one or collaborated with a neighboring, um, restaurant to have a parklet, or along closed streets, or in designated areas of private parking lots. So while indoor retail is permitted under the, um, revised shelter-in-place, the space limitations for some shops especially can reduce the number of customers that might be able to enter. And if street closures do occur, it seems nice to allow retailers to participate in that expanded area and create greater visibility for their establishments by placing some, you know, items either in the street, maybe they'll have a setup or a table next to their business to really highlight, uh, that they're open and that patrons can, you know, browse and, and purchase, um, goods. So council would need to have, make an amendment, could be a temporary urgency ordinance, um, to the municipal code to allow such displays and sales. Next slide. So alcoholic beverages are controlled by the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or better known as A.B.C. A.B.C. has issued five notices of regulatory relief aimed at allowing holders of valid A.B.C. licenses to adapt their licenses to the pandemic situation. And while A.B.C. has provided such relief, they also need to have the local, established local governments kind of align in order for those relief regu- relief measures to be enacted. And so even though A.B.C. may allow something, if we don't allow it locally, the business can't take advantage of that. So specifically, staff proposed allowing the consumption of alcoholic beverages with a meal in public places, and we can certainly talk about the pros and cons of that. It's following something that Los Gatos did in order to facilitate their parklet pilot last year, and they are continuing that. So this could, uh, result in consumption of, you know, a, a alcoholic beverage with food in other places in Palo Alto, so maybe there is a desire to say when and where this could happen specifically. Um, additionally, we'd need to allow for consumption of alcohol while beverages in parking lots or other private areas. Essentially, if you imagine that there's a restaurant that, um, has a private parking lot, and we let them expand their footprint for dining service into that parking lot, A.B.C. allows them to have a permit that allows them to expand their footprint. But we also need to make sure we're saying yes, that they can do that, and they can serve alcoholic beverages um, there, and maybe as long as they get the A.B.C. temporary catering authorization, which is the authorization that is currently provided for that. So council action would be needed to allow the consumption in public and/or to suspend certain aspects of the conditional use permits or conditions of approval, both for, um, eating and drinking, whether it's in a parklet, in a closed street, or on a private, uh, parking lot. Next slide. Uh, you can go to the next slide too, Jessica, thank you. So then the last two slides really just are tables that summarize the different, um, topics, the current staff activities, the recommendation, and the future council action that we would return for. So hopefully they can be part of organizing the discussion and a, a way to kind of return if we need to look at them. This slide has three topics, sidewalk dining, street closures, and parklets. And the next slide has the final three, private parking, outdoor retail, and alcohol consumption. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
It was a great presentation. Thank you on this table.
Really good.
Super helpful. Um, okay, I know we have a number of attendees, uh, so let's go to members of the public. I don't mean to be a downer, everybody, but we, we've been in our meeting since 5:00 p.m. And so we understand this is a topic of great interest to Palo Altons. I, I've said before, I don't think we've ever received so much interest in, in one single thing when people have emailed us saying, "Close University, close Cal Ave." We have heard you loud and clear. I promise, all of us on council have read those emails and spoken to many of you. So with that, we'll go to public comment. Uh, I would just encourage you, if you agree with so what somebody else has said, uh, please just say you agree with them, and, and, uh, we will get to this item as quickly as we can.
Thank you, mayor. Fine. At this time, we have nineteen speakers who wish to speak. Our first speaker is Carol Scott. Carol, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Carol Scott. I'm a resident of Evergreen Park. First, let me be clear that I applaud and strongly support your substantial outreach and efforts to support our local businesses. In fact, I hope that you spread your efforts beyond the downtown area and California Avenue to include all local restaurants and retailers in the city. I would like to request that in addition to the support you dedicate, you have, this is the support you have, um, given to the local business community and the outreach that you have done with that community, that the city also reach out in a similar and ongoing fashion to communicate and work with the residents of neighbors, residents of neighborhoods that are adjacent to California Avenue in particular, as that street is the one that is to be closed first. We residents have made several inquiries to staff about what the plans for closing California Avenue are, how traffic will be directed through the area after closure, and where cars will be directed to park once the a hundred-plus spaces along Cal Ave are no longer available, especially until the new public garage is open. To date, we have not received a response. Ms. Tanner mentions that many residents have expressed support, but I do not know how many of those residents actually live in the affected neighborhoods, and clearly, none of us in these affected neighborhoods have heard of such outreach. I believe that we deserve a, just, a transparent answer to our questions. Our office of transportation is extremely capable, and I know it is capable of working with businesses and communicating and working with residents. We want the city's effort to be successful for business and also to mitigate as much as possible any potential negative impact for residential neighborhoods in line with guidance that is contained in the city's comprehensive plan. I suggest that it is not good governance practice, nor does our president to exclude residents' concerns from city deliberations and decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Our next speaker is Debbie Maitels. Debbie, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Thank you for listening to our comments this late at night. Um, about a month ago, I was in a webinar recently with some people from San Mateo County talking about positive responses to the opportunities that have risen up since the pandemic hit. And a woman who worked for City of San Mateo outlined a plan that they were doing there to help the restaurants survive the new health guidelines by closing some of their downtown streets. And this is a great idea. I thought, wow, it's really, really smart to do that. And since my husband and I have been to the restaurants in downtown San Mateo several times for dinner, I made a note to, you know, plan a trip there as soon as the area opened up, 'cause I'd really like to support those businesses and the city. And then recently, I've heard the other cities are doing the same thing, Redwood City, Sunnyvale, and Mountain View, all cities that have interesting downtown food scenes. So I think if Palo Alto doesn't follow the suit with University Avenue, we're gonna be definitely taking our dining dollars elsewhere, and will others. I think maybe the commercial real estate property owners may be telling you that a street closure would kill the jobs. But really, on the contrary, I think we want to keep downtown as a healthy place to eat out, and allowing more room for doing that would save jobs. The restaurant owners and their workers really want to see this happen. And we residents all wanna go out and choose healthy places to eat outdoors, and then stroll around to the other shops afterwards. And for those who have concerns about emergency access, I think the street will not be totally closed. There could be a fifteen-to-twenty-foot-wide center, uh, the street, which will provide access for emergency vehicles, as well as for those pedestrians who are walking around within the safe distance around them. So please go ahead and approve the plan to close off through traffic on University as well as Cal Ave, so that we can retain those restaurant jobs, keep the tax revenues within our city, and provide us with a healthy place to go out at night for dinner. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. Our next speaker is Ryan Globus.
Uh, good evening, Palo Alto City Council. Uh, my name is Ryan Globus, and I'm a resident of Midtown. I, um, I just wanna urge you to please support, uh, closing University Avenue and Cal Ave to vehicles, so restaurants and businesses can use that space, uh, as well as allowing, uh, private lots like at Town and Country and the Midtown Shopping Center, uh, giving those businesses the flexibility to choose how much of that space they wanna use for parking and how much for restaurants and other businesses. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ryan. Our next speaker is Bonard.
Hello?
Can you hear me? Two minutes.
Hello?
Hello, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much to the council for, uh, this public forum. This is really terrific. On, on this initiative, I wanted to, uh, suggest for the temporary, uh, uh, street parking, to maybe consider just closing a couple of blocks and compare, uh, on those blocks, how they fare, or those, uh, shops and restaurants fare with, uh, uh, com- um, versus the other blocks that wouldn't be closed, that, uh, uh, could be a good indication of how, uh, happy the residents or the, uh, the shops are with the, uh, with the experiment. Uh, second, um, I'd like to, uh, just bring a testimony of, uh, myself as a citizen, as a citizen growing in a city where, uh, the main street was permanently pedestrian. And I can guarantee you that when the decision was taken, everybody had the same questions as the ones that you're rightly asking today. Years later, nobody, nobody in this city would go back and reopen the, uh, the street for traffics. And when I say nobody, it's the residents and the shops and restaurants. So I think, uh, hopefully this test will be, uh, conclusive, and after that, you will consider a permanent, um, street closing. Other points, in terms of the practical aspect, I think that we'll work theirs- themselves out. And I think longer term, if you consider a permanent street closing, I think the city should, uh, explore other ways to, uh, get to University Avenue than the car, such as, uh, small street shuttles that would go through the residential areas to, uh, get to, uh, University Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Roth. Jessica, you have two minutes.
Hello, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Uh, thank you so much for your time tonight, and sorry it's so late. Appreciate all that you do. Uh, today was quite a meeting, and I feel really confident having this council, uh, leading us. Um, to speak to this issue, uh, I'm the owner of the Cobblerie on California Avenue, and I wanna say, thank city staff for their quick action on this matter. I think that this is going to help save California Avenue and the wonderful restaurants and small shops that we have there. I encourage you to close the street the seven days a week. Um, it will cause less confusion for the customers and residents. I also would like to encourage you to allow outdoor retail. Um, at this time, it will help my business stay alive, as well as I know that Leaf and Puddle and a few of the other businesses would like to have the same opportunities as the restaurants. Um, I would like to, uh, say that I'm happy to hear that the farmer's market will stay in place on Sunday. I think that that is important. Um, and I also, uh, just thank you very much for your time tonight, and I look forward to seeing how this works out. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next speaker is Drew Moran. Drew, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Uh, I'm a longtime resident and Palo Alto-based construction company owner. Been here for quite a while. My points are in support of shared streets and closing both, both of these streets to cars, because doing so will help restore jobs and also improve public safety and public health. Um, I wanna commend the staff and the council for their work during this really challenging time, and I know it's really difficult to navigate these really strange waters. Um, to the council, I don't remember any of you campaigning on a platform that went something like, "I'm gonna help solve the tragedy caused by a worldwide pandemic that paralyzes our economy and forces millions of Californians to lose their jobs within a matter of a few weeks." This time is really unlike any, any other time. There, there just is no playbook for a deadly virus circulating among us. So you're doing a great job. Um, in that, we have no f- idea what the future really holds, and all speculation about what, what will happen is mostly that, it's speculation, and we're not really sure where we're gonna end up. Uh, we don't know there's a second wave coming this fall, or how long physical or social distancing will be required. So anything that we do, uh, choose to do could fail, or it could succeed, and we're not really sure. And we won't have any chance to go back and have a do-over. So this is a really important time to act and act quickly, act without a lot of restrictions as, as is being discussed, and it's really important to ease permitting and make it really simple for retailers and especially restaurants to move into the streets and to get people out in safe distance from one another, but also take advantage of that large amount of real estate that we have from curb to curb, and just use it for what it really needs to be used at this moment, which is to bring hundreds of people back to work um, in, in the retail and restaurants, but also bring lots of us back downtown and to California Avenue to, uh, to enjoy the city that we love. Thanks.
Thank you, Drew. Our next speaker is Stacy Ogato.
Good evening. Um, I'm Stacy Ogato. I've lived in Palo Alto for twenty-six years. I echo Drew's comments. This is a tremendous community support to open up both California and university avenues to pedestrians, to lend streets the sidewalks outside their doors, and redirect foot traffic to the center of newly designated walking streets. It's safe, it's smart, and it's a no-brainer. In anticipation of tonight's conversation, Saturday morning, we posted a petition on change.org. I'll forward it to the council later tonight. The petition supports closing both downtown areas and allowing businesses to extend their footprint in hopes of supporting their economic recovery. Six hundred and twenty-one people have supported this position since it was posted just over forty-eight hours ago. It's troubling to hear, excuse me, that we're considering sometime later and at best possibly close down a few blocks of university for a day or two as a test. We support seven-day-a-week closure of these corridors and side streets as possible, at least through July, a sustained period of time, so that people can know that they're welcome to stroll and support businesses outside in a safe manner, any day of the week during the summer months. Why create confusing schedules that will require constant communication? Many adjacent communities have moved that much faster and made it much easier for restaurants to begin to rebuild. We seem to possibly be mired in the Palo Alto process. City Manager Shikata's report points out that Palo Alto's comprehensive plan specifically supports reclaiming public spaces for people instead of vehicles. If not now, when? Wouldn't it be a shame if six months from now, California Avenue is rebounding, and it becomes clear that Uni- that University Avenue never got the same chance? Now is the time, and thank you all so much for your support.
Thank you, Stacy. Our next speaker is Susan Chamberlain. Susan Chamberlain, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
There you go. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I am speaking in favor of taking action to close University and California Avenue so that, um, the business community can begin to rebuild. Please act quickly on this, as time is of the essence. We have a window of opportunity while the weather is warm to pilot a program of While the weather is warm to pilot a program of closing these streets to cars. And allowing restaurants and businesses to thrive outside in a pedestrian atmosphere. I represent, I represent the three hundred, three fifty Silicon Valley Palo Alto Climate Team. And we're a group of environmentalists who want to see a better world as we emerge from this time of the COVID pandemic. Imagine two boulevards where we can dine, shop, stay physically distant. And enjoy our beautiful commercial areas with reduced fears of contagion and without the smell and noise of cars. Creating these people focused pedestrian friendly boulevards will help build community while encouraging people to enjoy our city. On bike and foot. There are four compelling arguments in favor of closing both these streets. It will get our businesses back on their feet. It will get workers back to work. It will build community in our city and it will help the environment by reducing dependency on cars. Encouraging walking and biking. What are we waiting for? It's time to try something new. Close these two streets seven days a week. This is such an obvious way to revitalize our two downtowns and help businesses and workers. After a commercially disastrous three months. We owe this to our businesses, our workers, our community and our environment. It's a win, 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 win. Please act now.
Thank you Susan. Our next speaker Sandra Slater. Sandra, you have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. I don't really want to go through, I, I agree with everybody who's already spoken and I, I don't want to even read my com- my prepared comments. Because they've done such a wonderful and articulate job Debbie and Drew and Stacy and Susan of really everyone. And has, have basically covered all the points that I wanted to make. The one thing I, I think. People are saying, how, how can we do this quickly and it's, it's not possible. I think we have a tremendous amount of unleashed. Creativity in our city. We can. Demarcate where restaurants and retail can go out to by taking traffic cones. And making them, spray painting them great colors and sticking things that come out the top like flowers, sunflowers. They're really creative and inexpensive ways to do that. You could even do it with duct tape. Just to say that, that you know, in order to leave the ten feet that you need for emergency vehicles. I think the, the, doing it. Only a few days a week is really, really confusing for everybody. We did a parklet a few years ago, twice. On University Avenue. We did it once in front of Lululemon and the woman came out and said, oh, I wish we could do this every time. We'd have yoga lessons outside and think about university avenue and letting the retail shops have some creativity. And doing things like a yoga class socially distanced on University Avenue. What a great thing for them to be able to do. So let's be bold. Let's not go through the infamous Palo Alto process. Let's just go for it. And I, I, I'm going to stop there because I, I know everybody's tired. Thank you so much.
Thank you Sandra. Our next speaker is Don Jackson. Don, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone here that there are numerous wonderful restaurants. That are not located on university or California avenues. I think closing those places are great, but it's important that we remove any obstacles under our control. For safe, healthy, financially viable restaurants wherever they're located. The proposed actions to authorize parklets are applicable to virtually all restaurants. And have the fewest impacts to other businesses and activities. I urge council to direct staff to move forward on parklets as soon as possible. Including annual permit renewals that, that seems appropriate and reasonable. Do not require additional authorization permits for alcohol consumption if at all possible. Waive any old fees for these permits and expedite and streamline approvals or permits whenever possible. Again, I'm not opposed to the university or California Avenue closures. I think those are fine ideas. But it doesn't help all of our restaurants. I can name ten, ten of them that aren't on those places. We need to save them too. I think parklets are what we can do to help them. Thank you.
Thank you Don. And our next speaker is Darlene Yapley. Darlene, you'll have two minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening council. Thank you for your time. There are plenty of comments and emails about street closures. So I will focus on parklets, especially for restaurants not located on the closed streets. Yes, parklets and street closures with potential Black Lives Matter painting. Parklets are geographically inclusive. We need to support all restaurants in Palo Alto, including those located on. And not on university and California streets. Parklets increase dining capacity and restaurant owners not on closed streets see this as making a difference. It's safer for people to eat outdoors. Some worry about parking spaces. But what's the use of having parking spaces if it means our businesses are no longer going to exist? Yes, for parklets. Yes, for annual renewals. They need a commitment of time so they can invest. In the return on their parklet. Yes, for alcohol consumption with meals and don't require additional applications for them to do that. Yes, for fee waivers and yes, for the pre-approved parklet design packages. Especially for restaurants not on closed streets, parklets will make the difference between a restaurant's survival and going out of business. Thank you.
Thank you Darlene. Our next speaker is Gian Bienniumi.
Thank you. I want to thank Rachel for her comprehensive report. I thought it was very inclusive and insightful. She brought out some things that I wasn't quite aware of about. I'm the owner of Zola Restaurant Palo Alto downtown across from City Hall. I strongly disagree with closing down university avenue. I don't see how this is fair to restaurants that are not in university, obviously including mine. It would give those on university an unfair advantage to those that are not on university. I strongly support the creation of parklets everywhere now and for a long time. I love the idea of extending parklets to retail as well. I think it would make for a very vibrant downtown. Please urge staff to extend the permitting of parklets beyond the summer and this year. We will never get a return on our investment if we cannot go beyond. December. Thanks a lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is John McDowell. John, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi. First I'll just say that I love Zola and I love all the restaurants that are off university avenue. And we need to do everything in our power to support them, to support. All of our restaurants and retail tailors in the city to recover from, from this COVID nineteen crisis. I did see the, the wonderful report that Rachel put together from the council earlier than this meeting. And I noticed that it said that there was mixed feelings as you just heard from the owner of Zola. From restaurants in the commercial core of university avenue about closing the. University Avenue to, to open it to pedestrians and more table space. So I went and I interviewed today and yesterday. Almost every restaurant in, on university avenue that I could get in touch with an owner or a manager. Many of them offered to join this call and I hope they, I told them to join two hours ago. I hope that they're still here. We had universal support from almost every restaurant on university avenue. To close university avenue for a trial period to put tables out in the street. These are the restaurants that are fronting university avenue and they said, hey, we've thought about it. We've changed our minds. In the calls with, that we've had with the city manager's office in the past, we felt like maybe the sewer line replacement project would be indicative of what would happen with. Street closures and we realized, hey, that's unattractive. That, that takes people away from the city. Closing the, bring, putting tables out on the streets is something that welcomes people. And they realized that, hey, we can't use. That there's not sufficient table space on sidewalks and parklets. To safely put a meaningful number of tables in front of university avenue businesses. So I, I hope that you can consider the, the, the restaurants that are directly affected on university avenue. Who are strongly supportive of putting more tables out on the street. Thank you.
Thank you John. Our next speaker is Charlie Whedons. Charlie, you have two minutes.
Good evening and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city manager and staff. And thank you for your, your very hard work and, and commitment, not only tonight, but over the last few very difficult months. So as we all know, our restaurants are critical to maintaining our two vibrant commercial districts, university avenue and California avenue. I'm here to speak to you tonight and urge you to develop, promote and implement the most efficient and effective and affordable way. To allow our restaurants to reopen under the guidelines which are requiring six foot spacing for social distancing safety. These new guidelines reduce the permitted indoor restaurant capacity by up to seventy-five percent. Which will make it difficult for these small businesses with extremely low profit margins to make it financially feasible to reopen. Without additional outdoor seating. We support the city's efforts to find creative ways for the restaurants to survive by allowing outdoor public space for customer services. Surveys conducted by the chamber, the business roundtable discussions, hundreds of emails and petitions from our residents all indicate. The overwhelming public call for urgent action to allow the restaurants to reopen quickly and profitably during this current phase. And throughout the summer. Action is needed now so these restaurants will have the expanded dining space they need. We encourage you to authorize solutions that are immediate and easy, such as the parklets or other temporary strategies. That allow restaurants to reopen following the new guidelines and keep their workers and the public safe. And start our local economy on the road to recovery. Thank you.
Thank you Charlie. Our next speaker is Nielsen Buchanan. Nielsen, you may need to unmute on your side. There you go. You have two minutes.
Yeah, we're about to approach Monday euphoria. Some of this makes a great deal of sense and I think everyone is anxious to have the restaurants and retail merchants be successful. I'd like to point out to the council that you do have an obligation to check out the feasibility of the assumptions that are being asserted tonight. The big assumption is not on the nighttime trade. This assumption that bothers me the most is that if we have return of business as normal. And Caltrain is somewhat functional. I would ask that the Office of Transportation, which has the professional staff to conduct the studies. Is to take a look at the parking loss and the, and the parking demand that will be at from eleven o'clock to two o'clock during the work week. Where that traffic and parking will go. I'm very familiar with the mathematics. If we assume we're going to have a rebound to somewhat normalcy. And I would be willing to bet that your, your staff will report that there's a massive pa- parking shortage in the noon time peaks. If you take out hundreds of parking spaces and not to mention the confused traffic. It's obvious that the city council and staff are ready to move very rapidly on this. And I think that you're not thinking through the best interest of the merchants, the customers, the other merc- businesses downtown. If the scenario that I just described returns, my guess is that we're talking about not just dozens of parking space shortages, but hundreds. I, I'll leave it up to Philip Cami in the Office of Transportation to provide the objective data. But I am pretty familiar with the parking phenomena as it was at that noon time hours downtown university avenue. That's where the crunch has always been. If you take out hundreds of parking places, the crunch will be profound. Thank you very much.
Thank you Nielsen. Our next speaker is Todd Burke.
Thank you clerk, minor and mayor and council. Thank you for taking a chance to listen. My name is Todd Burke. I live on California Avenue. And I happen to be president of the homeowners association at Palo Alto Central, which is right by the California Avenue train station. We have about two hundred homeowners and residents that live here. Our bo- our board took a vote at our last board meeting in support of California Avenue closure. And we're in support of, of all of the things that we've discussed tonight. I, i- in two thousand and nine, the city tragically removed sixty-three mature holly oak trees. And Palo Alto made national news for all the wrong reasons for that mistake. I worked for years to help justify the renovation of California Avenue, changing it from a four lane to a two lane. Completely renovated streetscape. And I think looking back on that, I don't think there's anybody that's going to look back on that project and say that it was a bad idea. Sure, there was a bit of construction and a little bit of time that we had to wait, but it turned out to be great. Now we have such a vibrant place on California Avenue with Torun and Italico, Zareens, La Bodega, all these great places. We need to make them better and we need to allow them the opportunity to thrive in this really tough market. I've seen the parklets go up. I saw what's going up at the Creamery. I think that's going to be fantastic. Really looking forward to what we might possibly do. But I think it needs to happen now. I think the city and at least one or multiple brave council people need to make a motion. Needs to be seconded, needs to be voted on so that this is enacted this week. If we wait to do all of these studies and we take multiple years to come up with a decision last time, when this, when the trees were destroyed and the street was being rebuilt. Nothing left on. So please, somebody step up, make the decision tonight. Let's move forward and rebuild business in Palo Alto.
Thank you Todd. Our next speaker is Stephen Frankel. Steve Frankel, you have two minutes.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Yeah, a lot of great things have been said, so I won't repeat them. I'll just give a little personal experience. So I live in downtown north and during March and April and May, I did my socially appropriate exercising. And I would walk on university avenue and it was scary to say the least. Everything was closed. It was a very eerie feeling. To walk on university avenue with all the businesses closed. Of course, a few did stay open. Orin stayed open. A couple of other places stayed open. So I was able to go and support those businesses. Now, as things start to reopen. I went to another place that I like to go to in Town and Country and they had a parklet. They moved all of their tables out of their cafe into the parklet and it took, you know, eight to ten parking spaces. University is too dense for that, for every restaurant. You really need to open up the whole street. If we're going to have a vibrant downtown, we need to open up the street to have the appropriate social distancing. Allow people to feel good about being out. People are very excited to be out. I mean, I was amazed that two thousand people came to the, the King Square on, on, on Saturday. People want to be out. They want to be with people again, but they want to do it safely. People, I'm actually surprised. People wear masks. They, they social distance. They want to be out, but they want to be safe. Closing university avenue, closing California will allow people to enjoy the businesses. And be, be safe in when they do it. Thank you for this time.
Thank you Steve. Our next speaker is Stefan Heck. Stefan, you have two minutes.
Thank you council members. I speak out in support of opening up our streets in both downtowns for restaurants and for retail. I've been a resident of Palo Alto for thirty-two years. I want to tackle the three objections you have already heard and will hear. From our downtown developers who want to keep things in the status quo. The first is parking, which has come up. University has a hundred and seventy-one spaces directly along the street. That's a little over three percent of our forty-three hundred spaces downtown. If we add some spaces on the closed side streets, we could actually eliminate fewer than a hundred and forty spaces. And we have twenty-five percent open capacity as the city's own parking survey shows. Secondly, you'll hear from a lot of property owners, drive-through traffic is essential to retail. That is wrong on six counts. First, it's foot traffic, not car traffic that drives sales. There's lots of studies showing that. From many different, both business resources and academic resources. Second, locals spend eighty percent more than non-locals who arrive by car. So it's the residents and the students from Stanford that are actually driving the vibrant downtown. Third, university only carries six thousand vehicles per day, unlike Hamilton, which carries over eight thousand. And Barcadero, Alma, all these other streets carry twenty-five to thirty-three thousand. So university is not a major source of traffic for downtown. Despite the way that it feels always congested because we have so many cross streets. Pedestrian zones boost foot traffic. It's been studied extensively in Europe by thirty to eighty percent. A portion of that translates directly to retail sales increases. And lastly, people don't find restaurants by driving around. They use the internet. Side streets will also benefit from that increased pedestrian traffic, supporting all those restaurants. Third, you'll hear that pedestrians mall fail, fails. And that is true. In the fifties, lots of pedestrian malls that were put in to rescue dying cities and dying downtowns did fail. If you look over the last. If you look over the last two decades, though, most of them have worked. Older, Santa Monica, there are lots of thriving examples. There are ten success factors that drive that. Palo Alto is the only city among all the ones that have considered or have initiatives like this that actually meets nine of the ten success factors. We have a university, we have the local traffic, we have parking nearby, we have a transit center downtown, we have the four to five block length that is optimal. The only criterion we don't have is we don't have a beach. But if we wait long enough, climate change might even give us a beach downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stefan. The next speaker is Niraj Duhon. Niraj, you have two minutes.
Yeah, hi. I'm a co-owner at Slider Bar on University Avenue. And by the way, happy Tuesday, everyone. I'm sure you guys, everyone is very excited, exhausted and I promise I won't be taking too much time. You know, I just want to say that I truly believe that closing University Avenue is a great idea. You know, because people are so afraid to come out and you know, and we do not have, we are not allowed to seat people inside the restaurant. The only option is, you know, let's just make, you know, seating arrangement outside on the street and on the University Avenue, you know, a comfortable place for them. And I totally agree with, you know, that it's time to increase the foot traffic over there. And anytime, you know, I go to my business and it feels like a very scary scene from some horror movie that you know, there is no one is outside. So let's just, you know, and I truly, you know, believe that, you know, these businesses are just not on the University Avenue. You know, they have some concerns and so I think we just need to work out a plan so that it's a win-win for all of us. And, you know, one thing I would really like the city to do is just, you know, let's just increase the, let's just, you know, whatever decision we do make, we just need to, let's not waste more time on it and just, you know, make a decision sooner and act on it now so that it's not too late.
Thank you, Niraj. Our next speaker is David Epstein. David, you have two minutes.
Hi. I urge you to make University Avenue a pedestrian-only street now to make businesses both viable and attractive diners and shoppers. I'm Dave Epstein, thirty-year resident, business professor. I'm a board member of Global Health Institute, DCI Fellow at Stanford, and a strong advocate for a thriving downtown that's healthy and prosperous. I distributed a presentation to the council this afternoon. It shows diverting traffic on newly-made one-way streets of Hamilton and Litten move traffic safely and efficiently by coordinating lights at twenty-five miles an hour. I proposed a method of adding over two hundred parking spaces to more than make up for the one hundred and seventy spaces between High and Webster on University, just with adding paint. Studies show that not only businesses on the walking street do better, but so do businesses in the vicinity such as side streets, which can include parklets, as more people are in the downtown area and shopping. In this time of virus, University Avenue cannot handle people walking at a social distance from sidewalk tables or parklets alone, which do not solve the problem. As other towns make changes ahead of us, University Avenue will suffer. Even making California Avenue walking street without doing the same for University Avenue may have the severe detrimental effect on downtown. This is an inexpensive plan as it takes paint, cones, and programming to coordinate traffic lights. Half-hearted approaches like weekend only, partial closures, or parklets alone will doom this to fail. The only way to attract shoppers and diners is to make traffic work and full road access for pedestrians. This requires bold and complete implementation. We can't afford to wait. The vast majority of businesses owners are counting on us. Please move quickly before we mortally hurt them. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Celine Heck. Celine, you have two minutes.
Honorable mayor and esteemed council members, my name is Celine Heck. I'm thirteen and I live in Palo Alto. I'd like to endorse the Summer Streets Initiative with the perspective of one of Palo Alto's youth. In the days before quarantine, downtown was a popular spot for kids to walk around, socialize, and eat. Countless times, one of my friends has texted me, hey, do you want to meet up for boba or pastries on University? Palo Alto's downtown is not only an integral part of Palo Alto's economy, but its social atmosphere as well. However, in the time of COVID nineteen, we have been told to isolate ourselves. While this is intended to mean physical isolation, it has also resulted in social isolation. According to the APA, long periods of social isolation have been known to harm mental health. Having this Summer Streets program will allow people to maintain social distance while increasing their overall happiness and mental health. Studies by the Fran Hofer Institute have also shown that getting outside and getting fresh air can improve mental health and academic performance. The Summer Streets program would also enable safer pedestrian and bike traffic. In my opinion, the ability to bike and walk everywhere is a critical part of being a kid in Palo Alto. In elementary school, we're taught how to safely bike and cross the street. In middle school, most of us feel comfortable biking anywhere. Creating a safer bike and pedestrian road not only gives kids more normalcy in their lives, but also provides them with an incentive to go outside, which if any of you have kids, you know is great because you're probably pestering them to go outside right now. Thank you. I truly hope you will consider the Summer Streets proposal. I yield my remaining time back to the mayor.
Thank you, Celine. Our next speaker is Michael Eckwald. Michael Eckwald. You may need to unmute from your side. Thank you. There you go. You have two minutes.
Super. Thank you very much. You know, first of all, I'd like to just thank the city manager and the staff from Public Works, Planning, et cetera, for putting together the presentation, you know, the outreach to the business and retail community. I, you know, I want to really, I don't even know if I can add on to what else is said, but this is something that's really critical to the survival of, you know, most of our small businesses. So I do the same and ask that we get this approved as soon as possible. And that it is a program that is not a two or three-day temporary trial, but whether it's a month or two months, whatever the longest duration of a trial period could be, I think that's what we would be asking for with all of the accommodations that are requested for both restaurants and retail and not only limited to just California Avenue and University, but all of the other business districts in the community. So that would be, you know, number one. Most important to, I think, all of us, not only the businesses, merchants, but also the residents and the general community of Palo Alto. So thanks for your consideration and have a good evening.
Thank you, Michael. Our next speaker is Jordan Nari. Jordan, you will have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. My name is Jordan Nari. I represent Rangoon Ruby, Burma Ruby, and Walburgers in downtown Palo Alto. We're just hoping for the opportunity to possibly close down University Avenue for, you know, a short period of time to test it out and then parklets for the long term. We appreciate you guys and all the hard work you've given to, you know, help us have an opportunity to feed people and feed families. And we hope you've made a great decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Our next speaker is John Shank. John, you will have two minutes. Go ahead. You have two minutes, John.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members and staff. Thanks for your earlier work this evening very much and for being attentive through all of this. My name is John Shank, representing Thwaites Brothers. We have, the Thwaites family's been very active of the downtown for more than a hundred and twenty years. We have fifteen retail tenants in the university downtown area. I've been active in most of the public outreach meetings that have gone on over the past month or two. I very strongly support the parklet and expanded sidewalk use solutions for expanded outdoor dining spaces. Closing University Avenue is a very bad idea and one that has very little support from those who actually work here as our city-led meetings have shown. You can confirm with the city manager what he heard during all of those meetings to confirm. Downtown and Calav retailers and restaurants have told the city that more than seventy percent of their sales have come from the daytime office workers. The office and retail environment is a truly symbiotic relationship that we must foster and protect. One will not exist without the other. It is not true that retail is supported by residents. I know it sounds good and it feels good, but it's not factually accurate. We have a relatively small percentage of total space on university that is retail. And of all of our retail, restaurants are less than half. Keeping university open will support all of the other retailers and all the other businesses to help create an overall vibrancy that we do need at this time. And sadly, due to the years of the downtown retail struggling under zoning restrictions and a squashed office environment, we don't have a very vibrant set of retailers to invigorate an entire avenue. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg. Rebecca, you have two minutes.
I'm thrilled to follow the previous speaker because I disagree with the large commercial landlords immensely. This is our time to work on behalf of our small businesses, our retail shops, and our restaurants like Rangoon Ruby, which is my favorite restaurant in the world. So thank you for speaking tonight. We need to close university. We need to close California Avenue. We need to have as many parklets as possible. We need to look into closing streets in southern parts of Palo Alto as well as west of Al Camino. We've known we've needed to do this for a while. For those concerned about parking, there's only one proven effective way to solve parking problems, and that's to reduce the number of cars on the street. How to reduce cars? We need to invest in safe bike lanes and safe sidewalks. And we need to invest in the shuttles that the city council promised in the comprehensive plan and for which we're still waiting. We need to invest in these safe measures that will serve our residents of all ages because it's the right thing to do for our residents, for our small business owners, and for our community, including those of all ages. So I invite the landlords to go ahead and pay taxes in our community to fund these shuttles and there will be no more problems to fund our shuttles and our safe bike lanes and to close as many streets as we need to, to protect the safety of our residents. Thanks for considering. I yield my time.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next speaker is Brad Hickian. Brad, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Brad Hickian and I'm the co-owner of Premier Properties. I want to start off by really thanking the city council for considering measures to help our business community. I agree that we need to do something and we need to do it fast. In my opinion, closing University Avenue would be a big mistake. This might be an attractive, quick fix, short-term solution for our restaurants, but it could have be the final nail in the coffin for our retailers. If we lose our parking, we lose our customers, we lose our retail. Go ahead and ask pretty much any retailer. From a numbers standpoint, downtown is split fairly equally between restaurants and retailers. I think we have to be mindful of the impacts to all of our retail uses. Plus, there's always a worry that a pilot project becomes permanent. Plus, where do you expect all those cars to go? Without new garages, cars will flood the side streets and the residential areas. As for the other ideas, I'm all in on using public, private parking lots, allowing outdoor retail displays and sales activities, and especially outdoor alcohol consumption. I think that's a great idea. And parklet, I think parklet's a great idea. I would just challenge the council to consider some questions when reviewing this. Who can build them? Can anyone apply? Who's paying for them? Are there ongoing fees? Is there an expedited permitting process? Are there limitations to the number of parklets? Are there design requirements? Is there a sunset date or do these become permanent? These are just a few questions that come to mind and I thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Brad. Our next speaker is April Webster. April, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I am not actually a resident of Palo Alto. I'm from Mountain View, but I am a regular patron of the restaurants and retail businesses within California and university. And I wanted to voice my support. We're closing down both of those streets and we're supporting parklets and whatnot. To be honest, I don't feel very safe going to any of these areas and giving them my business without the streets being closed. The sidewalks are far too narrow to be able to social distance to be able to get around safely. And I also wanted to say that, you know, a personal story, I went for a bike ride yesterday. I was going to get takeout pizza on California and I biked down the street and I think Catalico had just opened. And because of the space that they had and the distance between the tables, I felt comfortable enough to actually go in and sit down and order a meal. I ended up spending double what I would have if I'd gone takeout pizza. I tipped the waitstaff. I was able to enjoy my meal, see other people as opposed to taking a pizza and biking off to some park where I felt safe, you know, eating in a socially-distanced way. So just, you know, to echo what others have said in support of this, I think it's a wonderful idea. And I would really look forward to seeing that and spending more of my time in Palo Alto at both restaurants and retail businesses. And, you know, regarding the side streets, I think it would just bring more traffic to the main streets, which would spill over to side streets. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Our final speaker is Gail Price. Gail, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good. Okay, thank you. It's very late. I'll try to move quickly. Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. My name is Gail Price. I'm board president of Palo Alto Forward. We support the implementation of shared and livable streets as outlined in the staff report. My first question is why has this item been scheduled for a study session and not a public hearing resulting in a vote? The current process will further extend the debate. We need a timely decision to take advantages of the opportunities before us. We are also competing economically with other communities. Further delay may not necessarily result in optimum outcomes. It's better to test programs and adjust as needed. Please keep it simple. During and post-COVID nineteen, we need to adjust constantly. By enhancing economic recovery and vitality, we can combine safe distancing and public health practices and benefits. You will be adapting functional public areas to safely expand community use of our streets and sidewalks. This is not a radical concept. Throughout the world, thousands of cities have adopted similar approaches. Cities are organic and reinvent themselves. The city should reflect changing conditions to embrace and improve on these concepts. The outcomes will merge design flexibility, safety and wellness, business, social space, and new outcomes, which Palo Alto values and represents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail. And that ends our public speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Really appreciate you sticking with us until twelve-thirty. Happy Tuesday, everybody. We now return to council. If staff can maybe bring up those last slides, the kind of comparison ones, the table. And apologies if my words don't all make sense at this point.
Justin, are you able to bring up that slide?
So staff is asking roughly for feedback on these six topic areas and there's a recommendation and then future council actions, although some of those we could potentially take tonight. Is that correct?
I don't know if Ms. Duff has to read or add on the actions that can be taken tonight by the council formally.
So this is scheduled as a study session, Mr. Mayor, so the intent is really to come back very quickly. Um, uh, there are things that, that can be done administratively. And so that action you can take is just to affirm the staff's direction to engage in some of these, uh, city manager level activities. And then give direction on the items you'd like to see come back for council approval in the next two weeks.
Thank you. That's helpful and hope my colleagues heard that too. Firsthand I saw is council member Niss and get given the hour, um, questions, comments, motions. I think we're all hoping to get to bed. Liz, the floor is yours.
Um, hearing that we cannot make a motion. Suppose what we say is here's what we'd really like to have you do, city manager it. How would that be? That's administratively. Okay, where I think we are at this point, and I'll look for support out here in the, in the audience. Um, it looks to me as though what we're saying is we would like, in this really unprecedented time, things are, as we've never seen them before. This is the time for us to try something new. As somebody described it, this was like walking down the street in the middle of either, he said, Christmas or something else. When it was completely, completely dead downtown, which was the middle of March on. So I would like to see us to essentially carry out the intent of what we're calling summer streets. It's very temporary. We want to see how it, how it works. And I suggest we do it both on California Avenue and on University Avenue. And what we had said before was let's try doing this in the summer, however we may define that. Um, and I'm saying all this with the parents here say, if suddenly there is a big spike in two weeks or three weeks. I, I'm pretty sure that Dr. Cody is going to put us all back into seclusion once again. That's pretty much what she has said. So what we're hoping is that this continues as it has. And we can go ahead with what is going to be a pretty brave and exciting and, and, and dramatic way to try and save our restaurants. And even though I hear it's hard on retail, I think retail would be delighted to have more people there. So I need to know, um, either from Adrian or from Ed, whether this gives you sufficient information to at least, as it says, close Cal Avenue beginning June 11th. This is June 8th. And we would love to see that really open by, by Thursday or Friday. And I think, and I think the, the restaurants and the retail are absolutely ready to do it.
So I'm also interested to hear from staff because there, there's a recommendation column here. So what, what are you asking from us tonight?
Right. Um, so in, perhaps to respond to council member Niss's question, if we expect to Cal Ave. I, I believe it's fair to say that we're, um, better positioned to be able to act immediately on Cal Ave. And we would be to act on both simultaneously. Again, in discussion with staff, recognizing the, uh, complexity of some of the issues, just the logistics of working out with the individual merchants on each street. That, um, I think it would be appropriate to assume there would at least be a weak lag on, uh, university and possibly more than that, uh, just to work through the, the, again, logistics. Um, but that said, the, um, trajectory would be to proceed, assuming, again, we're, we're trying to get a sense of the council. And, uh, as Rachel pointed out, there are a number of specific elements, issues that do require uh, council action in order to ratify at least, uh, that direction. And so, uh, if you can get that sense of the council, then that will give us enough information to come back with the specifics.
So Ed, I'm, I'm looking at this with the activities and then the recommendations. So if we look at the recommendations and we're talking about sidewalk dining. Um, I would suggest that, as it says, continue the summer streets temporarily waive the fees. The same with the future action. Then going through Cal Ave, starting on the 11th, hopefully. Um, and you, how, how long will it take for University Avenue? Because if we close Cal Ave, we're going to hear right away that University Avenue wants to close too.
Is that a prediction or a, an expectation? The,
Everyone, remember, this is, this is the culmination tonight of two months of listening to the community. We first began one set of meetings in early April. I have, and, and with all respect, but I've heard almost everyone who came to talk tonight at one of the other meetings that we have had. So I know that they're going to be very interested in how soon this can happen for them. So can you give them at least a, I, uh, give them a ballpark?
Well, again, I think, um, if the direction, uh, again, sense of the council is to close university. I think there are a number of dimensions to that, that, uh, we could use some, uh, more clarity on. Uh, in the case of California Avenue, uh, the duration. Uh, is it for a weekend? Is it for a longer period? Let's say for a week at a time?
Cal Ave or University Avenue?
Really, really both, but let's start with Cal Ave and, uh, and then as we then progress to university, same questions. We, we talking about, um, full-time or, or weekend or some subset thereof?
I think somebody said it well tonight. To try to remember when a street is going to be closed versus when it's going to be open is going to get very awkward. Uh, certainly starting with Cal Ave, I'd have it open seven days a week. You can't do it on Sunday morning because that's, the farmer's market really doesn't get done till two or three o'clock. So all, the only meal they can pretty much get is maybe a very late lunch and, and dinner on, on Sunday night. So I, my, my suggestion would be go, you know, do it every day. Does it work? Does it not work? But trying to remember to be open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and part, part of Sunday, I think is very difficult. And I'll be interested in knowing what colleagues say. But, um, with University Avenue, it sounds to me as though you'd like to come back to us next week? Either Monday or Tuesday?
We got a few things coming back next week. So that's, let me, let me talk to staff. I'm, I'm sorry.
Are we meeting on Wednesday as well?
Uh, no, you're meeting on Monday and Tuesday. And, um, I think that if, let's, based upon this, uh, motion, uh, and getting a sense of the council, then let me work with staff on the timeframe, uh, for implementation. Because I do think that there are a number of, uh, logistical, um, just issues we're going to need to work through.
For University Avenue?
Yes. If we assume that we're starting again Cal Ave this weekend, I think we, we want to try to ensure that that's a successful, um, implementation and that will give us a better sense of both the level of effort and then appropriate timeframe for university. So that said, let me, um, ask whether it's Rachel or Brad, if Fred Eggleston, if, uh, they have a tighter, um, sense of next steps. But absent that, uh, I, I would suggest we get that information back to the council.
I'll say before handing it over to Brad, that hearing from council, thank you council member Niss for sharing kind of your perspective on the duration being seven days. Let's go ahead and do that. Um, feedback like that is very helpful and related to university, as you heard a diversity of ideas about that. And then Brad's team, along with PD, looking at the traffic control plan, um, really have the boots on the ground. Um, work to actually close university. And so I wonder, Brad, if you would want to see Cal Ave closed for a week before moving to university or two weeks? What kind of seems like a realistic timeline for your staff?
Try to do it for a week, a week if you can.
Yeah, I, I would say what seems most realistic to me would, would be that, uh, the university closure would be two weeks from now. Um, we're going to have our,
Can you do it a week?
Maybe, but, but I don't want to do a poor, I don't want to do a poor job overseeing, uh, what we've taken on with.
Let us not make perfect, you know, the enemy of the good. These restaurants are losing. They're, they're, they're going out of business. I mean, it is, th- think of this as we're in a war zone. And we're trying somehow to get those troops so that we can save the day. Because this is, this is serious stuff at this point. We're talking about, we're closing streets, not just for the experiment or the fun of it. We're closing them to help save the businesses that are on those streets. Can you do a week?
Five minutes.
Uh, we can, we can probably do a week. It would certainly be rushed.
And,
No rush.
That's, that's where once again, council member, I really would not want to pin us down tonight. We really would be helpful if you could give us the clarity.
Tonight, Ed, we're not going to pin it down.
No, if you can give us the clarity of the direction that we're headed toward.
I'm trying. I'm doing my best.
Again, so give us the direction. Let us come back with the timeframe. And it may just be an informational report that we can give you. Here's the date for implementation. We, we get the urgency, but again, I think we don't want to be, uh, what would I say, uh, irresponsible about promising a date that, that, um, is a recipe for failure. There are a lot of logistics to be worked out with the businesses.
Saying you can do Cal Ave this week.
Right.
This week.
Correct.
But, but you cannot do University Avenue next week.
I didn't say that. I said, give us a direction, get the call, uh, confirmation of your colleagues and then let us come back to you with the timeframe.
So can I maybe try some in council member Niss and just to move the conversation? This is the first page of discussion, right? And there's a second page? Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, um, just for clarity's sake, I will try a motion to endorse staff's current activities and recommendations. And ask them to return with all of the future council action. So that's my motion. It's essentially saying, continue staff doing what you're doing. And let's consider everything else that you've put in the future council action column.
Point of one of those, this is a study session, right?
I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing dates or times or not hearing Cal Ave in there as next.
Guys, it's, it's 12:40. Staff is asking for confirmation of their current work. And then there's a few items they have that they say we could do, we don't have to, but they need some rough direction on it. It is a study session, but we can direct them to come back with it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you're, you don't, you don't need a formal motion, but we do, I mean, to be frank, we need to hear from more than one council member. We need to hear from the rest of council about issues where there is a diversity of view. You heard it in public comment. Uh, on, as to University Avenue, as to whether the closures are just on the weekend or for a week, et cetera.
Okay. Um, I mean, does staff want a motion here or not? I'm, I'm, I'm just a little confused.
We need to say to the council. I think we have a divergence of views on the council.
So you do want a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
It's fine to take a straw poll. You can't take action, but you can take a straw poll in order to get clarity and to give it.
Then what I would ask each of us to do is let's just quickly walk through and talk through those different items. And the six category staff has laid out and you can provide your comments. Does that make sense to everyone?
Mayor, if, if patience is running thin, I would focus on the street closures.
Yes, I would too.
And then I, I would like to get five minutes to speak. I think you should hear from one of us.
I will, Vice Mayor, I will absolutely do that. I was trying to move the conversation along. Um, I'll just say for my part, on sidewalk dining, street closures, parklets, the alcohol consumption, the other ones, uh, I am interested in the future council action where we are being, I guess the term is the most liberal possible. Um, that's, that's where I would like to see us go. Okay, next I had count, I had council member Niss, Cormac, Koo and DuBois. So council member Cormac.
Um, thank you, Mayor Fine. Um, sidewalk dining is fine, street closures. Um, one thing we haven't discussed is how long these would go through. One option for us to consider is mid-August. Stanford's going to come back early, those who are coming back. The PAUSD is probably going to start mid-August. Um, I think that might make sense in terms of thinking about a duration. I am persuaded after reading all of the emails and hearing from so many people that seven days a week makes sense. Um, and so I am supportive of closing both California Avenue, sorry, back on the first one. And University Avenue. Um, we have not discussed whether or not University Avenue is completely closed or whether or not you can get through at certain places. My guess is that's something that Director Eggleston, um, and others will weigh in on when they come back. I will just say my preference would be to keep it pedestrian. Um, I don't agree with council member Niss that this is only about restaurants. I think this is about creating space for people to walk their dogs and bicycle and exercise and a whole bunch of things. And maybe paint things on the street, who knows? Um, parklets. Um, parklets, um, I'm supportive of the, the two options that where, um, staff will design two different things. Um, I worry a little a bit about look and feel on parklets and I'm going to try to not worry about that too much. Um, on this temporary part, I think through the end of the year makes sense. Um, understanding that they're costly. Could I have the next slide, please? Private parking, yes, because one of the things we haven't discussed is, um, places that are not Cal Ave and University Avenue. Um, and so private parking, that makes sense. Outdoor retail, I was unpersuaded by outdoor retail until we heard from public comment. Um, that will be fine. And alcohol consumption, I am fine in public with a meal. Uh, city manager, did I leave anything out this Tanner?
I think you covered everything. Thank you, council member.
Okay. Um, I, and if I forgot to say it, because it's now Tuesday. Um, I do think this is a, as someone wrote into us, a once in a generation opportunity. I want us to go as far as possible as we can and then back off if we need to. Um, this is not a time for us to do our usual incremental pilot. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is council member Koo and I think if we can each maybe follow that way of looking at this list, that's, that's helpful.
Yes, that was the intent. Um, thank you for that too. Um, so on sidewalk dining, I think that is, um, for the summer streets program is great. Um, street closures. Um, I would say California Avenue, as staff has recommended. Um, however, you know, with, um, university downtown core, I think it'd be much more fairer to all the businesses, especially restaurants that's on the size streets to have parklets and that they apply for it. And then they can have a longer time, um, with the parklets, which goes to, I believe, the end of 2020, correct, uh, Ed?
I'm sorry, councilor, were you referring to temporary or?
They're parklets. Parklets are temporary, right?
Right, right now, we're looking at temporary installations. Um, there will need to be guidelines and I'll let Rachel expand on as far as, uh, permanent. Uh, or more permanent installations, because this ultimately is public right of way that would be subject to permit.
Right, I'm just talking about temporary right now, because you'd have to come back to us. Should, should there be a change to go to permanent? So I don't think we need to kind of talk about that right now. But I would think that it would be much better if it is parklets in downtown, uh, core. Um, then this way also, if there's a chance for retail to expand even on university out of their shops, maybe to display their wear, maybe that can be something that can be worked out. I, I don't know if that is part of the plan also. Yes, I see nods.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, private parking, yes. Outdoor retail, yes. Alcohol consumption, uh, with meals, yes. And I would like to also find out if we might be able to implement the, uh, RPPP enforcements for the neighborhood. Uh, for the neighborhoods that are right by there. Um, mostly because we need to ensure that we get the, those neighborhoods buy-in on this also. Apparently, there hasn't been enough communication with them, if any. And I would be very concerned about the parking, given that we're taking away so many parking. And as things come back in, the parking is going to be needed. So I'd like that to be explored as well.
Yeah, if I could comment on that, I would just note that we're not doing any parking enforcement as far as time limits currently citywide. And, uh, so at some point, assume this is successful, there will be a point at which parking activity kicks up to the point that we do find it necessary to regulate both residential as well as commercial. So I think that that, um, is, is cer- certainly something that's in the future. Uh, we will need to define at what point that will become a immediate issue. Uh, we'll need to define at what point that will become a immediate issue.
Although you will, um, kinda let the neighborhoods know where are the parking for all the workers that are coming in for the retail stores and for, for the restaurants, right? I mean, certainly you will have communication with them with regards.
Well, um, so I think that's a, a area to set some expectations, you know? At this point, this has all been done on, uh, quite frankly, a reactive, uh, basis. And so it's not a situation in which we're planning out, uh, what has been, uh, you know, in pre-COVID, uh, basically where, uh, businesses have been managing themselves. So for the city to take on the management of where employees are parking versus, uh, uh, where they have been historically, I think would be another area of work. And, uh, so again, you know, we've been really dealing with an issue of just trying to get businesses back on their feet. Uh, I think you're referring to more of a situation where there's enough business that there's spill over impacts. And, uh, quite frankly, we're, we're not there yet.
And I don't want us to have to react to that when that happens and have the neighborhoods, um, be annoyed with all of this because we're also trying to ensure that relationships are on the mend as well between the residents and the businesses. So, um, keep that in mind and, you know, I would like to see that this is planned ahead of time versus reacting to something.
Agreed. I, I will also acknowledge though that we are in a period of budget retraction. And so I don't wanna overpromise, um, what we'll be able to do. Uh, so I, I think that's an area we'll take as a referral for staff to, uh, look at what is possible as a part of this program.
Just if I may, um, council member Ku, one thing we have talked about is, um, while the parking programs are kind of suspended and in, if there is, uh, room in, for example, the city hall garage, working with some of the restaurants and businesses to think about where their employees might park, you know, directing their guests where they could park if they are coming by vehicle, as well as encouraging the local residents to use, um, biking and walking to get downtown. So that's part of, hopefully, what we'd like to roll out with summer streets is thinking about how to encourage a lot of biking and walking to even reduce the need for, for parking.
Thank you, Rachel. Um, all I'm saying is that, you know, I, I wanna make sure that the residents aren't impacted by all of this and not to react on it, but to plan accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, so, um, overall, thank you. I'm, I'm definitely willing to experiment and, and learn. And, and I think you staff has appropriately identified a lot of positive impacts and some potential negative impacts. Uh, many of us have been talking to our businesses and, you know, adding, adding some tables is gonna help. But, you know, what we're hearing is the real issue is mortgage and the rent. And, um, this may not be enough, right? So if we don't get past COVID, I think we're gonna have to look for ways to address our relief for commercial mortgages and rents at some point. When staff comes back, I'd really appreciate if you could be really clear about what is area specific and what are citywide. And I do think some of these programs should be citywide. I'd really like to understand how street allocations would be managed and, and so that it's fair to the businesses. So how would the businesses split up the street or, you know, would they be assigned parts of the street or is it all shared seating? I too, I, I'm leaning towards seven days a week on university. I do think it needs to be a regular time so people get used to it. Um, I would actually like to know if you'd consider like keeping all of the sites being open and just, um, rather than closing it from Emerson to Cowper, you know, what, what if the cross streets remained open, what would that look like? Um, cause again, I think we do have a diversity of desires downtown. Um, I think calling it summer streets is good. Definitely seen other cities with permanent things where the outdoor seating is empty in the winter. I, I think we should think about triggers too. So do these programs expire if we hit stage four or the restaurants can fully use their internal space again? You know, rather than trying to predict a time, I think maybe having some triggers would be good. Uh, I'm not really fond of the word parklet. To me, these, these aren't parks, these are private lets, uh, the way we're talking about them. Uh, and I do think we should consider them temper- temporary and I'd really like to see some very low cost ideas for these private lets and how we could encourage businesses to, to go that route and keep them low cost. You know, looking at barriers to, to traffic, uh, but limited construction. I think if they have, um, some ADA spots available, this whole thing doesn't need to be ADA compliant. Uh, the big thing for me is really setting the expectations that this is temporary. Uh, we're temporarily privatizing public land. It's extraordinary time, we need to do it. Uh, at some point, this were to become longer term, I think we need to figure out how we would rent that private land or public land. You know, our city budget is hurting as well, so I think we'd have to fairly price the use of this land. And I, I'm glad you brought it up, Ed. I think as the economy recovers, we need to figure out when we do start parking enforcement again. And as council member Ku was saying, like, it's a timing issue. How do we manage this so that all of a sudden people can't park in front, near their homes anymore because of all this traffic that's been diverted? On open consumption of alcohol, I, I'd really like to understand how we manage it. I'm not sure that, um, I think drinking with a meal is fine, but how do we prevent that from being abused? I'm not sure we want that citywide. So I mean, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, kind of how we manage that and how we make that temporary as well. And then finally, I share s- some of, uh, council member Carmack's concerns about, uh, we don't want a lot of process here about how do we avoid an ugly mismatch of things? What, what are the rules around signage outdoors? If we don't have any ARB review, I mean, I, I do think we wanna see things remain attractive. So tho- those are my comments. So overall, I'm supportive. I just would really like to make it clear that it's temporary. Um, the other thing I, I wanted to suggest was as we start to come out of this, you know, maybe staff could consider some rules downtown and Calab. Do we allow, uh, company cafeterias or do we start to evaluate that again to really encourage the continued use of our restaurants? So, thank you.
Council member Phil Seth.
Yeah, thanks. I only had a couple of questions. So, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm supportive of trying all kinds of things. I think, uh, longer term, we probably have to deal with the issue that council member DuBois brought up, which is, you know, use of public, uh, uh, publics, public, uh, land and so forth. But for the moment, I think we gotta try a bunch of things. I was, uh, I was curious about, uh, the, the, sort of the, the parking question that council member Ku asked specifically for the Calab area. I think my, my, my intuition is that, you know, there, there's more space, uh, downtown, uh, uh, relative, but, uh, but yeah, if, if there's, uh, if, if, even some hand wave analysis of, you know, we think it's gonna be this many spaces and that many, that many people and stuff like that. Yeah, that would be helpful, right? So, um, let me ask a question in the downtown area. Parklets. It's pretty concentrated with restaurants in the downtown, uh, area. Is there, is there enough space for parklets for everybody?
Uh, council member Phil Seth, we have looked at, we, we have a transportation staff who have developed a map of locating where different restaurants are located, where they're co-located. And we've come up with a strategy to help facilitate, um, collaboration between restaurants. So let's say there are two restaurants next door, so they might work out a plan to share their parklet and, um, ensure that it's cer- certainly safe and cleanly for the patrons, but not necessarily saying, necessarily saying it's just first come, first serve. And, you know, now this business has it, even though you are, you know, neighbors. Certainly something we've anticipated, um, and have built some, some strategies around.
So there would, there would be some jigsaw in this there.
Yeah, certainly.
And then the only other thing I was gonna say, sorry, back on Calab for a second. You know, I actually would have, I mean, I'd go, I mean, I, I don't think it's a huge deal, but I actually would have gone the, uh, uh, the Thursday to Sunday, uh, on the Calab, at least to start with. You know, really sort of just to be able to compare, right? You know, look at it how it is in the, in, in those days versus the other days, but, uh, I don't feel terribly strongly about that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, uh, council member Chanaka.
Uh, question for staff, how long does it take to, um, for a restaurant to get approved for like sidewalk or parket dining? I know that we have a couple and how long did, what was the process and how long did it take?
Well, um, Brad Elson answered that question as the staff have been permitting those, processing those permits.
Yes, I'd be happy to answer. Um, so the ones we have, it's actually been very quick uh, because it's only really been in the last, uh, week, week and a half that we've been visualizing the summer streets program and developing an expedited process with the new permit application. So I think it was last week on Thursday that that went out fairly widely. And by the next day, we had, uh, I think nineteen applications, uh, and had issued one the very next day. Uh, others that we're, we're working through, but I expect that, um, especially with the Calab closure, by this weekend, there's likely to be at least ten more that will have issued.
Okay, um, that's great. I'm, I'm glad you guys are moving quickly because I think speed is of the essence here. I think council member Niss is right in terms of people trying to figure out, oh, they're gonna stay in business or not. So I think speed is quick, is, is really important to make this successful. Now, uh, we did hear, I, I think overall, the residents have been very supportive of this, but we did, we have heard from a few concerns about what, well, are, are there gonna be parking issues if things pick back up again? Um, and so how was the outreach been? It seems like you guys did a lot of outreach to the businesses, but what about to the residents in the nearby neighborhoods?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say at this point that has not happened and so that is an issue. And I think th- through this, uh, feedback tonight, I think we're getting a sense, uh, that perhaps more so than traffic per se, that parking is likely to be the issue and one that will, will perhaps, uh, have some methods for staying on top of and be, um, uh, able to adjust the plan as it proceeds. Because parking would seem to be the type of issue that we would be able to monitor and, uh, then get a sense of how quickly, um, the spill over issues would occur.
Yeah, because, uh, as we all know, we're going through very unprecedented times and it's hard to know what's gonna work ahead of time, right? And, and I, I think frankly, we're not gonna know. So I think a lot of the test and learn is gonna be very important because we're probably gonna try some things that aren't gonna work and we need to change it right away. Because I think the goal of all this is to really help the businesses and, um, but the problem is it's hard to know what's really gonna work and not gonna work. And so I think some, I think it's great that you guys try some of the parklets, see how they go. You know, get some best practices out of that. Maybe some things don't work, gotta change it, right? So I think, I think the regulation can be later on, layered on, layer, later. I think, I think what's important is to kind of give them the space that they need to operate. Um, and then the finer details, I think we could work on that as time goes on versus trying to get too perfect and then taking, you know, six months to a year. Cause by then, a lot of people aren't, are, are just not gonna come back. It's not gonna matter anymore. So, so I think that's really important from, um, and I've had like five office hours on this topic, so I've talked to a lot of people on this. It seems like parklets in general, um, or whatever you wanna call them, seems like that's a goal, right? I don't think there's been a lot of resistance, but maybe staff, correct me, is there anyone that's been pushing back on, on having parklets for, uh, for restaurants, for retail? Is there anyone that's saying, oh, no, 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 we really shouldn't do that? And so what is, what's the reason?
I, I think to date, there really hasn't been any objection. Um, looking forward, uh, again, uh, you've heard some of the issue, a question of does the displacement of that parking create spill over, um, impact? And again, that's, uh, something that I think we'll see coming. Um, we may not have a whole lot of lead time, but we may have the opportunity to see coming.
Well, I mean, right now, we're, we have like twenty-five percent unemployment, right? We are like, I know there's not a large parking problem because we are in dire economic times. So in some ways, if we have the parking coming back, that's actually somewhat of a good thing, right? Maybe we have a vaccine, maybe there's other things that are happening so that we're, we're kinda past this. Um, so I, I think for parklets, unless, you know, there's big issues that pop up, which there might be, I think we should go full steam ahead as quickly as possible. I think Craig, which you're doing is great, which is responding quickly. I think if we could continue that, I think that's great. I know that, um, Cooper Cafe wants to have one, uh, University wants to have one, uh, University Cafe. And so there's a lot of people that wanna have it and I think making this happen quickly, like a day later is awesome. Cause I guess that gives the business owners confidence that they, it's probably worth it to kinda see how things go and hopefully that, you know, there's enough business to stay operating. So, so I think, I think that's the right strategy on, on the parklets thing. And the details of all the other, um, you know, look and feel, I think we could figure that out later. Uh, okay, so the second part here is, um, is, uh, uh, Calab. So Calab, it seems like there's more consensus around this in terms of having this as a closure. Has there been any resistance at all from residents, businesses or anyone? And if so, what, what has it been?
Calab closure, correct? Is that the question? Right. I think, uh, if anything, it's, it's been, as you've heard this evening, the, uh, potential concern for residents in the surrounding area. But that's it. We have otherwise, uh, heard virtually no objection to a full-time, all-week closure.
Okay, I mean, I think Calab seems to have more consensus, it's already dead end. So, uh, it seems like that makes sense to go forward twenty-four seven. I think it would be interesting. I think interesting person would be to see how Calab, if, let's say Calab is closed and University Avenue is not. It's kinda like an interesting experiment to see which one is gonna be more vibrant, right? Cause I, I, I understand the logistical concerns about being able to do both well at the same time. And I, I think while we wanna move quickly, it shouldn't be half-assed, right? So I do understand staff's caution, right? And, and, and difficulty trying to make them both happen at the same time, well. Um, but I think the parklets universally, I think should happen, not just on Calab University, but should happen throughout the city. I think that makes a lot of sense and it seems like that's what staff is doing. So I think keep on, keep on doing that. Um, I think, um, Calab, I think, uh, we have farmers market already, so we kinda know it kinda works sometimes already. So we should, I think we have more confidence in that. Um, let's see, on this slide here, so on the, uh, on the streamline permitting, I think all that's, I totally agree with. We just wanna make it easy, quickly, quick and hopefully no cost of low cost, right? So I think, I think all that makes sense. And I think, uh, the vice mayor actually makes a good point that it can't, cannot be temporary. Maybe as you guys figure out what really works and doesn't work, there needs to be some constraints, right? Maybe the ERB or some sort of other design constraint. And so that allows you to kind of implement that, uh, once we figure out what really works and doesn't work. Cause I don't think we're gonna know tonight. We're definitely not gonna know tonight. Okay, so on to the, the harder question, which is university. So university, it's a through street. It seems like there's a lot more controversy here. Um, and so I, I was wondering if someone could talk about what, what was the big pushback from, um, from that you guys heard so far on the closure of university? I'd love to hear the concerns.
Well, I'll take a, a first stab at it. If I were to just categorize it, um, among the issues, it's the, um, uh, circulation, so having traffic go by that, that actually, um, again, there's some debate as to whether it's pedestrian traffic or vehicle traffic, but in any case, having, having activity is one. Access, uh, you know, in terms of the, the practical side of deliveries, um, the various things that are, are necessary for the businesses themselves. And then the, the question of how does university relate to the crossing streets? And what does, uh, closure of university mean to the crossing streets? I think those, those are the three categories that, uh, come to mind. Others, uh, feel free to weigh in.
Uh, yeah, I'd just say that the, the other category of concern that I, I remember hearing a, a fair amount was that university has a fair amount of non-restaurant retail. And there's a concern that, um, that that retail is more visited by people who, who are driving by and, and seeing it. And that if people can't drive on the street, they're not going to visit those other businesses.
And, and that there's a negative, potential negative impact of the closure for non-retail businesses on, on the street, upper floors and the like.
Okay, so I, I think, um, so this is a lot more complex than Calab, I think. Uh, so I can understand why, uh, staff wants to do Calab first. I, I do think it's, I mean, the purpose of this is to actually help the businesses in these areas. And so businesses there have to feel like it's actually gonna help them. And the staff have a sense as to what the, I don't know if you guys took a vote or did a survey. I know there's been lots of these floating around, but.
Just a time check, councilmember Chanaka, you've you've had ten minutes, okay? So let's just try to wrap it up and.
Well, I don't know. I don't know if staff can answer that question.
You know, I'll say we have had a number of conversations, we've had surveys, and they chambered in a survey that showed of these of those respondents that many people are supportive of the closure. We've had very emphatic verbal conversations with some folks who, as we heard tonight, maybe be in touch with several restaurants or retailers and kind of saying no. And so it really is, I don't want to say it's quite six of one, half does the other. I think we probably heard a little bit more on the closure side as it is expedient. Versus even a parklet may take a week or two or three, if not longer, for some folks to get together. And so that, for some folks, the expediency is preferable, even if the long-term or medium-term they'd like a parklet.
Okay, well, I I know I'm kind of out of time, but I I do think it's important to get the businesses in their their, to get their buy-in.
Okay, I think we have all had a chance to speak. Anything else staff needs from us on this?
Well, I don't think I got a sense of the council on university. And I may have missed it to.
Someone could recap?
I think, I don't know, I would say there's maybe a small majority for looking at closing university. People nod.
Why don't you straw vote?
Straw vote, if you're interested in some type of closure on university, just raise your hand, please.
I think I am, if the business buy into it.
Yeah, we're just doing a straw vote. I I hope that helps, Ed. I think, you know, councilmember Chanaka raised some concerns about business, vice mayor DuBois about, you know, what it means, but it seems like all of us are raising our hands.
Of some form. So I think it's the some form that staff will have to figure out.
Considering it's one ten AM, I don't think you'll get any more useful.
Let me add the one thing that might help. Go look at Town and Country.
No, no.
They have done overnight.
No, I think we're we're good. As I just said, I don't think staff will get any more helpful info from us. Anything else you need specific clarity on?
I think we've got a sense. Well, we've got a little bit of divining to do, but we'll run with it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. That concludes our last item of the action calendar. It's one ten AM. I hope nobody has any councilmember questions, comments, or anything like that. We can really, councilmember Cormac?
Yes, really. I want to thank staff for helping put together the graduation car parade last Wednesday on June third. It was an outstanding event that made a really big difference in lots of families. And yes, it was important for me to say that. Thank you.
I was I was gonna adjourn our meeting in honor of all those graduates. Awesome. I hope everybody got to see it. It was pretty cool. All right, it's one eleven. Let's adjourn our meeting in honor of all of Palo Alto's awesome graduates. Thank you, everyone. Long meeting. Lot of time.
Good night, good morning.
Good morning.